Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission meeting being held virtually. Today is Wednesday, November 12. Before we start, Madam Jenkins is the seated alternate for this evening. And but Ms. Jones will probably be called upon as well. That is our sequence. We also have some postponements. Our first postponement is Newfield Properties 3 LLC for a final site plan. To designate the property as a set aside development by restricting one unit so out of three, so that it becomes an 830G development. Our second postponement is Andre Rivka and Tatiana Stankova for a final re-subdivision at 15 Pleasant View Place and 17 Pleasant View Place. And did I leave any out? No, I think those are the two.
Mead Point, Mead Point.
Oh, and Mead Point postponed. Sorry, skip that. Yes, right in time. So this other one is item number two, Mead Point for a final coastal site plan for modifications to a previously approved site plan and special permit at 618 Indian Field Road. Thank you, Dennis and Tracy, for the reminder. Our first item is a decision item. And it is for the Presbyterian Church of Old Greenwich, DBA Living Hope Community Church. In case you all get sleepy, I'm going to offer up a motion to you. And in that motion, what I will propose is that we approve the housing. And for the for the purposes of this application, we do not approve the expansion of the parking lot. Once I have read that motion and it has been seconded, we can discuss it. We can easily amend it. But I thought that was the longest version of it, and that way we could just pull out the language if you all disagree. So with that, as to the application of Living Hope Community Church for a final coastal site plan and special permit to consolidate the lots known as 30 West End Avenue and 38 West End Avenue into one 3.14 acre lot. Expand the existing church parking lot by 19 parking spaces. Make accessibility improvements to the property. Construct two dwellings, one being a man's single-family house for the pastor and the other being a three-car garage with a two-bedroom apartment above for the associate pastor on a 1.134 acre parcel located at 30 West End Avenue and a 2.08 acre parcel located at 38 West End Avenue in the R12 coastal overlay zone and flood hazard overlay zone. An existing two-car garage on the site would be demolished and a handicapped ramp to the existing church would be constructed. Whereas the current total FAR is .0821, proposed is .1251, and allowed is .315. Gross floor area for the church will remain at 9,647 square feet. For residential uses, it would increase by 5,882 square feet to 9,647 square feet. Under the proposal, the three dwellings would have a total of 10 bedrooms and nine parking spaces. Whereas the total volume of all the existing and proposed structures on the consolidated property would exceed 150,000 cubic feet, thus requiring a special permit from the commission. Whereas the pre-application for this proposal was discussed with the commission on 9/17/2024. Comments focused on the impact of flood zone development standards on the proposed buildings and the landscape and lighting plan. Whereas the applicant has withdrawn the request for special event approval for the Old Greenwich Farmers Market. Whereas both the Old Greenwich Farmers Market and Music Together of Fairfield have been advised by the applicant that the church will no longer allow their use of the property. Whereas the applicant appeared twice before the ARC. On 6/18/25, the ARC asked the applicant to return to address several recommendations. On 8/6/25, the applicant returned with revised architectural and landscape plans. While providing a number of recommendations, the ARC concluded that the applicant did not need to return to it and should proceed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Among other items, the ARC asked the applicant to clad the foundation in hardy plank to reduce the amount of exposed foundation. The ARC also asked that the landscaping be designed to add privacy to the homes. Whereas Conservation issued its final comments 10/23/25. Conservation found the updated landscaping plan includes a helpful note identifying the locations targeted for invasive species control within Long Meadow, the Long Meadow Creek riparian zone. Overall, the landscape plan is well-developed and incorporates a diverse selection of native species and cultivars. This approach is expected to enhance biodiversity and strengthen the ecological resilience of the CAM zone once fully implemented. The most recent iteration of the landscape plan dated 10/15/25 incorporates the Tree Warden's recommendations. Whereas the landscape plan includes two phases for implementation. Whereas the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection issued comments dated 9/30/25 stating that they had reviewed the coastal site plan proposal for consistency with the Coastal Connecticut Management Act and its policies and had no comments for the Planning and Zoning Commission's consideration. Whereas on 10/28/25, DPW Engineering issued comments after meeting with the project engineer and reviewing revisions, stating that the proposed project was approved for the issuance of zoning and building permits. The previous sidewalk request had been removed. The drainage summary report is acceptable. The engineer of record must certify that the proposed grading of the low point has now created additional low points east of the parking lot prior to the issuance of a temporary or final certificate of occupancy. If such additional low points are documented, modifications to the drainage system will be required. Whereas the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency Permit Need Questionnaire dated 5/15/25 indicates no wetlands permit is necessary as the property contains tidal wetlands and is coastal. The IWWA staff and the Environmental Affairs Director issued comments on 9/10/25 agreeing that the property contains tidal wetlands only and no inland wetlands. Whereas the zoning enforcement officer issued comments on 7/31/25 and 8/28/25 summarizing the scope of the proposed project. Whereas DPW Sewer Division issued comments dated 7/31/25 requiring a signed letter of acknowledgement of their comments prior to commission, the commission's approval of the application, but noted no items to be addressed prior to zoning permit issuance. Sewer permits will be needed prior to the issuance of a building permit as the project entails the replacement of the sewer lateral to the main that will serve the existing dwelling and the new proposed dwellings. The basement sink in the existing dwelling must also be connected to the sanitary sewer line and the condensate line needs to be rerouted to the storm drainage network. Whereas the church submitted a signed acknowledgement letter for the Sewer Division's comments of 7/31/25. Whereas the fire marshal advised on 8/125 that the Greenwich Fire Department has no comments at this point. Whereas the Energy Management Advisory Commission issued comments dated 9/225 encouraging the applicant to request passive house performance levels for the dwelling designs as those are easily achievable in a modular factory-built structure which can easily be heated and cooled with very modestly sized source heat pumps. EMAC also recommended use of a heat pump water heater and an electric induction stove as well as adding a solar PV system. Whereas Section 6158 of the Greenwich Building Zone Regulations establishes standards for determining parking requirements and the standard for a place of worship is one per three seats. Required handicap parking is in addition to those standards. Whereas the Connecticut Building Code requires that a parking lot of 51 to 75 parking spaces is required to have three accessible spaces with at least one of those being van accessible. Whereas Living Hope Community Church has indicated it has 210 seats in total, 25 in the chapel, and 185 in the main sanctuary for which the Building Zone Regulations establish a parking standard of 70 spaces. In addition, as noted, the Connecticut Building Code requires three handicap spaces bringing the total amount of required parking to 73. Whereas at present, the Living Hope Community Church parking lot excluding the residential uses has 74 spaces comprised of 68 standard spaces plus six accessible spaces. Whereas the commission finds that the church has failed to establish its need for a greater parking, a number of parking spaces at this time. Whereas the commission notes evidence in the public record that the parking lot has empty spaces during Sunday services. Whereas the commission further notes Living Hope Community Church has mentioned adding a second service which the commission finds would allow the church to accommodate congregation growth with its current capacity, parking capacity. Whereas the commission also notes that Living Hope Community Church has referred to simultaneous Sunday activities which may constrain parking and encourages the applicant to eliminate overlapping schedule if it is creating a parking shortage. Whereas the commission notes that as of right, principal uses allowed in the R12 zone are those listed in Section 693 and 694 of the Building Zone Regulations. The commission further notes that regulation, that religious or educational institutions not operated for commercial profit are permitted as primary uses in Section 693 with a special permit. Whereas the commission also notes the Planning and Zoning Commission has consistently recognized that religious institutions may include a range of associated facilities such as classrooms for religious instruction, fellowship or meeting rooms, food service and dining areas, as well as staff or clergy residences and parking. These components, even when located in separate structures, have been considered integral to the primary use. They are typically required to meet the minimum yard or setback requirements applicable to the primary structures in the zone, which are generally the most restrictive. Therefore, be it hereby resolved that the subject application is approved with the following modifications. The proposed expansion of the parking lot is denied without prejudice. The applicant may retain the existing 74 parking spaces which exceed the standards contained in Section 6158 by one space. Two, Phase Two of the landscape plan is to be installed prior to the final certificate of occupancy. Applicants shall also address all outstanding staff and departmental comments. Might I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Yesky has seconded. And seated on this item are Albin, McRae, Jones-Furlow, Yesky, and Wells. Any discussion? Okay. All right then, I will take a vote. Mr. Yesky, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Madam Jones?
Aye.
All righty, and with that, the motion, oh, Albin! Also, I almost forgot myself. And Albin is also an aye, and with that, the motion passes five to nothing, and we move on. We are skipping item number two, which is Mead Point LLC. That application has been postponed. If anybody called in to hear it. And we will now go to Two Sale Street, which is called, the application is JMCC2 LLC to demolish, is the applicant here? Sorry, because they like to be in before.
Yes, they are. They should be promoting right now.
Okay, I'll wait. Mr. O'Donnell, the application to demolish the existing two-family dwelling and to construct a new, a new two-family dwelling with front yard parking and make associated site improvements on a 7,500 square foot property at Two Sale Street in the R6 Zone. Regular member seated on this application, Mr. Yesky, you will remain seated? Or shall I defer to Madam Jenkins?
I think we were saying defer to Madam Jenkins up through TCS.
Okey-doke. So Madam Jenkins, you are seated for Mr. Yesky on this application.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, please proceed, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Casey O'Donnell on behalf of the applicant, JMCC2 LLC. I I've thought, I observed the briefing, and I've been privileged to work with your exceptional staff to try to-
Don't be nice like that, because I saw you be nice to another board the other night. Now I'm like, oh, he's nice to other boards.
All the nice boards, all the best.
He's like just buttering us up. Go ahead, Mr. O'Donnell. Yes, our staff is wonderful. Totally agree with you. The commission, not so much, but the staff is awesome. Okay, go ahead.
The commission around.
Yeah, we'll keep the commission around. Go ahead.
Okay, so I want to be brief. I value your time. And I think if I understand, the concerns with the project relate to landscaping. So just to briefly restate, approval of this application eliminates all legally non-conforming conditions, including two parking spaces, whereas five would be required. We have a total of six. We're bringing, bringing the, increasing the green area by 50%. That's also eliminating a legally non-performing condition. And I see Mr. Lowe has his hand up, so I'm happy to address his comment.
Right, and I'll bet Mr. McRae won't be far behind. Mr. Lowe?
Well, normally, I'd like, I was gonna let the applicant's representative finish, but I, I think you just stated that the only or main concern was you, that you, you did not include the parking in the front yard, which is a big concern for at least one of the commissioners. So I hope, in addition to other concerns you will address, you will address that as well.
Mr. Lowe, thank you. That's a better restatement. I appreciate it. The, the nature of multifamily housing, and, and I won't, I'll keep my comments brief, is the lots that we expect in the R6 Zone, if it's an ideal lot with 75 feet in width by 100 feet in depth, that leaves you with a development envelope with a 25-foot front and rear setback, which is best-case scenario of 50 feet in width. For the R6 Zone, we're privileged to have 55% of total land area developed. It does not leave, in most cases, adequate areas outside of the home for parking. There is a perspective to say that if we don't allow any front yard parking in two-family development, we're essentially pushing two-family development out. And that has traditionally been more economically accessible. So I would beg your reconsideration of this issue. To ameliorate the impact of front yard parking with a two-family dwelling, we have offered a substantial landscape plan, and we listened to the commission's comments, and we have increased them. We added more native plannings along the side of the house. We've addressed the concerns with the existing lawn area over the easement marked as such. We're proposing 36 trees, 66 bushes, and 44 gallons of native grasses. I recognize that portions of the parking area will be visible through the aperture of the driveway. In addition to the idea that many cars, particularly large cars, will be visible beyond the front yard screen, which is intended to be maintained at 42 inches, so below what the required sightline requirements are, so cars can safely enter and exit the driveway. However, in all cases and all the scenarios we've looked at, this landscape plan will prevent headlights in the evening from shining through onto other properties. And in the area of the front yard for this specific dwelling, there's, there's both of the neighbors have parking structures that immediately abut it. So on a site-specific basis, I'll, I'll be grateful to hear your perspective again now.
Mr. Lowe?
Yeah, these are not, it's not just large cars that will be visible. The typical mid-size or full-size car is five or six feet in height. And what you're proposing with Shamrock Holly's is, is vegetation that reaches a mature height of three to four feet. So your garden variety car will be visible.
Agreed.
And so I, I'm sort of puzzled because we've had this, we've raised this concern a couple of times. And what I'm, you know, I'm puzzled by whether or not you all considered higher screening in the front if you were trying to achieve the goal of having us rule on on the regulation and go against what is in our regulation.
The regulation provides adequate screening, which has traditionally, well, let's just go back. We did consider higher screening. We looked at it a lot of times. With the average lot depths and with site distance requirements, that's impossible. We did increase the height of the screening on either side. It increased the number of plannings in an attempt to address your concerns.
But not in the front?
In the front, we converted to a hedgerow. The applicant is happy to consider an alternative planting. We heard comments that American U may provide a more dense screen. And so we're happy to accept the condition that the landscape plan, that the the Shamrock Holly is replaced with American U. We've noted that it's to be maintained as a hedgerow for the most robust screening package. Unfortunately, you, the site distance requirements, not just for our own driveway, but for neighboring driveways, have to be addressed.
It's not the hedgerow nature of the screening where I'm concerned. I'm concerned about the height. We have, we've had many applications in the past where we've been asked to rule on this, and our regulations are pretty clear about it. And, you know, arguably, unfortunately, but I don't see how, unless you can provide a compelling argument. And I would suggest that one that would include higher screening in the front would, would go toward that. But otherwise, you know, I don't see you addressing this concern about the parking in front and these automobiles being visible from the front.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe.
Anything else, Mr. O'Donnell?
That's all for me.
And Mr. O'Donnell?
I, I'd like to just very briefly recover, but I see Mr. McRae has a comment too.
Well, but you might as well, and, oh, you, I recovered.
He wants to think about it.
Oh, you want to think about it? Cool, okay. It's a good way of saying it. Mr. McRae, go ahead.
Staff, can you bring up page 23 of the staff report? Is Mr. DeAndrea with us, or anybody from the DeAndrea office?
They're not. I excuse them this evening.
Okay.
So we're talking about sightlines, and I'm looking at the sightline diagram, and it's the, the vehicle, it's shown actually crossing over, it's crossing over the the end of each one of those, that hedgerow there. Just wondering, because the, the throat of that driveway is, is deep, does it, does this sightline need to be taken from that point, actually, as it's shown on the, the sightline diagram? Or could it be actually pushed farther out? Because I think if you're a little bit farther out, you could put the hedgerow right to the point where you have it and make it taller than the 42 inches.
The, the regulation, the controlling regulation requires that it's 10 feet back from the pavement. The curb, the improved portion of the public traveled road, so where Sale Street, Sale Street ends. So that's where, that's how Tony's, and, and I'm confident in his calculation. So unfortunately, we would have to repave Sale Street, and there's limited space to sort of move it, particularly with the width of the driveway.
Okay, and you're saying you can do a, American U at 42 inches and then let it grow to a hedgerow and maintain it that way?
That's correct. That's what's, we're, with the, the plan today states that the front screening will be maintained as a hedgerow, and we're happy to accept the condition that the Holly is exchanged for American U, with its more dense planting.
Okay, and then I think we kind of answered this question, but I want to make sure I've got it completely understand. The 10-foot wide easement and everything on that side of the house, the proposal, that, all that asphalt's going to be ripped out and you're going to plant a area there, lawn or something?
That's correct. As the landscape plan indicates, there's sort of a brick walkway that extends into the easement area and a short retaining wall. Those two items will remain. Those are included in our existing green area calculations properly. So we're still increasing green area from existing conditions by 50%. And part of that, Nick, is removing all of the asphalt and the big concrete pad down that, I guess that's the west side of the property.
Yeah, okay. Okay, now, one final thing, actually, just as a question. You've got the hedgerow almost right to the edge of, or the throat of the driveway. Talking about 42 inches across that whole hedgerow. Is it possible to actually have the ends of the hedgerow at 42 and let the rest of it, as it goes beyond the sightlines, go higher?
Yes, we can absolutely accept the condition that we're and it can be noted as such, and that may be a productive way to do it, is to say the, the 42-inch portion will be maintained only in the area where it is required by sightline.
Okay.
Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. DeAndrea is now here. I don't know if he's here for another application, but-
Right, I think it's, it's not necessary. I think, Mr. O'Donnell answered the question.
Okay, well, he's rejoining. It's coming in. All right. All right. I can't, Mr. DeAndrea, or now that he's here, you might as well ask him. Mr. McRae, your question?
No, I think, I think actually, I have a question for Mr. Lowe, actually.
Oh, okay.
I don't have an application.
Okay, so property or the applicant's, talking about a 42-inch height is what they were going to maintain it at. What height do you think we should get to? I would say 60 inches or better, but what do you think would be a good height for a hedgerow along the street?
Six feet.
Okay.
Nick said five, but that's basically-
Well, I, I'm sorry, what did you say, Madam Chair?
Yeah, Nick said five feet, but-
I know he did, but he asked me what I thought.
Yeah, great, okay.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you.
And, and that is, the reason for that is that I think that these normal cars, not to mention oversized cars, are five to six feet in, in height.
Normal cars.
Well, aver, I'm sorry, average cars.
Okay.
My sources-
You saw my, you saw my cogs, the cogs in my head just, okay, okay, we're good, okay.
But as Casey Stengel said, you can look it up.
Okay, anything? Anything else? Who was that? I heard a voice. Okay, anything else, gentlemen? No.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions from anybody on the commission?
Did you want to hear from Tony?
No, I think actually I'm good. I, I see what Mr.
All right.
O'Donnell had talked about, and I got it in front of me.
So Mr. O'Donnell, I'm going to turn to public comment now. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? This is Two Sale Street for a demolition and reconstruction of a two-family home. Two Sale Street. Anybody wish to comment on this application? Kindly raise your, raise your virtual hand. All right, I see no public comment. What is the commission wish to do with this application? Are you they've asked us to, it's a must- decide, but it does have an extension. It has been set for us to decide it tonight, but we could ask for an extension. Are, are you in a position where you would agree to closing it?
I'm good to close.
I'm good.
Good to close.
Joe Low?
Fine by me.
All righty, anybody object to closing this application? No, all righty.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I just have one comment.
Yeah.
It's, it's more of a heads-
It's it's more of a heads up, but the 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 requirements for fences and walls in the zoning regulations requires that plantings not impede the site distance.
Yes.
As specified, so.
So what they're proposing, what they're proposing, I think the way Mr. McRae wants to word it, if I understood him, is that where you don't need, where you can, where you need site distance, you cut the hedge down. But where you don't need site distance, you let it go to five or six feet. Is that correct, Mr. McRae?
Right, in compliance with six one forty point two, right?
Yep. So that it would be that the hedge would be maintained trimmed. Of course, I can't tell you how many residents have no idea what that is and how many times you come out of driveways everywhere in the United States and can't see squat, but that's all right. Um that was, that's the concept. So you would you would let it grow tall where you don't need it, where it's not near the driveway and the sightlines, and you would cut it back for the necessary sightlines. That's the concept, right, Mr. McRae?
That's the concept.
Okey dokey. All right, so with that, the application is hereby closed and we would happily entertain a motion from our illustrious secretary.
Uh yes, before we start, uh Ms. Kolkowski, uh do we see this as a a pre-application? I don't remember.
It's not a special.
It's not a special permit.
Okay, very good. Okay, let's see. We'll put some stuff here together. Uh to Sale Street, final site plan, PLPZ twenty twenty-five. Uh three, six, five applicants seeking approval to demolish existing two-family dwelling, construct a new two-family dwelling with permeable paper driveway, front yard parking area with associated setup improvements on a seventy-five hundred square foot property in the R six zone. Uh whereas the four proposed outdoor parking spaces are located in the required minimum front yard. Yeah, the planning and zoning board of appeals granted a variance of front yard setback to allow proposed minimum front yard of twenty-seven point three feet due to the deficient uh right of way at thirty feet. Uh with conditions uh that the front portico not to be enclosed in the landscape planet uh to be uh to the application be implemented. The commission finds that proposed outdoor parking spaces are radically screened per landscaping uh by landscaping per section six one fifty-five of the BZR. Conservation issued comments dated ten eight twenty-five endorsing the proposals zoning issue comments that ten nine twenty-five indicating no issues to the application. Sewer issued comments uh ten nine twenty-five requesting the applicant submit a signed letter of acknowledgement receipt in the receipt of their P and Z comments. DPW Engineering, uh the applicant submitted a drainage exemption dated eight twenty-seven twenty-five. EMAC issued comments dated ten ten twenty-five indicating a favorable review. And Wells uh Wells issued a permit needs questionnaire dated eight uh twenty-nine twenty-five indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to approve the application uh for final site plan with the following conditions, uh screening along the street, frontage to be U uh Texas Canadianus, American U that is, uh to grow to seventy-two inches. Uh landscape screening along the uh uh frontage to be grown to be forty-two inches in height within the sightlines of the driveway. Uh poor sewer division comment, the applicant has submitted a uh acknowledgement letter dated ten fourteen twenty-five. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or departmental issues.
Do I have a second on this application?
Second.
Motion. Uh Mr. Wells has seconded. Might as well start with you, Mr. Wells. How do you vote?
Uh can I ask a question?
Um yeah.
Um. Mr. McRae, did you say that the commission found that the uh front was adequately screened?
Uh that's what I said, yes.
Okay, and then you said that the uh it would be forty-two inches to preserve the sightlines? The sightlines. And what was the rest of it?
Uh it'll be actually uh instead of the Shamrock Holly, it would be a uh American U grown to seventy-two inches. And then the landscape along the frontage should be grown at forty-two inches within the sightlines.
Grown and maintained, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I I missed that, so please proceed.
Okay, um Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
Aye.
Um Ms. Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Albin is also aye and with at the mo- motion passes five, nothing. Thank you very much, Mr. O'Donnell. And we go to our next application, Three Chin Moy LLC. And. Good afternoon. Uh the Three Three Chin Moy LLC for a final site plan to construct a two-family residence with front yard parking on two parcels that when combined equal to nine thousand two hundred and nine square feet located at Three Chin Moy Place in the R six zone. Um kindly, if you would proceed, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Raghu Delio, the owner and architect um of Three Chin Moy Avenue. Uh appreciate your time and um I'm going to focus the discussion around the comments um that I left with at the last commission meeting. Uh the first comment was to increase the driveway width from twelve feet to fourteen feet. Uh that specifically being the entrance. Um so that has been updated. Uh the second comment was um uh modifying uh unit two's uh basement layout. So we've done that as well. We've removed uh the partitions, we've removed uh the wet bar. We removed uh the uh stand-up washer and dryer, and now it is just an open finished basement with a full bathroom. Um and then the last comment was uh landscaping. Similar to the previous application, uh the concern was about screening uh for the front yard uh parking. Um uh again, as a reminder, uh there is an existing retaining wall here that is five feet tall. Um from an elevation difference from top of wall to finish grade, so that certainly helps provide a significant amount of screening, but in addition to that, we have added additional uh steed hollies around um uh the front parking area that would be formed um in a line of hedge uh that would run to a height uh and be maintained at a height rather of five to six feet. So I'm here to answer any questions that uh that the commission may have.
Any questions, folks?
I do.
Uh.
Okay, Mr. Lowe started talking first and then Mr. McRae.
Yeah, uh do we have a uh an exhibit? Uh the most recent exhibit displaying the uh
Oh, I'm sorry.
One foot tall retaining wall as well as the hollies to be maintained at five to six feet. Or what whatever you said, I'm sorry.
I apologize, commission. I thought I was sharing my screen and I'm asking for permission to share my screen. If someone can give that to me, please.
Patrick looks like he's doing it.
There we go. Can you see my screen now?
Mm hmm.
The landscape plan?
Yes.
Okay, so let me just start over. The fourteen-foot driveway. The basement um that just has a full bath, the rest of it is just an open floor plan. And then the landscaping plan um with the additional steed hollies forming a hedge um to be maintained at five to six feet. Um so, Mr. Lowe, to answer your question, this is the existing stone retaining wall um that from the top of this retaining wall to finish grade uh is a is a five-foot difference.
Right, but there is no retaining wall in the front, is there?
There is no retaining wall in the front here, correct. That this would be um parking would be screened in this area by this continuous edge.
Of the steed hollies?
Of the steed hollies, correct.
Okay, thank you. I I wanted to refamiliarize myself with this. Thanks.
Apologies again, I thought I was sharing my screen.
Mr. McRae and then Ms. Jenkins.
Uh.
I'm seated on this application, Ms. Jenkins. I'm sorry, I forgot to announce that.
Okay, Mr. Delio, um without that landscaping in the front, uh you've got the steed holly. How long, how tall will they actually get?
Um is my landscape architect on this call? Uh Robert Sherwood.
Robert Sherwood, would you raise your hand if you're here? Not seeing.
Uh if he's not, um these steed hollies have um uh uh the potential height of of growing six to eight feet. Um but if manicured, uh again, we would like to maintain them um at five to six.
Okay, and you've got uh switchgrass, I think it's in front of it?
Co- correct, to help kind of soften that 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 edge.
Okay, and then the behind the retaining wall uh towards the west, there's uh more um hollies?
Correct. Um so to help kind of create some diversity of landscaping, we introduced hollies uh anchoring the corners of of the property.
Okay, great. Now, uh in the front yard, if you can zoom in uh uh to the right-hand side of the previous pavement. So there's a twenty-four inch maple to remain?
Correct.
Okay. Putting in that previous pavement, you're going to have a uh gravel uh catchment area. How deep is that underneath that previous pavement?
Uh in terms of the overall assembly of the previous papers?
Yeah, so you have the asphalt and then what do you have underneath it?
Um.
Here it is.
Okay.
Uh nine inches, nine inches of gravel. Um uh uh about two inches of of bed coursing, four inches of so overall, you know, assembly of about eighteen inches in depth of of previous papers.
Okay. Uh it would seem to me.
Assembly.
Right, it would seem to me if that tree is going to remain, you may be cutting into that root ball. Uh I think it's got to be very important to understand that tree as it is here and as actually requested by some conservation that these two big trees be uh retained. So actually, I think you really have to think about how how you go about that. Uh it would seem to me actually you've got planting there, you've got stuff on top of it, although the landscape plan says tree to remain, there's other things that are planted on top of it, so.
Why don't we just ask that they cut back the width of that? Um why don't we just ask that they cut back the width of that previous paper area to enable protection um so that it doesn't encroach as much into the drip line of the twenty-four inch maple?
Uh we could do that, but the drip line is going to be quite big, so but.
The what?
The drip line, I think is going to go out at a significant radius.
Well, we could have it be submitted to staff review and we just we just have them cut it back to some to to what um they'll agree to.
Right. Okay.
I I'll bet you anything that um that Jackie could figure out how to review that.
Mm hmm.
I think that's the easiest way. Rather than redesign it ourselves, we'll just say, cut it back so that you know, you know, do what you can with the previous paper, so you're protecting, you're protecting that tree. Because you're also not going to be able to, even if even if you went to put in a big shade tree, it would have a hard time taking in that situation where it is, it's tight.
Right. Okay. Uh Mr. Delio, you also, you you took out all of the stuff in the basement. Uh but I noticed that the window wells are still there. Would you uh say that maybe the window well doesn't need to be there? You don't have any kind of a bedroom space or anything down there? It's a
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh it would seem to me it's kind of, you know, it's supposed for us now because there's really no, it's just a, it's just an unfinished basement.
We are proposing to to finish the basement.
But you don't need an egress window is really what Mr. Mr. McRae is saying.
We we do need an egress window uh per code um on on unit number one.
Bedroom.
For a bedroom.
But you don't have bedrooms down there, do you? No.
No, it it's per building code.
Uh what code is that? What code specifically are you talking about?
Yeah, not for not for like a family room or something.
Uh as long as you have a finished space, you you have to have two means of egress out of that space.
Um uh we would have to check that because I've never, I've only heard that as a requirement. I mean, I realize that you guys are the architects, but I've only heard that as a requirement for sleeping space.
Would sleeping space for sure, you'll have to have an egress escape, emergency escape window within the bedroom.
I I'm not familiar with that in a.
Yeah. I'm not familiar with it either. So as far as I know, you have a space downstairs uh as a basement, it doesn't really need an egress unless you have some kind of a you need to actually get into this space for some reason.
I think I can.
It's a rescue window, not an egress window. People don't need to get out. The fireman needs to get in. So it would seem to me, it would seem to me uh with this situation, you really don't need the window well. You don't need the larger windows. Uh my concern is is that, yes, you took out all of the interiors, that kind of thing, but you still left actually the thing that would make it code compliant for a bedroom after the fact.
So um okay, so it's unclear. I just I just ran the AI on it and it's unclear because it does say a finished basement must have at least two ways to get out in an emergency, but then it says then it says it has to have one in the bedroom if it's if it has bedrooms. So the code must have changed in the last few years, Nick, because um I've been in a lot of basements that don't have egress windows.
I don't, I don't think it's egress windows, it's just egress. Right.
I've been in a lot of basements that don't have two egresses.
Yeah, it's the code has been, I've been doing this for about twenty years and uh it hasn't changed since and, you know, there's obviously existing non-conforming conditions, but um
So.
But when you do have a habitable space uh as we do here in the basement, uh
Um so you need two forms of egress from the basement. Well, so then the question, and you've got the door on the other side, right? So you've got the stairs and the door on the on the other half of the basement, the in the other in the other unit. You've got that door, yeah. Okay, and you're saying here, you're going to do the window well in this uh window.
Yeah, here only because, you know, we have the opportunity, the basement wall on this unit here is is fully exposed above grade. You know, just to break up the elevation, get some more natural light into the space, you know, we would like to keep it. Um but if the board is strongly against it, you know, we 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 can remove it.
So you've um well, the thing is, even if we're if we're against it, you won't, you won't be able to I I I'm looking at um I'm looking at the the code and um you wouldn't be able to, the building department wouldn't approve it. I I didn't realize that, Nick. I I just looked it up. And it says a finished basement in Connecticut needs two forms of egress even without sleeping rooms unless it has two separate code compliant stairways.
Hmm, okay, that's fine.
Correct. Section R three ten point one of the uh Connecticut State Building Code.
Damn, can you, can you guys even just imagine what it was like? I don't even know what it was like before AI anymore.
Supported by USA Facts, billions in benefits.
Uh somebody turn that off!
Who really qualifies?
Okay, mute whoever it is. Okay. Okay, whoever that is has to get muted.
To snap and Medicaid.
I don't, I don't know who that is.
Posted by State Hall. Every video comes with interactive charts, so you can explore your state, your family situation. Watch Do You Qualify now at.
It's Peter Lowe's.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, all right, so. Look, here's the problem, Mr. Delio, is that um you already have a two-family house. And we're really concerned about that becoming a three-family house or a four-family house.
Understood.
So we were looking for a way to make sure that didn't happen because that's not the intent in these. And it's very, so I don't see another way of doing it except that to just condition it and to say that there shall be no um other facilities in the basement. All right, um any other questions from the commission? All right, seeing no other questions from the commission, I'm going to turn to public comment. Does anybody from the com- from the public wish to speak on this application? At Three Chimnoi Place in the R six zone, this is to construct a two-family residence with front yard parking. Anybody wish to speak on this application, Three Chin Moy? Kindly raise your virtual hand. Okay, no, no comments from the public. Uh does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No.
Seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed and we would kindly, Mr. McRae, if you would like to make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Three Chimnoy Avenue, Final Site Plan PLPZ 2025-377, applicant seeking to approve the construction new two-family dwelling and related site stormwater improvements on a 9,209 square foot property in the R6 Zone. The four proposed, whereas the four proposed outdoor parking spaces located within the required minimum front yard. See, commission finds that the proposed outdoor parking spaces are radically screened by landscaping per section 6155 of the BZR. Conservation issue comments dated 10/9/25 indicating recommendations to the proposal. Zoning issue comments 10/9/25 indicating no issues with the application. Sewer Division issue comments 10/9/25 as well, requesting applicants submit a signed letter acknowledging receipt of their P&amp;Z comments. DPW Engineering issue comments 10/9/25 indicating approval for zoning permit. EMAC issue comments dated 10/10/25 indicating a favorable review. And Wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire dated 8/29/25 indicating no action required. Therefore, a motion to approve the application for final site plan with the following conditions. Per conservation comments, existing mature trees are to remain, a 24-inch maple and an 18-inch maple. Per conservation comments, the proposed landscape should look to exchange some plantings with more native species. The applicant is to provide an updated soil erosion plan, indicating tree protection to the drip line, all S and E controls to be in conformity with Connecticut Deep March 30, 2024 guidelines for soil erosion and sediment control. Per the sewer division comment, the applicant has submitted a letter dated 11/9/25 acknowledging comments, and the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
And so what we would add to that is something that says, applicant to reduce the reduced size of the pervious pavers by the 24-inch maple to protect, to enable the survival of that tree and install appropriate protection during construction and staff, P&amp;Z staff to sign off on the reduction in size and the appropriate protections. Mr. Lowe?
Yeah, I just wondered if we could define, quote, adequate screening as the maintenance of those steed hollies at five to six feet.
What do you mean? Not following you, sorry.
Okay. I believe Mr. MacRae articulated that the commission finds the screening being offered as adequate, and I just want to make sure we're, we're defining what that, the height of that screening in the front.
Maintained at 60 inches, you said?
Yes, fine.
Okay. Well, whatever, whatever I'm asking.
Yeah, 60 to 72 inches, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins?
Yes, the driveway was supposed to be expanded from 12 inches to 14. Is that already covered by other materials, Nick?
It's actually on the revised, revised site plan.
Yeah, it's in the current submission.
And did we want to have a condition about no additional units to be added to a two-family?
No cooking or no, I would say, the commission notes that the applicant, somewhere in the whereas is, the commission notes that no cooking closets or bedrooms should, are allowed to be constructed, added to the basement spaces. I mean, it's in the recs.
Yeah.
But it was, so we're just making it as a note. It's not a condition or a modification, it's just reinforcing what's in it. So it's before the conditions, it's just to reinforce that that's what's in the notes. And that is in 695, somebody help me? What's the two-family sec? I always get those 695, yeah, four or five. Okay, whatever that is, they're laughing, they'll figure it out.
Yeah, thank you.
Alrighty, so, do I have a second for the revised motion?
Second?
Ms. Jenkins has seconded. Ms. Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. MacRae?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and the motion passes five nothing, and we move on to. Thank you very much, Mr. Delio. Good luck with your construction.
Thank you.
Who's, is that going to be, Ally? There she comes. Okay, so Third Sector New England, this is application number five. Third Sector New England for a final site plan for a proposed food share operation overseen and managed by the Food Shed Network with pickup at the North Greenwich Congregational Church lower parking lot on a 5.36 acre parcel located at 606 Riversville Road in the RA4. Madam Jersey?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm unsure what I'm supposed to do.
Well, we left you, when last we met, we left you with some questions. Go ahead, Ms. Jenkins.
Yes, actually, the question that I raised at the briefing, and you answered very, or someone answered very nicely, is the nature of defining this as a non, not, as a nonprofit organization. I was not familiar with fiscally sponsored organizations. It was very helpful discussion, and that it satisfactorily answered my question about the qualifying as a non, as a nonprofit. It's a charitable organization for these purposes, so I was satisfied with that, and thank you.
And the only question I had is that, that if you, that we would condition you, and that's going to be really basically an honor thing, our neighbor complaint thing, that if your volume was to increase, you're currently anticipating the 25 orders a week, that you would notify the commission. What we talked about, what we, I think we talked about this yesterday, is that what we could do is we could leave that to administrative approval if staff concurs with that. So if you suddenly go to 30, rather than go through the thing with us, that staff would review it, and if it looked like it didn't have much impact, they would not refer it to the commission. Is that okay, Patrick? Okay, so we would just make a condition that, should you see your volume increasing, just touch base with Patrick? And say, hey, we're a huge success, and this is what's happening, and they'll tell you, so you don't have to go through this process.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the commission?
Yes. We're talking about a actual procedure for the pickup and drop-off. It's 11 to 2 once a week?
Yes.
On a weekday?
Yes.
I think, I might have, yeah, I think I said in my email yesterday, we might do it 8 to 11, because that's when the van, that's when Renee comes down to drop off for Greenwich Public Schools. So we're gonna-
Okay, so why don't we just say sometime between 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM on weekends, on weekdays, on one weekday a week?
Yes.
And then that'll give you, because as long as it's in the middle of the day like that, I would, if, given where you are, I would try to avoid 8:00 AM, just because, yeah. But only for you guys, just because the traffic's bad. But, so giving you between 8:00 and 2:00, and we would encourage you not to, you know, because Riversville gets bad in the morning.
Yeah.
But that would leave you the flexibility. I think we're pretty indifferent, as long as it's kind of off-peak on a weekday. Nick, you good with that?
Yeah, and it's a drive-through. You're going to be using the John Street entrance and exits, one way?
Yes. Yeah.
And then the other thing, Nick, that you were asking about yesterday was the sign.
Right, there was no, there was a sign mentioned, but there was no detail on that. Is this just a sign during the operation from, you know, in the, on the week that, the one day that week? Or is this a permanent sign on the site talking about what's going on there?
No, it wouldn't be permanent. It would be kind of like the size of an election sign when people are campaigning, so.
Turn here for-
Here for-
Co-op.
Pickup, yeah, exactly.
So.
And that, we would put that out at 8:00, and then, or whenever we start and take it down at, you know.
Yeah, and you wouldn't need it, and you wouldn't need it once your people are established.
Right, it's a 20 directional sign, directional step sign, that's what kind of those things are, so, okay.
Okay, anything else?
And the setup is 30 minutes before everybody shows up?
I'd imagine, and then maybe once we get going, it could be like 15 minutes before, that'll be easy.
Right.
And brief.
Mr. Lowe?
Yeah. What sort of neighbor engagement have you all conducted? Specifically with regard to the, you know, the logistics and the specifics of the, of the drop-off and pickup, etc.?
We were required through this process to send out a letter to all of the abudders. So everyone has been notified of that process twice now. So those are the abutting neighbors, and outside of that, it's not, not much, as far as-
Did you get any, excuse me, but did you get any response from the neighbors at all?
Just one saying he'd love to participate in the CSA, and when, when can he subscribe?
Well, isn't that nice? Great.
Yeah, that was just the one.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Commission, anything else? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? This is Third Sector New England. But what that is, is a food share operation, which will be managed by the Food Shed Network, and it will be at the North Greenwich Congregational Church on Riversville Road. Any public comment on that, kindly raise your virtual hand. Seeing no comment. I don't, is anybody on the commission object to closing this application at this time?
No.
Alrighty, this application is hereby closed. Once again, Madam Jenkins, you are seated for Mr. Yaski.
Yes, ma'am.
And kind, Mr. Secretary?
Okay. 606 Riversville Road, Final Site Plan, Special Permit, PLPZ 2025-378. Applicants requesting Final Site Plan, Special Permit to utilize a lower parking lot near North Greenwich Congregational Church as a pickup location for a dry-through distribution of foods. The, this would support a subscriber-based service that delivers grown produce for up to eight months a year on a 3.68, 5.36 acre property located in the RA4 Zone. The commission finds that Wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire dated 9/9/25 indicating no action required. Other than that, therefore, a motion to approve the application for final site plan, Special Permit with the following conditions. The operation shall be only on weekday, weekday, between, one weekday, between 11, 8 and 11, excuse me, 8 and 2:00 PM, correct?
Yes.
The signage for this will be limited to step signs as directional location only. The applicant actually can use 30 minutes of setup, and must, everything must be removed about 30 minutes after the time period of one day per week. And.
I just got one ad real quick for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
The commission finds that this use is permitted by special permit in the zone as described under section 694A12 of the-
A12.
Of the business zone, of the, of the zoning regulations.
This is not a special permit application, just so that we're.
So, okay, I'm just taking it from the agenda. That's, it's okay, that's fine.
Taking it from staff comments.
Okay, not a big deal.
Yeah, it doesn't have it as a special permit, and it's, we haven't opened the public hearing, so.
So, okay, so take that away, because I was just reading. So what we're going to have to do is we are saying this is an ancillary use under a, an ancillary not-for-profit use as allowed under 693 and 694. That's the correct way to do it. As part of the church's activities. Same as what we just went through, for example, with Living Hope having Alcoholics Anonymous kind of thing. So it's not by special permit, it is an activity that is ancillary to the church's community outreach.
Community, right.
And then you would just help us phrase that, but that would be the 693, 94, sorry. I just was on autopilot reading from the staff report.
No, so this was filed as a site plan, a special permit application?
It's not up as a special permit.
I'm wondering if we put it in the wrong section and we noticed it.
It only says site plan. It's noticed as a site plan.
Pretty sure it was a special permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we did a pre-app on it, that's why I'm struggling here, but I didn't, I was like stuck. We did a pre-app.
Yeah.
And then we would have to renotice it to approve it.
That's what I'm trying to find out, if we, I'm trying to see if we've noticed it.
Yeah, let me, let me check for the notice, hang on.
Yeah, look at the notice, because the agenda is definitely just a site plan.
Yeah, hang on, hang on, I gotta-
But in my head, it was a special permit, and I went on autopilot reading the staff report, because, yeah, we, we heard it in our pre-app.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can rectify it by motion if we did notice it. If not.
Okay, so let's just see, and Ms. Jersey, we will fix this, because this would be our bad, so we will fix this whatever way is easiest for you. This would be our administrative goof. And you know, we're human, sometimes we may goof. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
No problem, you just let me know if you need me.
Yeah, so it's just up to us at this point to figure out if we goof.
Hold on, I'm just pulling up Peter's legal ad.
Okay. Glad, glad I made that amendment. Because that's what woke us all up.
Yeah. Hold on.
Oh, isn't the legal ad at the end of our agenda?
Uh, no, I'm actually looking at, I'm on the server, looking on the legal ad that was run, and it is hold on, it is not in the legal ad that was run.
The special permit. Okay, so how do we fix it without making the applicant show up again, or does the applicant have to?
I don't, well, I think the applicant has to show up. We'll just renotice it for the next meeting and vote on it.
Okay, so we'll renotice it. We'll make you the first item at 4 o'clock. No, we can't do that, because it'll be the first public hearing item. You're going to have to come, I'm really sorry. And, but you won't have to talk or anything, and we'll get public comment, and then we'll just make the motion.
And we have everything recorded, transcribed, and from Zoom.
We can't.
Is that next hearing?
No, well, the-
It'll be the 20-
Of November.
Second, no.
Twenty, whatever, the last, not Thanksgiving, before Thanksgiving.
25.
They make sure that we can't cook. That's how they figure this out, our schedule. The commission is not allowed to cook for Thanksgiving. So it'll be before Thanksgiving, no matter how busy the agenda is, we will, we will take care of this for you.
Okay.
Okay, and we're really sorry.
Yeah, it wasn't in either ad.
Okay, all right, really sorry. Well, geez, okay, glad, I'm sorry, you guys. So good that I modified it, sorry that I didn't catch it over the weekend, because just, never looked at it.
Saw the pre-app and assumed.
No, and I kept seeing it in the regular meeting, and it just didn't click. Okay, sorry very much, Ally. All right, bye-bye. All right, so now, Mr. MacRae is recused from the next application. And that is 11 Ledge Road, and we will have Mary, seated, Mary Jenkins will be seated for Dennis Yaski. Again, that's Jenkins for Yaski, and Jones will be seated for Mr. MacRae.
Yeah.
Okay, and so our next application, do we have the applicant? Yes, there he is. Our next application, 11 Ledge Road LLC for a final coastal subdivision to subdivide a one point, a one-acre lot into two parcels, where Lot A will equal 18,506 square feet, Lot B will equal 18,507 square feet, and Lot L will equal 6,547 square feet of open space on a property located 11 Ledge Road in the R12 and coastal overlay zones. Mr. Lowe's already got his hand up.
Yeah, I'll wait until we get up.
Did we check in that we've got Mr. Brazili?
Mr. Brazili, oh, this is not the public hearing yet, though.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Brazili, you can go back to sleep. We are actually still not in the public hearing.
Right, we're not.
That's okay.
Too far on the agenda.
I know, I think, I, I don't know about you guys, but you know, it's been, it's been a long few days. Um, okay, Mr. Hasland, knowing, knowing all that, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, uh, Chip Hasland for the applicant eleven Ledge uh, Road LLC. Um, with me tonight is John Zukos, Zukoskus, who is the principal in eleven Ledge. Um, Derek Dunay from Rocko, Rocko D'Andrea's office and Matt Pop from Environmental Land Solutions. Um, I think at this point, uh, if you just promote um, Mr. Zukoskus and Mr. Dunay.
Um, we have, we have, we have Mr. Dunay. And um.
Oh, John goes under his wife's name.
Okay, would you please raise your hand? Okay, we got him, Melinda Volner.
There we go, great.
Never gonna find him.
Yeah. Yeah, that just occurred to me.
Okay, you just need to accept the promotion. You should be seeing it right now. You just click on it. There you go.
Okay, um, as the staff notes indicate, uh, and by the way, we did attend the briefing on, on Monday. Um, you did review this back in last spring and uh, yeah, there was a lot of comment from the engineering division and this is an area that's prone to flooding. And they wanted us to really expand our analysis uh, of the area. So uh, D'Andrea's office, mostly Derek, spent a good part of the summer working with engineering in uh, producing the analysis that they were looking for and uh, which culminated in meeting that we had in September with patent attendants as well, um, with engineering. And at that point, all the issues were resolved. Except a couple of minor um, matters that have been now pursuant to engineering, removed to, we have to respond to prior to filing the Mylar, but the commission can go ahead and, and approve this application if you deem it appropriate. Um, as I said, there's a lot of work put on in the interim period of trying to resolve any issues. And I think we're, we're satisfactorily resolved those with the help of uh, D'Andrea's office, um, leading the, the vanguard here. Um, some other issues that arose back in the spring and then have kind of continued on in staff notes. Uh, there's an issue about the open space and we had had in the original declaration that uh, we could uh, uh, grant easements across the open space in the future for utilities, et cetera. I removed those from the declaration. Uh, and there's only one easement currently which serves a gas line. It's a spur actually, uh, which serves two houses, two other properties. And uh, we also had Matt Pop go back and look at the landscape plan and uh, revise it so that that area is now planted as meadow with uh, wildflowers. So that if by any chance we need to go in and repair that gas line or uh, replace it, uh, we can easily uh, repair also the open space area by just replanting those, those uh, those wildflowers. I should say that the gas line's only been there for a couple of years. It's in, it shouldn't need any sort of repair replacement for decades to come. So I don't think there's gonna be any issue, but again, Matt's plan anticipates that someday if that has to happen, we can easily replant that area. We did look at other areas, um, where we could put the open space, but this was the most logical. It gives good screening to the neighbor. Um, we didn't want to split up the open space into two separate pieces because I think those would be much harder to um, uh, moderate um, and make sure that people didn't violate the use of those spaces. So it, at the end of the day, it really was the best place to put it and uh, we hope that the commission agrees in that respect. Um, conservation mentioned a couple of rock outcrops that they wanted to uh, possibly maintain. There's gonna be no uh, change to the open space in, under the new plan, so there's no grading, et cetera, within the open space. There's a rock outcrop to the south, which we're gonna strive to maintain. And in fact, in the grading plan, it shows that the grade, the new grade include incorporates that rock. And then there's one right by the front door, which we'd like to take out. Uh, the rain garden is quite extensive and this is the only area really that could have a lawn. They'd like to take it out to make access easier and also have a lawn space as well.
So, Mr. Hasland, just to interrupt you, cause you're going back and forth from the subdivision to the development plan.
Yes.
So just to interrupt you. Uh, from what I understand, your resubmit date, the, that you, you withdrew and then you resubmitted, but your resubmission was before October first?
The subdivision, correct, yep.
Regardless, so that the new law requiring that all, all of these in the coastal come to the commission. And we're not, but we do have the ability to elevate the development and that is one of the things that we're gonna ask for, given the location and um, hydrology of this site, the comments about the rock god cropping. So what I'd like to do is save you a time tonight. Because, or today, because we will take more time once you have a development plan, given the conservation comments, what went on with. And I know engineering is okay now, but given all the back and forth, uh, and the fact that if you had just been a few months later, you would have been in here anyway. That is our proposal. Plus, there's this um, plus you have to go to I W W A because of Lot A being in the U R A. Um, so it just made sense all around as I looked at it. Haven't, I actually haven't um, talked to the commission about it, so I hope, I don't think I mentioned it in the briefing that this was in my, on my mind, but that's what I'd like to do. Um, is to elevate it and have us look at it. I did debate and at the time you can work this out, um, at the time we can work this out. If we should only elevate Lot A or whether they both should, um, thoughts on that, Patrick? Cause I didn't ask you about that today. How many times can you talk to someone in one day and forget to ask them a question?
This is part of your consideration, if I may just interrupt. Um, we did get uh, a sign off from inland wetlands for both A and B, but we have staff notes from A that we agreed to observe, so they're.
No, no, but that's, but the thing is, you got a sign off for the subdivision. Uh, as I read it and as I checked it, yes, Monday. As I understand it, you are gonna have to go before wetlands, cause what you got a sign off for was the subdivision, the green sheet. You don't have a green sheet for the development because you are working in the U R A. That's how I have been told it.
Well, I think what happened was we got a sign off in the green sheet, but because A was in the upland review area.
Exactly.
Staff then issued a staff report um, on that area, but I don't think it requires us to go back, but we'll.
Not what I've been told, my friend.
Well, we'll soon clarify that then. Thank you.
Oh, well, it does, yeah, so, yeah, you're gonna have to clarify, cause what I was, so Patrick, can you answer that? Cause what I went through all the notes, what I saw is they are going Lot A has to go before, has to get a wetlands permit.
So that, that was, I believe, part of the subdivision discussion that the wetlands agency uh, undertook, but I also believe there was a staff uh, review of the other lot is what I understand. So I think what Mr. Kazan's saying is that they've done that part of it already. Um, again.
Subdivision.
No, no, the lot development.
Oh, I know. I asked Jackie. That's why you guys are looking at me like this. So I asked Jackie over the weekend. I send out the emails over the weekend so they can answer me Monday morning. And I said, Jackie, you've got this comment in your staff report, but it wouldn't be till development because that is not that being forty foot of, of the U R A is not anything to do with the subdivision. And she said, yes, when it gets developed, it has to go back. Lot A has to go back for wetlands review.
Yeah.
Why don't you guys clarify that?
Yep.
Regardless, we can always change the condition to have it returned to us. Patrick, did I cut you off? I'm sorry.
No, it, it, all, all I was saying is, and I don't think the commission was aware of this, when the last time the subdivision was filed, there was also um, separate administrative site plans that were filed concurrently and those would began to be processed as they would while we were waiting subdivision decision. So a lot of the administrative review was taken care of, or at least preliminary comments were given to the applicant. So they know, it's, so I, I think they have, what I'm saying is I think they have their wetlands approval. Uh, if the plans change, it will go back to them and then it will come to us. Uh, but this time it'll come to the commission.
Anybody have their staff report open? No, okay, hold on a second, cause.
I understand, I see what Jackie said here. I, I don't think she was aware that the wetlands agency acted.
I don't think she was either, no.
Okay, cause I asked her to check it for me on Monday morning. I said, is this something we need, if, and, and so let's straighten it out regardless. And then what we'll do is, depending on where staff comes out, staff can make the decision. But given the depths, the, uh, uh, all the conservation concerns, all the DPW concerns and the fact that it's in the U R, it has you, it has upland review area in Lot A. It just made a lot of sense and given the change in the state law, just made a lot of sense that we just do it now.
I was hoping, Madam Chair, that, you know, cause in fact, this is very unusual in a way, this subdivision application, because it did include so much development. And I'm not sure there's that much more we would give you than you don't already, that you don't already have. So I was kind of hoping, quite frankly, that.
We can leave it to, we can leave it to our trustworthy staff to make the call. They, we can, we can just word it so that um, we look at the development plan and Pat advises you. Um, if he thinks that that needs to go before the commission or whether it's satisfactory, just lost Patrick, but I'm sure he's okay with it. Um, hi, I mean, we're just really sensitive to these right now and the scope of the conservation comments initially was concerning. Um, so we can leave it like that. If that works, Patrick, does that work for you? And, cause you can always make the call whether or not.
Well, yeah, it gets a, it's the commission's option. If they wanna see it, uh, please specify it. If, if you wanna leave it to staff, which we always have the option of, of elevating it, we will do so. You know, we, we'll take it under advisement and, and let the applicant know if we think it needs to come back to you.
That's reasonable. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we're not trying to make work for you guys, but on the, well, unless you do something that isn't gentle to the planet, but um, if you can come up with a good development plan and Patrick and staff are okay with it, then you know, it's fine. It's if they have concerns, okay.
That's fine. I think that modifications from what we filed uh, back in the spring are relatively minor, but it may even have been signed off by the various departments, which is good. So I can point those out very easily and I think Pat's familiar with them because he sat in some of those meetings as well. So I think we're pretty clean now with those two applications, but
Okay.
I'm okay with you leaving that to staff, hoping you'll close the subdivision and, and vote on it.
I'm gonna try to do that. If the commission doesn't have open questions, that was uh, my intent, but you always could have questions. Uh, Mr. Lo, I'm sorry, I jumped in.
Sorry.
Yeah, I, I just had a question, Mr. Hasland. Given conservation's general uh, concerns regarding the uh, ledge outcroppings and I, I I heard you say that you're, uh, you're trying to minimize that or reduce it and except for in the one case uh, near the front door. I wonder if you could just comment on the scope of the removal of that proposed uh, outcropping or ledge uh, at, near the front.
I think it's gotta be Mr. Domain, doesn't it?
Uh, yeah, I'll defer to Derek on that, Derek Dunay.
Sure. Uh, good evening, uh, commission members. Uh, Derek Donay from Rocko D'Andrea Incorporated. Um, we're the site engineers for the project. Uh, as far as the scope, it's, we say ledge outcroppings, but it's really basically like a boulder in one area and a boulder in another area. There's no other ledge, like all the test pits and stuff. There was no other ledge on the site. There was just two areas where rock was sticking out of the ground. It's, they're not like significant um, uh, ledge outcroppings that cover a big area. Um, if uh, do you want me to bring up a picture or?
No, you can just say, is it like, you know, two feet above the ground or is it twenty feet? I mean, I don't know.
Oh, okay, I understand what you're saying. Yes, I would say they're probably like, one of them's probably uh, three to four feet. It's kind of like, you know, when you see in the yards, you'll see just like this one random rock that's sticking out of the yard. It's one of those type of situations. So it's not an extensive uh, piece of ledge. It's just more of just one of those rocks. So one of them, as um, Mr. Haslam was saying, is on the property line along the south. We were gonna keep that one anyways. There's none of, none of them are in the open space, so we're not removing anything in the open space area. And the only other one we wanted to remove was right next to where the front door is for Lot B. And that was just so that they have a little bit of green space in that area, a little bit of lawn, cause most of the area, we've done extensive rain garden with plantings. So most of the property is taken up with a lot of other great environmental features.
And, and, and that one just rises above grade level.
Yeah, I would say about like three, three feet, something like that, three, four feet.
Okay, and it's, it covers multiple feet.
Yeah, give me one second and I'll tell you exactly what it is while I.
Or if you have it, um, he made you co-host, so you could just share it.
Do you want me to share? Sure.
Yeah, sure. Just show it to Mr. Lo, so he's comfortable.
Thing, I'm sharing. Let's see, hold on, let me just get it. Uh, alright, hold on. Let me get up there, where we go. Okay, that was the extensive here. Let me zoom in here. This was our extensive drainage system here. Hold on. Okay, so can you see the walk coming from the driveway where my cursor is? These steps going right up to the front of the house? Let's see, let me zoom in a little bit more.
Yeah, it is, okay. And now I got your cursor.
Okay, these steps right here. So right, right to the right here where my cursor is, right above where these.
Leaving it.
That's the one we wanted to remove. This one rock is just a small rock here. And the one on the left side of the screen here by the property line, we were going to remain, have remained. So that's, that's the, and that's the scope of it. It's just this one small rock.
Okay, doesn't, it wouldn't, doesn't look totally small, but, oh, I see, okay, relative to, yeah, I got it. Okay, thank you for that.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Madam Jenkins?
Uh, yes, just a quick question about the demarcation of the open space. Um, boulders were proposed for the northern boundary and it sounds like there may be a fence on the southern boundary, but were there any plans to demarcate the open space in any other way?
Yes, and I can speak to that if you want. I have Matt Pop's landscape plan up here. Um, so as you see the open space here. The, the, you're right. So the bottom of the page here, that property line, there's currently an iron fence that separates the two properties. So, and that's a nice condition, so I would say keep that there. The uh, the other side here, we have the, the boulders.
Did we ask you to remove it so that it doesn't limit access to the open space on that side? I mean, the idea is that.
Sorry, to, to remove the, the iron fence?
Yeah.
Now, that separates the neighboring properties, our two lots, so that, that neighbor doesn't have access to the open space. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it makes sense, but.
They're not part of the subdivision.
I get that. The problem is, if you're wildlife, you don't know the difference.
Correct. Coming from their area, I mean, obviously the wildlife can come in from the street or from the neighbors on the other.
You're gonna be there, you're gonna put signs up.
No, 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 you know what I mean, though. It's, it's not totally an enclosed area.
Yeah, I got it.
This is just the one, it's an existing, it's a nice fence, some of it, um, not to see whose property it's on.
I don't know what you think.
Question.
Mary, what do you think?
I, you know, I don't have a problem with that. It seems to me if it's there already, it's, to some extent, protect the.
And when I look at it.
Space.
Um.
And the trees. It's not a, just a fence, it's a, a fence with.
Lots of trees and um, and you know, when I look at it, if you delineate the whole, the whole open space with boulders and not just the north side, it might kind of look like a graveyard.
Yeah, no, and I, I guess I had not focused on how relatively narrow it is as, as against the north and, and south boundary. So I withdraw the comment, but thank you.
Okay. Yeah, no, actually, it's really good you asked, cause I had it in my notes, so you just beat me to it. Yeah. Um, okay, the only other comment we had from the staff report following up on that is the in the, in the deck, to amend the declaration of um, of open space restrictions. Um, so that it uh, has a long-term maintenance plan.
Yes.
And um, also addresses in our favorite thing, invasive species, which if you don't have them in your yard, you're very lucky. It's, they're very, they're very hardy.
It's a lot of removal by hand in my yard.
Yeah, um, so.
Put, take the notes from the map and put them also in the declaration.
On the Mylar, um, and notes from that, the declaration. And the notes from them, um, as well as the notes from the map. Okay. Okay. Um, what else? Any other questions from the commission? You can take it down, Mr. Domain.
Sure.
Domi.
Donay.
Is that an N?
Uh, yeah, Donay, French.
Donay, we, you say. Um, but then people slaughter it. They see all the vowels and they don't know what to do.
Exactly.
I know, uh, okay. So anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Kindly raise your virtual hand. This is eleven Ledge Road. Eleven Ledge Road, final coastal subdivision. Anybody wish to speak on this application? No, alrighty. Um, does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Doki, doki. Seeing no objection. This application is hereby. Okey dokey, seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed. And I will make a motion as to the application of 11 Ledge Road LLC for a final coastal subdivision of a one acre lot into two parcels where lot A will equal eighteen thousand five hundred and six square feet. Lot B will equal eighteen thousand five hundred and seven square feet. And lot L will equal six thousand five hundred and forty-seven square feet of open space on a property located at 11 Ledge Road in the R-12 and coastal overlay zone. Whereas as proposed, both lots appear to meet the lot size and shape requirements contained in section 6205 of the Greenwich Building Zone Regulations. Whereas the proposed open space includes a 10-foot wide gas easement and the applicant has provided a copy of the easement agreement dated June 9th, 2023 and filed on the Greenwich Land Records between the Connecticut Natural Gas Corporation and the owner of the property. Whereas on 11, 625, Conservation issued the following comments about the open space. Regrading activities should be avoided, should first be avoided, or second minimized if no other option is available. A diverse palette of native plantings is shown, which is intended to restore natural habitat and improve site ecology. Whereas Conservation also expressed concerns on 11, 625 about the future development of the proposed lots, particularly as to ledge removal, phasing plans, cut fill, and any work in the upland review area which exists on the proposed lot A. Whereas the applicant proposes approximately 21 demarcation boulders across the northern side of the open space parcel only. Uh, whereas a fence appears to remain across the southern border of the open space. Whereas the proposed declaration of open space restrictions and easements states the topography of the landscape in the open space area shall be maintained in its present condition shown in the S and E approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And no topographic changes shall be made in any portion of the open space area, including filling and grading. Whereas the declaration of open space restrictions does not currently include a descriptive long-term maintenance plan for the open space parcel, including invasive species monitoring. Whereas DPW Engineering advised approval for subdivision on 11, 725 and requested the following be completed prior to the filing of the subdivision Mylar on the GLR. Approval from the Private Road Association in writing for the proposed driveways and drainage connections. Standard notes for the subdivision map. Whereas deep advised on 10, 2825, it had no additional comments for this proposal. Whereas the IWW Greensheet sign-off dated 3, 10, 25 indicates no permit is required for the subdivision. Whereas IWWWA may be required for the development of Lot A due to the presence of a wetland 40 feet north of the site. Whereas DPW sewer comments on 11, 10, 25 sewer comments on 11, 10, 25, which the applicant acknowledged in writing, the sewer comments relate to future development of the parcels for which the new lateral as well as a new connection will be necessary. Therefore, be it resolved, this application for subdivision is found consistent with the 2019 P O C D and thereby approved with the following conditions. Staff to recommend whether the applicant should return to the Planning and Zoning Commission for site development approval of both parcels. The declaration of open space restrictions and easements shall be amended to include long-term maintenance and invasive species management plan for the open space parcel, as well as uh the necessary notes from the map. Items requested by DPW prior to the Mylar filing shall be completed. All outstanding staff and departmental comments are to be addressed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
I.
I didn't see your lips move, Mr. Wells. How'd you do that?
I'm a ventriloquist, Madam Chair.
Madame Jenkins.
Hi.
Madame Jones.
Hi.
Mr. Low.
Hi.
Albin is also I and with that the motion passes five, nothing.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Oh, I forgot to ask if anybody wanted to argue with the motion, but I guess nobody did, huh? All right.
Too late now.
All right, uh, Mr. Bazili, time to wake up.
Yes.
It's the public hearing. Welcome to the public hearing, folks. What do you want to do, Mr. Low?
What do I want to do?
Yeah, you have a meeting starting in 23 minutes. We won't be done with this. Do you want to stay seated on Toyota and miss your meeting, or do you want to seat someone else?
Uh, whatever, whatever you want to do, I.
No, it's you won't be done, so you would have to leave partway through this because I don't think we're going to finish this in 23 minutes. And ticking.
Okay, so um, if I leave, then
Then.
Then I'm off it for good?
The ideal thing is to just seat someone else now. Yes, we would seat someone else. If you leave partway through, you would be off it and be if if we close it tonight, you would be off it for good. If we don't close it. Um, but I'm sorry, I think we've already got the maximum extension, so we have to close it tonight. And you would be off it for good once we've closed it. So it's your call.
Yeah, I I I I've made my concerns, um, so.
Amplly, yes, we've heard them at the briefing, so everybody and you're you can stay and comment. Uh, we'll call on you first, but you just wouldn't be seated. Okay, so Ms. Jenkins, you will be seated for Mr. Low. But he will be here for the next 20 plus minutes, but just not seated. And then Mr. Yeski is back. And so you are seated, Mr. Yeski. Okay, where's our applicant? Mr. Brower? Okay. Alright, he's on his way in.
I want to thank Mary for giving me a break and hopefully she can help me on Simmons and Berkeley. Mary, I do you, are you comfortable taking those applications on?
Whatever you would like me to do, Mr. Yeski, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Um, actually, she's already seated on Berkeley, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be, um, Ms. Jones would have to take over for you, Mr.
Ms. Jones, are you comfortable? That is what, Berkeley?
Yeah, Berkeley, um, Mary's already seated.
That was a visual yes there from Mary, uh, from Anna.
Yeah, you have to talk.
Thumbs up. I'm sorry, I have to verbally say yes, I'm fine.
Yes, because of of Mr. Bazili. Yeah, yes, okay. Um, okay, so we have the applicant, we have a plan for who's going to be seated for what. So you are, um, so Mary will seat now, well, we'll we'll get there when we get there. Okay, um, and so we go with application number eight. We've been hearing these combined, um, when they weren't being postponed. So um, I'm going to go ahead and combine them again. Uh, application number eight is TCS Realty LLC for a zoning map amendment to rezone fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty-four square feet of a total seventy thousand six hundred and eighty-two square foot parcel at 75 East Putnam Avenue from the former P-zone to the LB-zone. And the next application is TCS Realty LLC for final coastal site plan and special permit to construct a one thousand two hundred and two twenty-four square foot addition and interior renovation of the customer waiting area, restrooms, break room and sales area, as well as an eight hundred and fifty-two square foot enclosed service drop-off area, the result of which would exceed forty thousand cubic feet in volume in a business zone. The property is seventy thousand six hundred and eighty-two square feet uh, at 75 East Putnam. It is the LB coastal overlay zone and post-road impact overlay. And also the former P-zone. And with that, uh, Mr. Brower.
Good afternoon. Um, for the record, Eric Brower, on behalf of the uh, the applicant, I'm also here tonight with um as needed, uh, our design team, uh, to answer questions they, as they come up, as well as Rachel Calom, Calomo, uh, who's our lighting expert, uh, who definitely will be presenting this evening. Um, I forwarded um some materials that were added to the uh, presentation uh, materials if those could be brought up.
Uh, they were not combined into one document. Which file do you want first? They don't come to us as left to right when they come through as attachments, so just tell me.
Went to the, when I went to the uh, the town website, it was all put together uh in a stream. Is that?
Let's, Tracy, I can see if I can get that.
Uh, if not, we can, um, I think Grinoff's office uh has it uh compiled into one thread, but.
Hold on, I'm bringing him in.
But it was definitely on the um, the the website link. I can't hear Tracy.
I have it.
You didn't, sorry.
Talking to herself.
Yep, I am. It's all good. The doc where I accessed the documents, they were not combined, so but if Pat's got them, that's fine.
Okay. Ready to go.
Yeah, can we call that? Bring that up onto the screen or?
Yeah, I think he's working on it. And next time, send them combined. It's just easier for us and frankly, we're not administrative staff for applicants.
Understood. We'll make sure we do that the next time. Um, so the, this application was opened on August 5th. Uh, at that time, initial presentation was made. Um, the project's also been through the Architecture Review Committee uh process. Uh, so what was presented uh in in August and part of the record was the overall uh plans, the landscape plan, the development plan. Um, we also worked with the engineering division uh in terms of uh what drainage would be required for the uh proposed alterations and um we demonstrated to them that there was actually a reduction in coverage uh, in previous coverage on the site so that it wasn't necessary uh to have an elaborate uh underground system. So uh, under the exemption provision, we have uh the um, the drainage is handled uh by existing conditions and splash pads. And um, and that has received the endorsement from DPW. Um, I wanted to, before we moved on to uh lighting, which of course is a significant part of this project, a couple of comments from the briefing session. Uh, it was observed that the uh neither the existing or proposed surveys indicated the uh setback from the building to the uh rear property line. And that is now shown on both uh the existing conditions and proposed survey. Um, that number, yes, and so we're, I think, what is it, a hundred and thirty-four uh feet? If um, we can blow that up. Uh, but there's no change proposed to that portion of the building. So uh, all the other setbacks had been shown and this one is now added and it's, yeah, one thirty-eight point four one um, to the existing and proposed building. Uh, the other clarification, uh, we had a lot of different floor plans and diagrams submitted since the original submission. And at one point, there was confusion as to the number of existing and proposed service bays. And one of the exhibits did indicate a proposed layout of bays as nine. And in fact, we have twelve existing and twelve proposed, so there's no.
So interruption there, you're reducing your parking. And under the regs, just focusing on the bays, you would technically need to have sixty spaces just for the bays and you're going from thirty-nine spaces to thirty-five. Um, is there anywhere else that you are? Uh, are you reducing inventory? Uh?
Well, it's a.
I mean, is there anywhere you're offsetting that that reduction so that you're not more non-conforming as to parking?
Yes, absolutely. So the numbers, the the thirty-nine to thirty-five reduction of uh for parking spaces, um, that takes place in the area uh within the public lot. Um, in other words, the area that's
Right.
regularly open for customer parking, which is traditionally reserved, uh, along, left open, I should say, along the front of the building. And uh, the uh, the balance is is display cars. The uh, the past practice for 50 years is that the uh service bay cars, which would um be sixty, as you pointed out, would be uh, has been and would continue to be placed in the rear. Um, there's easily, if you look at the um aerial photo, the Town GIS, uh, there's comfortably at least sixty or seventy spaces without any tandem use and um service stalls are permitted to have tandem parking. And with that, there's at least another thirty um that can be accommodated back there. So we have the availability.
So then let's take the bays out of it and your usable indoor space is increasing one thousand um twenty-four square feet and that would increase your parking requirement. How are you offsetting that?
Correct. So that would have a net increase of three uh parking spaces. And so what we can do is where we have um any, well, the the parking for the usable in uh includes employee as well as customer parking. So the um, the the total site provides more than enough uh, for the three additional spaces. And uh, we would just maintain a workable uh keeping of open spaces in the front for customers. Obviously, that's key to running the business. So uh, that that balance has worked uh well uh for 50 years.
Well, except that you're increasing the square footage and you're showing a decrease, but what you're saying is the decrease in the parking is in the front lot.
Um, yes.
Now.
So what we.
But I think you're, if you would just let me finish the thought. By joining, by converting the P-zone into LB, the section of P-zone, Patrick, help me out with this. Um, uh, the section of P-zone that you're converting has parking spaces on it. It should definitely be counted in your total parking spaces because you are now making that. I don't know how you go about this, but what we would be wanting to see is the total amount of parking that you are providing. How much is inventory? And how much is, so you have you have the one percent, one per seven thousand square feet of outdoor display, you have the one for two fifty of usable indoor space and the five for the service space. So we're forgetting that. You now have this as part of your LB and um you have to show how much parking you're using for inventory. So I don't know why you would exclude it for the from this calculation you've given us and why you're only counting thirty-nine spaces or thirty-five.
I'm counting, no, I'm counting the striped spaces in the front, which go from thirty-nine to thirty-five. What I'm saying is clear by looking at.
That's not your total parking, sir.
No, it is not. I'm trying to finish the sentence. So what is clear from the uh GIS aerial is that the site for 50 years has been utilized in the back for employee and inventory and for.
I understood you said that. I did understand you say that, but what I'm saying is that you when you submit to us, in my mind, unless Patrick or Tracy correct me, you should show your total parking, your total outdoor inventory usage in spaces or in square footage, but you should be counting, especially because you've rezoned part of that parking lot. You should be counting not just the front, because you, why aren't you counting your employee parking as part of your parking?
I'm counting everything in the rear. It's just not striped. If you would like the.
But you're only counting thirty-nine spaces and you have a great deal, much more than thirty-nine spaces on the property.
Yes, and I just said that would be um at least seventy and thirty additional in tandem. If you'd like to see that striped, we can, we can provide that. It's from an operation.
It has to be striped. I would just like the number of cars that can go back there. What is inventory and what is employee parking? That's all I'm asking for. In total, in what is, in what is back there, what do you have in inventory and what do you have in, what do you? What do you have in inventory and what do you have in, what are you using for employee parking? In total, and what are you using for bays? So you have three categories of parking that you have back there and you haven't shared any of it with us. And I'm just asking if, if we, uh, if we were to move this forward, uh, and we took you on your word that in total, you can accommodate the reduction in the front parking. You're not increasing the non-conformity. That you would then give us a table of all the, of all the cars that you can accommodate on site and how they allocate between the uses.
Yes, that can certainly be done. I represent that and we would have to demonstrate that to staff before they were going to sign off on any.
We would condition it somehow. If we were to move this forward, we would condition it somehow so that we could check. But so what you're saying is that the thirty-nine to thirty-five is not indicative of total parking? And I'm saying, great, give us the total and then tell us how much you're using for each category. And in, and in great part, I'm asking you this so we don't have to ask it if there's ever another application from here. People will know. Striping would be great, but given the uses you have back there, I think it's kind of spending money for no reason because you don't have. So I would say, just tell us what you're accommodating. Because it, when you're doing vehicle storage back there, um, you can park them pretty tight. You don't need standard dimension parking places. So all I want to know is how much inventory can you accommodate? How much employee parking can you accommodate? How much bay? Bay car can you accommodate in total on the property?
Absolutely. Understood.
And I just, I want a table that just breaks it out. Um, um, and you, yeah. Okay, I'm going to stop now. Those are two questions. You were trying to go through the briefing, but you've got a bunch of hands now up. So I, up to you how you want to do it.
Um, well, I would, um, I mean, I don't know, uh, I, I think what I would like to do if we can is, uh, focus on the lighting. Um, we, there were other questions that came up that, um, we could get into, but the, the lighting, uh, was obviously key. Um, and we have a, an expert who's, um, put together a report. She's updated a report. Uh, she's present tonight to answer questions. I did want to clarify something extremely important and I don't know if others, um, mis- misread or misinterpreted the, uh, a thirty percent reduction. There's been a lot of discussion about that. And, uh, the regulation, uh, itself does require, um, an hour after closing or ten PM, lighting to be reduced, um, by thirty percent. The title of our diagram, it shows thirty percent dimmed reduction. But to be clear, we're reducing it seventy percent. So we're reducing the, uh, permitted compliant lighting plan. It's been submitted to go to thirty percent, a seventy percent reduction.
You would have this on timers, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
And have you ever answered us why you have to have lights back there and why you can't do infrared technology?
Yes, I, I thought we did touch that on that. There, there's two components. Um, and, uh, the, the primary one, which is the driving factor is why there's been lights back there for fifty years, even though they're not neighbor friendly, is that, um, as we look out the window tonight, um, it's dark. Uh, so.
And employees have to go back there, but they don't have to go all the way to the back of the lot. You could do the employee parking in a lit area closer to the post road. So you don't have to light the back by Seacham Lane in order to keep employees illuminated. Their parking could be more convenient because they're in and out every day, whereas your inventory can stay in the back corners.
Well, we also have service cars that are, um, parked and, uh, picked up. Uh, and that's actually the largest amount of, uh, of parking.
What time do they start? They stop picking up for service? I thought it was like six o'clock.
Well, it's, they'll, they'll accommodate, um, a customer, uh, the, this facility itself is open until eight. So, um, in terms of moving cars around, employee.
You could put those closer to the front and your inventory could be in the back. I mean, technically you've only got nine cars that are going to be picked up potentially. I mean, you're not going to have all sixty being picked up in the evening. Um, okay, uh, let me let that one rest and you, you finish and then people have their hands up.
Okay, so, um, with that, I would like to e- explain why the, the lighting. I mean, we've already agreed substantially demonstrated by the neighbors that the existing lighting condition is intrusive. Um, and somehow that's turned and led to an all or nothing kind of discussion as to lighting in the rear. Um, we just got through discussing one reason why we need it. Um, the other is to understand that the lighting is not going to be objectionable to the neighbors. So its presence there is not an issue. Um, we have two concepts that we would propose. The idea is they would be reduced by seventy percent. Um, so there would be low lighting or that, uh, they'd be motion activated to that level of thirty percent. So, uh, that's.
I would be uncomfortable. Um, I think I said this in the briefing yesterday. I'm concerned about, um, motion activated for a couple of reasons. One is in the high wind situation we had in a wood day, was that Monday? Your motion lights are going to go on all the time because i- it's weird how they get activated just because the wind is moving a little leaf across it. Uh, the second thing is I don't know if there's an access for wildlife at all into the lot or whether your fence will completely seal them out, but wildlife activates. And they're high enough mounted that they will pick up mice. I don't know mice, but I'm making that up. But I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that, uh, motion sensing is a good idea because they tend to go on willy-nilly.
So that we offer just, uh, to show, and it may be the. The neighbors may, exactly. The neighbors may have opinion on it. I haven't.
Yeah, the neighbors may have an opinion. Let's see what they say. Um, my neighbor asked me to get rid of mine if you know the truth, so eh, they just, they go on too much.
Okay, so, um, with that, I would like to have, uh, Rachel Canelo, um, come forward. I, I don't know if you have read the attach, the attachments or not, but, uh, if you scroll to the bottom.
Is that Christian somebody? Yes.
Yes, that's. Um, yep, studio name, yes.
So you'll have to change your name, Patrick.
So if you, uh, if you would like to review, uh, on the, um, presentation there, if you skim to the, uh, end of it, uh, we have her, um, qualifications, um, and experience, uh, so that you know who we're speaking to. You obviously have a brand new regulation from this spring, which is extremely, uh, technical and very sophisticated. And it references all of the current state-of-the-art type of lighting. Um, this is something that, uh, Rachel is familiar with. So we have the advantage of a very, uh, cumbersome regulation as well as knowing that it, uh, is going to produce very specific results that, uh, were intended with the, with the adoption of that. So did you want to skim down? Um,
Um, okay. Um, does anybody want to ask questions about the lighting? Um, okay, so when it, so in the staff report where it says at thirty percent dimmed reduction, it should really be seventy percent, right?
That, yes, to be clear, that's what the, 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 the output is being reduced by seventy percent. The, the numbers on the lumens don't need to be changed. They actually reflect that reduction.
Okay, Nick has his hand up. I bet he wants to ask about the lighting.
Um, so reduced to seventy percent.
Reduced by seventy percent.
By seventy percent, one hour after the closing, which is eight o'clock.
Or, yeah.
That's what the hours are from something in the morning to eight o'clock?
Right, so.
Okay.
By nine o'clock, um, they would be, uh, off or it would be reduced.
Reduced to, okay. Um, would you consider actually, because you have actually somebody out there, maybe say at nine, is after nine, they go off?
I like.
They would.
Why not turn them off completely at nine o'clock?
Well, then we get to the, um, the alternate reason, which would be that, um, we need the, uh, security component of it as well.
So why not buy some infrared cameras for that alternative reason?
Interestingly, we do, as a term, we've been not only working with Rachel on this, but we have our lighting designer and we have our, um, uh, security consultant. There, there are actually infrared, um, cameras in place now. And the, uh, good news is they work, um, but they only work because of the extremely bright lighting that's currently on site. Um, so what we're proposing is to have, oh, so with the, with the lighting, if it was to be turned off in the back or substantially reduced, you wind up with a black and white product that's extremely grainy and of, of limited use. Um, we're told that with the proposed lighting that we have by virtue of it being distributed, uh, at this level throughout, we'll be able to get readable, um, recordings with minimal amount of light on the site. Um, so that's the, the short answer to the, the high tech. This would be high tech in terms of the regulation as well as what we would be able to, uh, get out of it, um, during operation.
So Mr. Brower, the seventy, uh, to the reduction to seventy percent, is that actually the whole site or just the back?
Oh, that's, uh, no, actually it's the whole site. We're, um, required, the regulation itself, well, let me back up. The, the front, we would go with the thirty percent reduction as per the regulation. The rear, um, would all be the, um, seventy percent, uh, reduction.
Okay, um, I beg to differ on the low light camera. Uh, I've seen many of them currently, one in use, actually, I see all the time. Uh, it's actually, it doesn't really matter short of pitch black, which we are not in that condition. Any kind of light for a low light camera would actually, uh, pick up movement. It's not grainy. It's quite clear. So I beg to differ in the discussion of that. Um, the number of bays, I have, you said there, how many?
There's twelve.
Twelve existing, twelve proposed.
But it, the, the, what's in our staff report, the, the site plan, the proposed site plan that is in our current.
Okay, let's skip site plan. Let's talk about the interior.
Yeah, so.
The LA one oh one drawing from Grand Off.
The one that's in the, the most recent rendition that we have is.
It's not that. It's not.
Nine. Right. What you and I, um, were talking about at the briefing had nine.
Yes. This is the, this is the lighting plan. I'm talking about the floor plan.
Scroll, if you scroll down, please, it'll, it'll show the interior proposed floor plan. Both existing and proposed.
A one oh one drawing?
It should be in there.
MacRae, we're looking at the A one oh three in the presentation set, and this is the corrected plan as I understand it.
Okay, so the A one oh one that I have in front of me, which is the proposed architecture for the building.
That, that should be, we have those plans i- in this presentation, I believe, if you scroll, scroll down.
I only see nine bays.
Yeah, but that's the one that they say they put in, they sent, they gave us by accident, if you will.
Correct.
It's, so it's in this week's submission to us, but they didn't mean to give us that is basically what.
Okay, so that's, that's existing, nine bays. And then if you go either down or up, does the sheet, yes, so there's the, um.
Nine bays.
Exact, no, twelve.
There's nine, sir. We counted them over and over again.
This is twelve.
Oh, that's a different drawing from what I'm looking at. That's a pres- presentation drawing. I'm looking at the architectural drawing.
Yes, and those were, when I said at the beginning of the presentation, there were various, um, plans submitted, uh, with this submission. And we started out as the, including much of the information that was presented to the architecture review committee. And while all the exterior and colors and design and everything was accurate, that, that included erroneously a nine bay plan. So that's the one that keeps popping up randomly. It's not correct. This is the correct. It's twelve and twelve.
Interesting how the lifts are right on top of each other. Okay, uh, moving on, um, I guess in the, uh, materials, we're going to be removing the plastic turf and putting lawn in the front, uh, drive, uh, front right of way?
Correct.
Okay, um, and the, uh, the utility pole mounted floodlights, those are going to be removed?
Yeah, so there's, uh, like onsite, there are, um, a single and a couple doubles. Any of those that are on the, uh, within the right of way, they're currently shining back onto the site. Those will be, uh, disconnected, taken down. I'm not sure who, who owns them, but we will, uh, Toyota will arrange to have the service to them terminated. Now, having said that, and for the neighbors, uh, understanding as well, uh, there's at least one, two, three, four, five, six, as many as seven other lights, uh, on either side of our property, uh, that shine directly south as well. And we do not have control over those. So unless those are going to be, uh, terminated through some other process, unfortunately, the neighbors are still going to be getting, uh, overflow lighting from, from those, but the ones on our site will absolutely be, uh, disconnected. The other poles taken down and lowered, um, as per the plan.
Okay, now, and, uh, just to understand, your parking for patrons is limited to the front employee inventory and the bays is the back?
Then, well, the, the ones that are customarily left open would are all across the front. Um, the, uh, and the bound, there's inventory obviously out front as well for display. And, uh, then a mix of employee and service goes into the rear. Uh, but generally that's how it has been, uh, used over the last fifty years.
Okay, great. Uh, could you scroll down? I think it's the next drawing. Uh, no, that, the site lighting drawing. L one oh four. Uh, can we zoom into the back? From right of the, the back facade? So the light that's actually in the middle of the parking lot, is that really, really necessary? I mean, we've got a lot of lighting here. It's going to be off hopefully, you know, an hour after or dimmed and all that. Is that really necessary? And are the wall packs on the building really necessary? We're out there lighting to give enough light to actually somebody to get out there, get in a car and move the car. But I'm still, I'm looking at this saying, is, eh, eh, their, their cars and are moving it around a parking lot? This seems a little bit too much. The one in the front, the one right in the middle, unless you're actually doing something really nice around it to keep it from being knocked over, it's going to get knocked over. And those, the wall packs, they light the building in that area. Why couldn't you just do one instead of three? So I could understand what's going on in the front. You've got some inventory. You've got people driving by looking at cars. But in this back area, it's, it's people there for an hour or so. Um, you know, uh, or, you know, from, from dark for a little while. But are you really moving stuff back and forth all the time?
Well, it's a combination of there's cars moving, but there's also inventory in the rear that if the customer's interested in a particular vehicle, they're going to walk back there with the salesperson.
Okay, that's actually something we had talked about before that actually no, no customers go to the back. The cars are always brought forward. I have it in my notes. No customers go back there. So let's keep moving on. Let's keep moving.
No, and that is, and if it's, and you're correct, Mr. MacRae, unless it has changed in the last few years, um, I, when you go there, you never go behind those gates, even when you're looking at a new car.
So, um,
Sorry, Nick. Customers don't go back there.
Oh, actually, now we were talking about a security issues. I think we've asked before, i- if you have police reports or data to back up that issue of, it's a security issue. Have cars been stolen? Car parts been stolen out of this lot over the years? We don't know.
And absolutely, and the, um, the Toyota, eh, as a practice is reluctant to, um, put, uh, police reports on the public record. I can share them with staff perhaps. We do, uh, we've got over them. Uh, definitely there have been instances of four, uh.
That can always be shared with us in executive session. You could have done that earlier. Um, uh, safety issues can be shared with us in executive session as I recall. So, um, but yeah, you could share it with staff. We would, um, be happy to be advised by staff on that.
So the, the short answer is yes. Pe- people have come in, uh, they've stolen multiple. So the the short answer is yes, people have come in, they've stolen multiple cars. One event was four, one was six. There's been repeated events where they come in and bring a a small floor jack, jack up, but take the tires and rims, which are very expensive, and then drop the vehicle back onto the asphalt, which then damages the brake system and anything else that's sticking down that doesn't have the tires on it anymore. So that is a a very real problem. And so that we can provide to the staff, but I think that's, you know, it's, it's a real situation. And this lighting, again, whether it's on at thirty percent, is going to be a deterrent, and our experts advise that that light will allow for meaningful recording of trespass events.
Okay, one final thing, the fence you're proposing, the stockade fence, the wooden fence. Will they, the nice side will be facing out to the neighbors?
The nice fence will be towards the neighborhood.
Yes.
Okay.
That's how they show it.
Great. Thank you very much.
Madam Jenkins, you're next.
Yes, Mr. Brower, I'm going to address the issue of nonconformity. I appreciate the letter that you sent that addressed the reduction or elimination of the dimensional nonconformities because of the rezoning. But you're adding to the space in this building in a way that you would not be permitted to do in the LB zone right now. Because car dealerships and service are not permitted in the LB zone. And the provision in our regulations basically says it's not a prohibition on alteration or addition. But it basically says, not only do you have to comply with six fifteen, which is how we get into things like lighting and and other issues that affect the environment and the preservation of the area. But also, it's a two-pronged test. And the second test is that the proposed, in this case, addition would not increase the degree of nonconformity. But you having more space adapted to the building. Now, the building itself may be conforming from a dimensional point of view, but the use of the building is something which is now permitted in the not now not permitted in the LB zone. So in your letter, for example, where you discuss the the cure of dimensional nonconformities, you then conclude that that cure also cures a nonconformity of use. And I just don't see that you can jump to that. You can make a leap of faith like that from curing a dimensional nonconformity to say we're adding a certain number of additional square feet for a use that is nonconforming, and then say that it does not increase the degree of nonconformity. So I'd like you to address the provision in the regulations, if you would.
So as you note, that the the increase in the floor area dimensionally is not in violation of any of the regulations. The amount of floor area is not in violation, the setbacks are not, and the coverage are not. So.
And I think, and I think, sir, that I did just acknowledge that I am not claiming that you have a dimensional nonconformity issue. My issue is a nonconforming use being expanded by the addition of floor area, not that in itself is a dimensional problem, but is being dedicated to a use that is nonconforming in the LB zone.
Right, so the floor area that's being expanded is for existing uses. In other words, we have all of the those functions that occur within the building, sales, service, customer, back office. All are existing. The expanding in the footprint, you'll note, is for use, which is already in there, which is for the use for customers and sales-related functions driven by the internal reconfiguration of the of the building. So this isn't a a add-on of a new use or space.
I'm not, I'm sorry, please continue.
So the the idea of of expanding the use, which in my mind would include additional service bays or new activities, car washing, et cetera, things that would be expanding the actual use. This is an accommodation to to have the site brought up to to current industry standards without expanding the use. I know this is to an extent semantic semantics, but the within our regulation, and I took note of Mr. LaRose's observations yesterday during the briefing that this, our regulation is somewhat more specific as it addresses these uses. And cumulatively, when you read through one forty-one as to nonconformities, it allows virtually everything. It says you can't take them away. You can change them to other nonconforming uses, provided they're not more detrimental. And it allows for additions and alterations under specific conditions and discusses what specifically would be defined as an expansion of the degree of nonconformity. When I read one forty-one collectively, I don't see where it prohibits what we're proposing.
Okay, I I think it's important to note that the provision that specifically talks about what amounts to an increase in the degree of nonconformity, there happen to be two examples given in that provision.
In the regulation, Mary?
Uh, yes, the provision is six one forty-one A B. I'm sorry, B two A. Which basically include, it says, okay, you can have alterations or addition that meet the standards for six fifteen, which is how we get into things like lighting. And it doesn't say or, it says, and such alteration or expansion shall not increase the degree of nonconformity. That is followed by language. I'm going to read this. The addition of floor area, which either causes the floor area ratio or building coverage permitted in the zone to be exceeded or results in a site plan for all uses on the site, which does not provide parking in accordance with the standards of Division fifteen, shall be deemed to increase the degree of nonconformity and shall not be permitted. Those are examples in which the commission may not exercise its authority, because we may allow this. Those are examples. They are not a definition of the only things that constitute an increase in the degree of nonconformity. And I understand this is not a prohibition, and there are regulations in other municipalities, which basically say thou shalt not. But given the fact that the policy on nonconformity, both use and and dimensional, is that we are supposed to oversee the elimination and reduction of nonconformity. I'm struggling with the fact that this is an expansion, albeit a nice expansion, an accommodating expansion, it's not a change of use. But you could not today, if you had if you had nothing on the lot, you could not build something to do what your additional building is doing. Again, dimensional nonconformities, I absolutely agree, you do not have a problem there. But just because you have an existing nonconforming use, doesn't mean that you can add to it. Because the use itself is now nonconforming. It may not have been originally, but you cannot put a car dealership in an LB zone now. So to the, to the, to the extent, I'm sorry, to the extent that we are dealing with the language of the statute, it is not, it is, it is permissive, which means if it's not, if it is not specifically listed as allowed, it is prohibited. The two examples are not exclusive. They are examples of situations in which we absolutely would have to deny it. But those would not be necessary if it wasn't otherwise within our authority to consider this and an increase in the degree of a nonconforming use.
And so we are, before you answer, Mr. Brower. So because I'd like to say a couple of things to Mary. So Mary, the other thing is that when Mr. Brower answered you, he is saying that the expansion of the footprint of the building is an intensification. But to me, those are two different baskets. If you're intensifying, you are doing it within a footprint. If you're expanding it, you're changing the footprint. Am I wrong? Because you're usually the one.
And and again, the the distinction is normally intensification is doing more in where you, in what you have, in what you have. And you're expanding the footprint. And you're arguing, on the one hand, I'm expanding the footprint, and it's not an an increase in the, it's not an expansion of a nonconforming use. Again, leave the dimensional stuff alone. I understand that. I'm comfortable with that. But your use is nonconforming, and you're doing more of it.
So Mary, before Mr. Brower answers you, the other thing is what I was struggling with when we started over the weekend was because of all the postponements, we have never, the applicant has not established that they have a site plan which provides parking in accordance with the standards of Division fifteen. So we don't know, and that's what I just asked for. The problem is, this is a must close. We had asked if we could have that today. Because then it could go into the record. Now, the problem is staff can get it as a condition if we were to approve it. And but we can't see it anymore because we can't see any more external information. So I turn it back over to you, Mr. Brower. I know you're waiting to answer, but I, that was what I was looking at. That I was troubled that the parking has never been that you have never, never addressed the parking issue. Okay, go ahead.
So we have, and actually, you can see, looking at that diagram underneath the location of the of the cars, and clearly.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say by use. I can't read that, and it doesn't say by use. I want I want, we have X number of parking spaces.
Yes. All right. So I've agreed that we will provide that as confirmation.
You may be in a jam. Okay, go ahead.
So let's try to put it in the context of what we're dealing with. We have an existing use that was approved over fifty years ago. It was legally compliant when it was approved as to the required number of parking spaces for all the various uses based on bays and size. So what was there was legal. It's been legal, legally nonconforming, if there have been made changes made up to the present. So the way I analyze this, and that's what the staff picked up on half of the argument, we are taking away some spaces, and we are theoretically increasing in demand for new spaces. So what I'm saying is that we are able to provide that seven space differential on this site now.
Okay, but go back to Mary, because you're going to give me that, and there's a caveat, but okay, go back to Mary's points, because I think she's asking you questions that I would really like to hear the answer to.
Okay, so what, when I said I read that entire one forty-one collectively, and I do disagree with an interpretation that says those are just two examples. And therefore, that's exclusive and and dispositive of the issue. The regulations throughout have common language that say, including but not limited to. That that's a phrase that you see all over the place. This one, it doesn't say that. It says these two very specific things. I don't think it was a, for for instance, I don't think it was meant to, you know, to leave the door wide open. It says these are the instances. Now, short of going back to the original adoption and every amendment to one forty-one that's been made over the last seventy years, I I don't know where we're getting this from. It's clearly interpretive. And and I don't see it as black and white, but I see collectively the intent is to allow you to add and alter and change subject to meeting these standards and conditions, which we do.
And and again, I will point out, the language says that the building may be all, may may be altered if two things are satisfied. Six fifteen and further provided that such alteration or expansion shall not increase the degree of nonconformity. It, by using may, it says, okay, the authority is set in, set here for us to make a judgment call on whether six fifteen is met and whether it amounts to an increase in the degree of nonconformity. The following, the following sentence is merely an indication of those situations in which our authority is set back because those particular things are deemed to be, to meet, to never be able to meet the requirement. So it's not saying this is the only time when you can deny it. It's saying, in these two instances, take back the may, it has to be a shall, because those are deemed to be. You're, what you're basically doing is you're using the deemed language to limit the authority of a provision that starts with the word may. You may, you you may, you may or may not, in certain circumstances, you may not under any, under those circumstances. But any other way to read this is basically saying the policy requirement that we have to limit, to reduce or eliminate nonconformities doesn't apply if we don't have, if 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 these two things don't apply. And I obviously, we're reaching a disagreement, and I simply think that reading this generously to take away the authority under the may provision of this is basically saying, forget it, because in under, under any of these circumstances, we're going to have to do it. And I I do not read it that way. It could have said, under no circumstances can you do it if anything changes, and it doesn't.
And it also could have said, including but not limited to. But more importantly, is the, I don't think the intent of the regular, this regulation or in general is to be draconian in how you treat a facility that was a hundred percent legal when it was built in terms of use. And then has been subsequently, unlike probably more than any property in the town of Greenwich, been singled out indirectly for having had its use taken away, having the provision for an encroachment into thirty feet, which allowed for the commercial area to actually have been larger, which now in effect was taken away with that amendment, and then having the P-zone taken away. So, yes, other properties have been affected, but the cumulative effect of this is to take away, take away, and take away. And the the plan of conservation development does speak to wanting to reduce nonconformities. We're doing that here in several ways, dimensionally or otherwise. But I don't think that the the intent or the obligation of your commission is to take the most draconian interpretation of this section, and it's, we obviously disagree. Hopefully, it doesn't get litigated. I mean, unfortunately, that's where when opinions vary on on legal matters, it has to come out one way or another. But I think everything about the this application intends to make things better, does make things better, whether it's lighting, coverage, and the like. It it just seems that to wordsmith after the fact and have it turn out to be punitive and restrictive and inhibiting the ability of this business to survive and maintain itself is I don't think that's equitable.
And I'll have to respond to that by saying, all I can do is read the words on the page and consider how they apply to your application. And in fact, if you really feel that it is that much of a of a, particularly draconian, I find it hard to believe anything is draconian in this context. Can always get a variance. You can always get a variance and just then you've got, you're golden. But I just, I can't ignore the words. I cannot, sir, I cannot ignore the words on the page because you are, you are not satisfied that the application of those words to this application are are appropriate. And with that, I will, I complete my.
Yeah, and just just to say that, I think that surmising that you are rewriting the regulations, Mary, would, I would disagree with that, because the regulations are the interpretation of the regulations is up to us. And I don't hear you as trying to change their wording. I hear you as picking up their wording. I hear you as picking up their wording and interpreting it as you are reading it. So uh, I'm not following what Mr. Brower is saying. And if he would like to sue us for interpreting our own regulations, that's his business, but.
Madam Chair, the intent here is not to be punitive, but to make sure that the regulations are applied. I appreciate.
Trying to follow our regulations and to interpret them correctly. And um, I think um, it's, I never appreciate being threatened, Mr. Brower.
Ma'am, that was not a threat. What I said.
Wow.
Wow, that's a surprise to me.
No, what I was saying is, we are faced, no, excuse me. We are faced here with a situation where it is not black and white, although that is how Ms. Jenkins is is reading it. It requires interpretation.
She is not. Sorry, sir, I am, uh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I am interpreting the words on the page, sir. I am not suggesting that it's black and white. In fact, if it were black and white, we would probably reach an agreement. But you are, you are ignoring the fact that it says an expansion shall not increase the degree of nonconformity. If your building is bigger, the degree of your nonconforming use, however the nonconformity of your use arose, it is now currently to the extent you are, you are adding to the building. That part of the building that you are adding is something that you could not put on that property. If you, if that was a vacant lot and you wanted to put a twelve hundred square, uh, square foot uh service bay there. So I'm sorry, it's not black and white. I am interpreting it, sir, in good faith because that is why I was put on this commission. And we disagree, and I I think we've probably used enough of the commission's time unless you have any further comments.
So no, my only comment is, I, I respect your opinion. I was not threatening. I was confirming that it is an interpretation and respectfully, we disagree. And I understand your motives and um believe you're acting in good faith. So it's a question of disagreement on interpretation. Thank you.
Okay, all right, uh, Mr. Yaski, you have your hand up.
I do. A lot of my questions were answered, including the security. But the the last part on the variance, um, if we're, i- is that a realistic option here? To go in and ask for a variance on the expansion of the use?
Uh, Patrick?
Oh, well, I mean, I I I don't think we can hang our hat on the the granting of any variances. There has to be a.
But it's a legal option.
It is a legal option, yes, absolutely. Uh, but as a, you know, as a determinant factor in your thought process as a commission, I I don't think you can consider it because it, it hasn't happened in one, but also it's not, it's out of your purview.
No, I understand that. I just don't want to suggest something to the applicant that's unrealistic. That's all right.
Well, I mean, I I I wouldn't dare to venture to guess the likelihood of such things. But but again, it's, it's uh, it's a high test, and that's all I'll say.
High test to prove hardship.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's what Mr. Brower is actually arguing.
That he has hardship, that he has a need to expand because um, those are the the operating conditions. Okay, what other questions from the commission on this application? Well, Dennis, you went away. There you are, you're back. Okay, what other questions from the commission on this application? All right, so um, this may be an appropriate time to turn to the public for comment. Mr. Brower, did you have anything you wanted to talk about?
Well, I I think probably would be best to hear from the public before um, our lighting expert responds, because.
Yes, I think that would be great.
They're the ones impacted.
By the way, the lighting expert, what's the, your first name and last name, ma'am? Because the court reporter has to have it for when you speak. If we could just change, can you change how your your name appears on your screen?
Oh, sure, I think I could do that. Um, my name is Rachel Colomo, and I'm with Christian Ray Studio.
Okay, just so if you could put it, so then he has it, because he has to have the spelling and everything. Okay, uh, members of the public, uh, we are ready for public input on on uh, the Toyota application. I only see one person with their hand up. Um, and I'm going to promote that person. When you come, I believe this is going to be Don Conway. When you come in, you'll have to say your name.
Madam Chair, three minutes, right?
Yeah, three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking. Um, okay, let me try that again. All right, um, Miss Spider, Spidey. Uh, would you unmute? You have your hand up. Boom, boom, boom. Spidey? Just unmute? All right, we lost that person. They're not unmuting. I think that's Don Conway, and I know he's tech savvy, so he must be having system.
Hold it, there's.
There you go. Stop pressing and just start talking. Okay, there you go.
Okay, my name is Don Conway. I'm immediately south of the Toyota. I'm their neighbor. Their wall, which is about fifteen, eighteen feet high in certain areas, separates my property from theirs. My concern basically is the trees that they have there, they have about five or six uh trees that are approximately forty-five to fifty feet high. They're pine trees, very little pines on the bottom, mostly on the top. But what Toyota did a couple of years back was they trimmed everything that was any branch that went over their fence. Those trees are planted in about an eight-foot separation between the top of the wall and their parking lot. They're pine trees. They're not deep rooted. Pine trees don't go deep rooted. When they're that high, what my problem simply is, they're going to come down. Those wall, that wall did come down in about, I think, I moved here in seventy-one. It came down, I think, in seventy-three, seventy-four, when they hadn't finished paving the parking lot completely. What I'm afraid of, if those trees come down, they could take out part of my house, but they definitely would take out my neighbor's house. And that's the Rock Hills. They're directly south. So, and the configuration of their home is similar to mine. Their bedrooms face Toyota. So not only do we get the light coming in to our windows, but we also have the fear of those trees coming down. What I would like to see happen is either they get topped, cut in half so they can, because the bottom growth is gone. If you know what a pine tree does, the bottom growth dies as the top grows. So it, those trees are not separating us from the parking lot, from the lights, from the cars and all the other business that's back there. So we'd like, I'd like to see those trees come down and more like they planted on Satchem Lane, up by the circle area where their fence is. They planted ten to twelve, twenty, about twelve, fifteen feet high pines. And they're completely from the top to the bottom. So it's, it shields all your sight of their parking lot back there. The way these pines are now on this whole line of, as you look at that drawing of where their property line is along the top of that line, those trees don't shed, they don't shield anything.
Okay.
They're just, the light comes through. And I'm really afraid.
Yeah, I got you.
Coming down.
I got what you're saying. The, yeah, I think I understood. You need the screening. Thank you.
No.
Mr. uh, Brower, yeah, um. Yeah, did you have anything else, Mr. Conway?
Not really. It's, it's basically, that's what I'm concerned about.
You want to have good screening? And really, our landscape regulations require hefty screening between a commercial use and a residential use. Uh, so under the new regulations, they have to provide that. So we will take a, an extra look at that. Um, thanks very much. Um, does anybody else from the public wish to speak on the Toyota application? I see people are here. James Walsh is next. And anybody else, just go ahead and raise your virtual hand. I see people are here, but maybe we, we talked to everybody's ears off. Okay, Mr. Walsh, if you would, go ahead. And then after that is Mr. Holtz. Um, Mr. Walsh, if you would unmute? Well, there's something wrong with everybody's unmute today. Mr. Walsh, you're still not unmuted. No, okay, Mr. Walsh, if you can hear me, I'm going to try to bring in, I'm bringing in Mr. Holtz while you're working your tech issues. Mr. Holtz, I hope you're able to unmute. Patrick, can you check? I I know I fixed the setting. There they go. Mr. Holtz is good. Mr. Holtz, go ahead.
My name is Rick Holes, and I'm at forty-one Satchem Lane. And is this the time to be commenting on the lighting, or are we going to deal with that subsequently?
Comment on whatever is utmost in your mind, and Patrick will be timing you. You have eight seconds.
I don't know what's going to come up in the discussion from the lighting expert. But we, we see a great deal of light from the lights that are mounted on the rear of the building itself. Are those going to be moved off the rear of the building? That was one of the discussions that took place, that they would be mounted on some kind of a uh, twelve-foot, fourteen, sixteen-foot tower. I- is that lighting changing?
Yeah, okay, so stop the clock a second, Patrick, because I think Ms. Colomo should answer this. Go ahead, ma'am. Ma'am, Ms. Colomo? You're muted.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't know that was for me. Um, so uh, that was raised as a question by Mr. McBry um, as to whether or not three wall packs were necessary on the back of the building. I can say uh, from my evaluation, I do not think three wall packs is completely necessary. Uh, I do think one is required by code. That is a life safety issue, but um, the, the other two, I think, would not be completely necessary. And the other um, point on this is that right now, um, those fixtures uh, that are mounted to the back of the building e- existing, they are shining directly out toward the neighborhood. The proposed fixtures are, um, they have optics that are shining the, the light down and are much more focused um into the site, not out into uh, the neighborhood as they are now. So it is a completely different fixture with a different optic. Um, also, the building is proposed to have a, a dark gray stucco texture versus the white uh, that's on the building now, so the white is very reflective. The texture darker uh finish is much more absorptive of that light. So uh, you would not be getting that same sort of level of reflection back into the neighborhood.
Okay, Mr. Holtz, proceed. Um, go ahead and start the clock again, Patrick. Sorry, I just wanted to get these questions done.
Well, one other question on the lighting. We are seeing a blinking red light inside the service area of the building. I don't know what that red light is, but we see, you know, low enough down that we see through the glass of the uh, rear of the building, and there's a blinking red light, not a hundred percent of the time on, but very, very frequently in the dark hours. I don't know what that is, if it's necessary, but it's a question to raise. And I guess I I don't understand from what was just said about whether there are going to be lights mounted on some kind of uh pole to replace some of the lighting that's now mounted on the building or not. So maybe when I see the lighting plan, that will answer my questions. And the other, the other concern relates to something Mr. Conway said. Um, removing, if that's what happens, those trees will cause a further problem for us in terms of screening. And it's important that the screening be high enough, and a six-foot fence by no means provides that screening. So just to keep that in mind. And that's the end of my comment.
So yeah, and 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 that should be provided, so we'll get Mr. Brower to answer that. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Holtz. Okay, now James Walsh is here in another incarnation, so let me try promoting him there. And he's coming in. Okay, Mr. Walsh. Okay, good, you're all set.
Oh, I think we should be good now. Thank you. Uh, sorry for that. Um, I wanted to just speak on behalf of not only the neighbors on Satchem Lane, but also the neighbors on Cross and, you know, surrounding the park.
Mr. Walsh, you had the association that the cross lane, so you're representing them as the neighborhood association.
That is correct. I'm sorry about, and wanted to, from the Lachlan Park community standpoint, there are thirty, just reiterate that there are thirty, at least thirty families that are being negatively impacted by, by the lighting. Um, and you know, I think I agree with some of the other panelists who spoke tonight and also in previous weeks, right, that it would be great to get the lighting reduced to to zero overnight, right? I mean, it looks like those two thefts that were mentioned about were reported in the newspapers, so they are in the public domain. Um, you know, and that happened, you know, while the lights were as bright as day back there. Um, so, so you know, it would be interesting to see, you know, what's happened since those two thefts. Um, and uh, if there's been any, any additional um, uh, impact to it. And you know, do the lights really make it a safer space? Or do it just, is it like kind of security and safety theater, right? And are they really needed overnight, you know, for those late night hours when people are trying to sleep, especially when it's flooding, flooding into the window? So just wanted to kind of reiterate that point and uh, and and make sure that the the lighting will be totally contained uh, to the site, i- if in fact it is deemed that it must be, be kept on overnight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. So that was efficient because it represented um, a lot of residents. Anybody else from the neighborhood wish to speak on the Toyota application? Kindly raise your virtual hand. All right, okay, so they're very focused on the lighting and this red blinking light and the screening, and those are the two big questions. So I leave it to you all to respond to that.
Okay, so first, we'd like to have our landscape architect um, comment on the uh, the screening and on the, the idea of removing the trees and putting them in. Uh, we do have a plan, uh, we can pull that up, and that does show uh, that there will be replacement plantings along uh, those property lines. So uh, Jeff, if um, if you'd want to respond to that, um, first, please.
Sure. Uh, good evening, board. Jeff Scher, uh, landscape architect at Grand Off Architects on behalf of Toyota. I'm happy to be here tonight and appreciate the comments. Um, overall, yes, the screening is uh, being improved um, both by vegetative screening um, in the holes that were left underneath the pine trees, as noted by uh, Mr. Conway. Um, that is the nature of most evergreen trees. Um, those, those pine trees have been here for a while, and that's what we're seeing. Um, so the, the, the holes that are left underneath are going to be filled with um, newer uh, evergreen trees. Um, those would be the dark American, um, arborvitae on the upper right-hand side there, as shown. And then as well as hemlock um, on the left-hand side. So overall, on site, we have a ninety-two percent native uh, planting palette, and that in conjunction with the wooden um fencing to match the existing will just create a um, continuous uh, what is existing as a, as a successful screening. Um, we're just continuing that same condition around the property. So.
Could you scroll down? I'm sorry to interrupt Jeff to the section drawing that uh, shows the the relationship of the, the height of the wall that Mr. Conway talked about and the bushes and the um, and the poles.
Yep, so what you see there is a representation in section um, of the rear property line um, through the rear parking lot to the building. Um, it shows the drop in the wall um, as viewed from the neighbor's side. And then you have the seven, eight-foot evergreens um, that would be newly planted on top of the wall there um, in front or on the neighbor's side of the fencing. And you can see the uh, anticipated. And you can see the anticipated view shed line from a six-foot person on the neighbor's side of the property looking up and if you zoom in closely, you see it's broken by the planting as a day one planting, seven, eight foot. So as they grow in, they'll only get taller and continue to screen the light and the neighbors and the use of the Toyota. This does not show the existing pine tree screening, which would screen it even further. I we do agree that that is beneficial because they are, you know, forty-plus foot trees that exist. So even though they don't have lower limbs that are providing screening, they're still providing shade and further screening. This is just an infill of the lower branches with new evergreen trees.
And will that occur on both frontages at Satcham as well as the Conway and Rockwell line?
Yeah, so there's there's two. So the sides of the property are both screened sufficiently to date with evergreen arbivides and the fencing. The ones that are not or the ones that are not as well screened currently are Mr. Conway's, which would be the south property line, but north on the plan. And that's that's the area where we're.
Go back to the to the plan view, if you could, please.
Sure, right there. So you can see the new infill is happening on Mr. Conway's property. They will be planted carefully to not disturb the existing roots of the trees that exist today. And they have, I believe they've been, we have a letter that was provided from an arborist that they are in good health. So they've graciously removed the vines that were growing up the trunks Toyota has.
And while we're on landscaping, Jeff, if you could comment on the conservation, it made comments about the canopy trees. And I think we explained that the the nature of the arborid and the hemlocks and the rear were that they be tight, dense to provide that kind of screening for the neighbors. And then as far as streetscape goes, we were able to plant canopy shade trees in the front into locations. Is that correct?
That's exactly right. Yeah. So we did receive conservation comments and again, appreciated the comments. We did address them. This the current landscape plan, I believe, addresses it. In the rear, you have hemlock, which is naturally occurring in existing natural. Yeah, it's it's native species, but they also grow in tandem.
Speak to us in environment.
Sorry. So yes, they are native species and in the wild, per se, you will see them growing with white pines, which are there today. So that exists. And then in front, we replaced the hornbeams, which are smaller columnar trees with red maples and put them closer to the street. And essentially, they are they're red maples that will be street trees. And then closer to the building, there was an ARC comment that they wanted to see some additional trees closer to the building to help anchor it. And that's where we provided a service berry. So and everything else is shrubs. For the most part, everything else is native shrubs and perennials, grasses. And yeah, as stated, I think this is a successful plan to not only make the use better for for Toyota, but also it's a greener site and it's a more native site. So environmentally, I think it's a it's a good planting plan there. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scher.
So so then I think if we could go on to Rachel and she can explain, and I did want to clarify one point that she made. The the approved exterior plans does propose maintaining the white paint that exists on the back of the building. And so we would propose as a condition that the the paint on the sides and the back actually be painted gray to match the the gray of all the new construction and cladding that's going to go around on the on the building. So that would be an improvement that would be in in the final drawings. Rachel, if you could highlight, and I guess the the key thing that has struck everybody from the start is how intrusive the existing lighting is and compared to what we're proposing and why the neighbors should feel comfortable with the change.
Yes, so the what exists on the site right now is mainly directed back toward the neighborhood. This is a radically different plan in that the the poles, which are twelve-foot poles at the back in the rear lot, are their optics of the of the light are all shining in toward the site. There is no light shining back into the neighborhood in this plan. Additionally.
Ms. Colomo, can I ask you a really stupid question? It's been bothering me every time you guys say that. So what the neighbors showed us was pictures of what it looks like from their houses and it just, I'd never really seen it. I it just kind of broke my heart. When they're sitting at the kitchen table, they see the light. It's not shining onto their property, but they see this big bright thing, even the people. Now, you do have people who don't need to turn on their kitchen lights. There was a photo someone sent me where the people just don't need to turn on their kitchen lights because Toyota illuminates their kitchen for them. But the other thing is you go into a room and you've got this big bright thing and it's not, it it's like the sun shining in you. Will that go away? I mean, it follows the regulations, but unless you screen it completely or turn it off at night, won't it still be this thing you can see? That's my question. Does that make sense? I mean, I know that I don't know much about lighting. I really struggle with our regulations. I have to read them over and over. Does that? Can you answer that for me? Will they still be able to see lights on the building, especially with that three-pack? Are they going to see those lights and go, there's the bright lights? Not maybe lighting my kitchen, but they're still annoying.
So I think that the section diagram that Jeff actually pulled up was a really great one because that that can that shows the sightlines of if you're standing in those properties looking up. I I think that's a great diagram. So no, my answer is no. The optics are the optics are much more controlled with LEDs than they are of any of the light sources that are currently on the property. These are individual diodes that have an optic on them, so they are they are much more controlled. They have also additionally added a houseside shield that no fixture on the site currently has to additionally block the view of the LED sources. Now, if someone wants to look up and see a light, I can't say that they're not going to see it. Is it aimed at these houses and at their windows to be a glare bomb in the way that they're experiencing now? Absolutely not. It's a completely different type of fixture applied in a completely different way.
Okay, Ms. Jones, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I guess I wanted to sort of further tease out. You said, you know, that they will be able to see like, kind of trying to figure out kind of what is this glow? I mean, we all know that even if a light is sometimes from is sort of casting the sort of glow over over the neighborhood, even if it's not shining directly somewhere. So can you talk a little bit about how much it's going to reduce that?
A reflective glow or like light reflectance back into the neighborhood?
Well, sort of, I mean, when you you're gonna, so you were just saying that even though it won't be shining directly into their house, there might be essentially a glow over the Toyota property. I mean, and I'm trying to understand what that might look like.
So all of all of this lighting that is proposed is is directed downward onto the lot surface and the car surfaces. So there is no more of this sort of scattered light effect that happens right now. Right now, the light is not only aimed back toward the neighborhood, but is also reflecting off the back face facade of the building where those wall packs are located currently, and it's a white surface that reflects but also other light back into into the light into the windows as well. So a number of ways that that's being mitigated is those fixtures, again, are are downward facing optic. And then also, as Mr. Brower pointed out, that wall surface will be now a darker, more textured finish, so it will not be reflecting as much sort of surface glow back out.
And you said there's also there's also protection, I guess, on the top and somehow on the on the sides to keep it targeted towards the.
The fixtures are fully shielded. And then there's an addition of a backside, a back houseside shield as well.
If we scroll down, sorry to interrupt, Rachel. If we scroll down, your letter is in there and it finishes the last attachment to your letters that right there. The shielding.
Right. And additionally, that at night, the these lights are reduced by seventy percent of their output. So not only is it a more efficient and effective lighting plan, but it's also significantly lower light levels than what exists today. So that's also a major factor.
So I think the question in layman's terms, what everybody's looking for is right now, it's horrendously, it shines, light source actually does land on the kitchen tables of those people because there's a direct line of sight from that fixture to it. And it's obviously glowing very much so with these with everything that's going in and then the reduction by seventy percent. Is the feel gonna be that there there's a lighted parking lot next to them?
Yeah, what I to cut it short, I think what we've discussed way back in the beginning was whether you all would be you all would be amenable to installing the lights before you go ahead with the rest of the site plan. And that a sign-off by zoning staff or the CEO, I don't know how Patrick would like to do that, but that's sort of a site walk at night review or whatever be part of you going ahead prior to building permit.
So I think I heard that discussion and then I also.
No, you were there for it. We asked you the first time. I asked you the first time.
So I'm saying that. And I also heard just timing options, you know, when would this be? Would it be, as you just said, would it be prior to a CO? I was going back through the transcript from August and the the question was asked specifically of Mr. LaRoe. You know, did he feel comfortable in ensuring compliance with the with the regulation? And part of his response was, well, the the fallback is this isn't just a one-shot deal, is that if it isn't as represented, adjustments can be made. And the beauty with this situation is that these lights are individually controllable. So they can be wired that way. And it does give the opportunity to adjust if we do have a problem. But I would strongly suggest that we make that a condition of CO because this is a comprehensive package. It affects the whole site. In order to put the lighting in, you're going to be digging the, you know, the whole site up prior to construction then of the site. It just doesn't make sense and I.
The whole site, you're digging up the backyard.
No, we're be putting lighting out to the front to dig up the conduits. We're putting in.
We're not worried about the front.
I understand. So the point is, this is a whole project as proposed. We you have the safeguard. If it doesn't comply, the CO is certainly going to be available for that.
All right, we have heard you say that. Okay. Any further questions from the commission on this application? Applications, plural, there are two. Is there any questions that haven't been asked? Have you heard everything you need to hear from the applicant? The applicants regarding landscaping, lighting? Do you have any questions about the zoning? Okay. Does anybody there for? Mr. Brower, before I ask to close, do you want to make a closing statement or are you good?
Well, I think we've answered all of your your questions. The history is is all in the record as to how this came about and whether the net result is draconian or not, it's clearly that this is an operation that's been adversely impacted and we're trying to, as with every other dealer.
I'm sorry, adversely impacted by what?
The changes in the regulations over the years in terms of.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Adversely impacted because we have regulations that restrict the use of car dealerships to the GB and the GBL?
Saying in terms of the 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 operation that's existing, how it has been constrained relative to other dealerships that have grown and been modified over time.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, okay. I have heard you say that. I disagree, but I have heard you say it. Okay.
Anything from the Grand Off team want to be added in?
I don't have anything for the Grand Off team. Does anybody else? All righty. Does anybody object to closing this application, these two applications? I'm sorry, I keep doing that and just a reminder, seated on these applications are Albin, McRae, Jenkins, Furlough, Yesky and Wells. And does anybody object to closing them at this time?
No.
No.
All right, these applications are hereby closed. I'm just gonna jump the gun. I got way too much to think about at the moment. But if let me just ask you, Nick, if you.
I've got pages and pages of notes that need to be just kind of coordinated. There was a lot that happened between here and there and just tonight, a few other things added on to that. So I would just say, recommend if we we've closed it, just defer on the decision.
You want to wait to decide? Okay, I'm good. I thought if you were ready, I was open to that. But if if you're not in a position to make a motion, I'm not, because, you know, I like to chew on mine. Spend the whole weekend writing them. Okay, so Mr. Brower, we have closed this application, but we will be deciding it in two weeks.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, folks, guess what time it is?
Dinner.
It is dinner time. You have until, because it's going to be a long night, you have seven thirty-nine, folks. We're doing the full half hour. Tracy, I'm stopping. I'm stopping the recording. Just remember that I forget afterwards.
Recording stopped.
Mary's got this, right? Going forward, I'll come in on the last.
Wait, wait. So, yes, so well, Mary's gonna do. She's gonna do Hurlingham and she's gonna do Simmons. And then you're gonna come back in for Berkeley and Eagleview?
No, Berkeley was Jones and hopefully Lowe shows back up, right?
No, you're seated on Berkeley.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, but you don't want to be seated.
Yeah, I don't want to be seated.
Okay, so you're gonna come back for King?
King, right.
Okay. I'm I'm recused on that, so.
Okay, got it. And so Jonesy's gonna take. Jonesy's gonna sit for Yesky and Jenkins is already seated for McRae on Berkeley.
Yes.
Okay, Tracy, I'll announce it as we go. If we forget, because I know we're gonna have a hard time getting it right.
I'm I'm taking notes here, too.
I know you are, but I know it's just, this is a lot of moving parts.
They just flipped for that one, that's all.
Okay, all right. So do we have everybody? Eleven Hurlingham? We have Mr. Brower's back. Hold on, you raised his hand and I guess he's. And I guess Mr. Bazili knows that it's that his last name is Brower because we didn't ever fix his name. I guess Mr. Bazili is pretty smart, huh?
Yes, I'm a genius. I don't know. Who's it? Who's Brower is Brower? What else?
There you go. Brower is Brower. Okay. So you've got Brower is Brower.
That's it.
You're gonna enjoy this part. Oh, ki roki.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Mr. Lowe is in the room, but he's not attending this, right?
No, if he's in the room, he's ready to rock and roll.
Okay, well, if he doesn't mind turning his camera on so we know that we're.
Mr. Lowe, stop chewing and join us. Poor guy, he's probably just trying to grab a bite.
Get some sustenance and we're rushing him.
Okay, so while we're waiting for Mr. Lowe to turn on his camera, our next application is WJV Holdings for a final site plan and special permit to demolish the existing detached pool house and to construct a new detached pool house where the total volume of all the structures will exceed one hundred and fifty thousand cubes on a thirteen thousand, three hundred and four hundred, three thousand, thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty five, no, whatever it is acre property, thirteen acre property at eleven Hurlingham. I don't know why that kept looking like square feet to me, but that is a thirteen point three four acre property at eleven Hurlingham Drive. Seated on this application are Jenkins for Yesky, McRae, Wells, Lowe and Albin. So the only change here is it's Jenkins for Yesky. And off we go, Mr. Brower. We are ready for you.
Great. Good evening, Eric Brower on behalf of the applicant. And as you noted in your remarks, this is a thirteen plus acre tract in a four acre zone. It's in the Conyers Farm subdivision. And there's an existing pool house on a patio and we're essentially replacing it with a slightly larger pool house. And so obviously statistics wise, way under on FAR and coverage and all that. So we fully comply in that respect.
I, I don't think it's way under because I have a note that the FAR has to be verified, just checking.
No, we, we're proposing twelve thousand and, no, I'm sorry. We're proposing a total of twenty two thousand, nine hundred and eighty four and thirty three thousand would be permitted.
Allowed. I wonder, Mary, go ahead.
Apparently there were two different numbers given, Mr. Brower, three, five hundred and thirty square feet on one document and five hundred forty seven. So I don't think it was an issue of the, the total.
Got it.
That was, it was what, what's the FAR, the new, of the new structure?
Well, how much is the new structure you're adding? There you go. Okay, here it is. The FAR plan shows five hundred and thirty feet where the architectural site plan shows five foot forty seven. Found it.
Right, so the.
The applicant should verify the actual floor area.
Right, so the, the dimensioned FAR sheets are, show clearly five hundred and forty seven square feet. The other number was within a summary chart, which was either a typo or inaccurate. So it's five hundred and forty seven square feet versus hundred and ninety eight square feet existing. And so it's, health has approved it. There's no issue with drainage and or wetlands. The, there was an observation by conservation about that there, if, if the reserve septic system area were to be constructed, there may be an impact on trees. However, the, the Health Department approval, this is for a replacement area only. It's not to be constructed. It's actually in the same location as was previously approved by the commission back in two thousand and sixteen when there was a, an application before you to expand the actual house itself. So there's no, no intention to construct this reserve area. Obviously, if there was a problem with the existing systems, they can be repaired in place. But many of them, if there were to be that change, obviously, and that's in the event of a future failure, if that ever had to be constructed, that's something that we could look at further as part of that application. The, initially, we had requested a waiver of the landscape requirement. Conservation noted as well from a site visit in the photos that we're basically putting it on the same, same footprint as there and there aren't any, any, any vegetation that would be impacted. But they recommended that we plant several shade trees or some shrubs. We have no objection to that. We weren't, we're just looking for some nexus between the landscape plan requirement in relation to what the proposed activity is. And in this case, there was no impact, but we're happy to go along with their suggestion for additional plantings.
Oh, so I'm confused. You don't, you don't want to do a landscape plan, but you'll just implement whatever they said after their site visit?
Yeah, they can, they, they conferred that a waiver might be appropriate. And what I'm saying is I'm not trying to plow new ground with, you know, what, what's a threshold for a landscape plan? I think in this case, they observed correctly that with minimal impact, that an enhancement would be in order and we're fine.
And you're fine with doing that. Okay, so it's just not doing a full landscape plan, but you're happy to make it more robust by, from a list? Okay, all right. Next question is, there's a comment on the S and E. Was it in the S and E? Yeah. About the tree protection. Just to make sure that you do protect the trees that could be impacted, I think.
Yeah, so that was, maybe I wasn't clear earlier, but the, obviously there's no impact with the replacement of the pool house. But it's the reserve septic that if it ever had to be implemented in the future, the tree protection measures would be appropriate.
Doesn't talk about the septic, it just says it generally in the staff report.
Right.
That, okay, so we'll just condition that. Okay. E-Mac comments, Arn, did you have a chance to look at them?
Yeah, I mean, there's like a pool house, you know, they were doing.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Mary?
Yeah, little, little, really little stuff. The, the S and E thing was that it was referring to the two hundred, two thousand two standards, not the two thousand four, but again, to the extent that there's not really anything particularly going on there, it would just be almost like changing a typo.
Correct.
And the other, the other thing was just really, the floor plan doesn't look like it lends itself to anything, but just a statement about there not being a kitchen, so we don't turn it into a dwelling unit.
Right, yeah, would be zoning's gonna stamp it with wet bar only in those restrictions, so that's.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, anything else from anybody? No. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application at eleven Hurlingham? This is for a pool house at eleven Hurlingham Drive in the RA four. No, nobody wishes to speak. Does anybody in the commission object to closing this application at this time? Seeing no objections, this application is hereby closed. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Brower.
Thank you. Nice.
Alrighty, our next application is eighteen Simmons Lane. Oh, he doesn't like it when I announce it before he comes in. Hold on. I'm not, he's not accepting. There he goes. Okay. And he's in eighteen Simmons Lane LLC for a final site plan and special permit to demolish the existing dwelling and to construct a new single family dwelling, two guest houses and a pool house where the total volume of all of the structures will exceed one hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet and to install a pool, driveways and associated landscaping terraces and stormwater management systems on a seven point oh five seven nine acre property located at eighteen Simmons Lane in the RA two. On this application, Ms. Jenkins will be seated for Mr. Yesky. The rest is the regulars. With that, Mr. Hegney, if you would kindly proceed. Folks, there was some stuff that came in during the afternoon. I saw it and did not go through it. I just didn't have time. So if people did, please jump in. Okay, Mr. Hegney.
Just to summarize quickly what that was.
Okay.
It was a, as you recall, Redness and Mead had done a five-stage S and E control plan. The Wetlands Agency, as a condition of their permit, required the temporary sediment trap to be removed out of the upland review area, AKA the URA. It was, that was what is on that plan to show that, as well as a relocation of the geothermal system to bring it closer to the house so that it reduces.
A disturbance.
And then there was a revised, the presentation was revised to put those revised S and E control plans into the presentation.
So does that mean we have an updated, we have in our possession, fully updated plans?
We have fully updated S and E control plans. The rest of the civil set has not been updated yet.
So that's missing.
All plans have been updated, which are, you know, those are the key.
Okay, and what about?
If it were to come back in.
Mr. Hegney talk, but so what about DPW when the, I asked you this yesterday, but when you relocate the geothermal, doesn't DPW have to reevaluate the drainage? The structure of the drainage?
The structure of the drainage is not impacted. What is impacted is at some point, the temporary sediment trap comes out and the geothermal is going in that area. I'll be honest, I can't remember if that's phase four or phase five, but Mr. Hegney may know that off the top of his head better than I do.
Okay, maybe. Okay, but certainly.
We'll give him a shot.
Well, Mr. Ginter's here and I'm sure.
Yes, and Mr. Ginter certainly knows.
Yeah.
I definitely have backup here.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Hegney, I think now we know what came in in the afternoon. And hopefully some of the commission had a chance to review it. If you would, go ahead.
We can put it on the screen as well, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. We were before you at the last hearing. There were issues regarding the conservation comments, which the commission wanted us to address. We met with Beth Evans, our conservation director, and revised our, our landscape architects' plans based on that. They also prepared a narrative, which she requested to clarify what changes had been made and why we thought some of the plans should remain as it is. They added thirty seven trees as part of this and also identified a few areas on the site. If we could bring up the second slide on the presentation material, please, that have soil, have ground cover or landscaping, but to have less than three feet above the, of soil above the underground portions of the house. What this means is that you can't count them as green areas, even though when you walk the site, they function and look like green areas because they don't meet the minimum of three feet of fill. So this added additional five thousand, two hundred and two, five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three square feet. Although, as I said, it doesn't count as green area, but it does appear as such. As was discussed right at the beginning, we did revise the sedimentation erosion control plans which show the relocation of the sedimentation, temporary sediment basin, which is on slide five. And it has been moved, yes, right where the cursor is, it has been moved out of the hundred foot review area near the wetlands. And the other major change here, or the other, only change here, is that we moved the field of geothermal wells from, they were really pretty close to the south property line, all in that area there. Actually, some of them encroached into the hundred foot review area as well. And this, once, as Tracy indicated, once we remove the temporary sediment basin, we will place the geothermal wells in that location, so it's closer to the house, less disturbance than there had been. There's still work that needs to be done over on the southernly property line because we have drainage that needs to have pipe taking it to the, the wetlands to the southeast corner of the property. As we noted before, we received approval from Wetlands, Health, Engineering has signed off, and now we've received Conservation. We meet all of the zoning criteria. And we have a very low energy use on this particular building. I would also add that it is much better than the one the commission approved in two thousand and twelve when I brought that to you for the three and a half story building. Unless there's anything else, we would ask for your approval.
Mr. McRae?
Yes, is Mr. Ginter available?
Yes, he is on the screen.
Mr. Ginter, phase two of the S and E control, you, there's catch basins at the the first entrance. I guess it's a truck wash area as well. And they get routed, there's three catch basins, I think, get routed down to what looks like a outfall splash block in the wetland. Tell me, how does everything on the site get to the sedimentation trap?
So the sedimentation, temporary sediment trap, sorry, for the record, Dave Ginter from Redness and Mead. The temporary sediment trap is picking up the middle third of the site. It's not collecting the entire property. So just naturally, the way the site is, is graded out. The, I'll say northwest corner, central portion of the site will just naturally flow into that temporary sediment trap where the existing tennis court is located. Will also have a bit of a swale that will be graded out to the temporary sediment trap. There is an area on the east side of the property that is low and will be required to be pumped. There will be a pump at the bottom of that during construction, which will be pumped to higher grounds, likely where the tennis court is located currently, and filtered through a dirt bag or a sediment bag that's put at the end of the pump line, pump discharge line. And then that will be able to flow into the temporary sediment trap as well. So a lot of the site is getting there, but it's not the entirety of the site.
Okay. It would seem to me that, that those catch basins definitely, you should probably go to the sediment trap as well, directly to that before it gets discharged because it would seem, there's gonna be a lot of everything on top of, you know, getting into those catch basins as a truck entrance, because I, as I see it, I'm seeing the swells trying to, you know, get stuff to them, but it's over, over lawn area or, you know, that kind of stuff. It would seem to me that actually, a lot of this is bypassing the sediment, sedimentation trap. I'm just wondering, could, could you actually get more to the sedimentation trap by pipe or something? Rather than getting it, you know, putting it right into the wetland?
So those, those couple of catch basins at the street are actually picking up very little of our site. It is picking up the road and a couple of acres of land offsite to the north of us. And those pipes are designed to bypass all of our stormwater management systems, both temporary and permanently. Elevation wise, we would not be able to get those catch basins into, into that temporary sediment trap.
But doesn't, doesn't the site slope from Simmons Lane down towards the sedimentation trap?
The majority of it, there is a bit of a ridge, call it within fifty feet or so of that property line that does pitch back towards Simmons Lane.
Okay, because the only reason I'm kind of looking at this is that there's a note right, right to the, to the, I guess it's the eastern entrance. Contractor provide provisions for concrete trunk washout and wheel wash station that made a construction entrance. Right where those catch basins are. So I'm thinking, you know, is something, something gonna be? So I'm thinking, you know, is something, is something gonna be getting into that pipe and it's gonna be discharged untreated right into the, uh, the wetland, but, uh?
Uh, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, so we'll work with the contractor on the, on the, uh, wheel wash. Uh, we do have, uh, details for the concrete washout. Uh, they're supposed to be, um, uh, discharging any concrete washout into a pit, uh, surrounded by SNE controls, so that will filter anything that might come out of there. Uh, the sediment or the catch basins will have silt sacks, uh, installed within it. Uh, there will be, uh, SNE controls at the discharge out into the wetlands. Um, and, uh, as we are disturbing more than five acres, we do have to file with DEEP. Uh, we have to register with them, uh, for construction activity disturbances, uh, and so we'll be on site.
You're over five acres?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and the application is actually, uh, just about ready to be submitted, uh, to, to the state, to, uh, to start that process with them. Uh, and as a result of that, we will have to be on site, uh, at least once a week. Uh, and after every rain event, I believe it's a half an inch of rainfall, uh, we will have to be on site doing SNE inspections. So those catch basins will be, uh, inspected frequently, uh, during our observations during construction. And we'll make sure that the, uh, contractor is taking care of cleaning those out, so there is no issues.
Okay, the geothermal wellheads, they're all subterranean?
Correct.
And there's thirty-five of them back there?
Uh, that is the, the tentative, uh, number that we've received from the, uh, mechanical engineer. Uh, we're still working through all the final mechanical plans, uh, so those, the number of geothermal wells might go up or down by a couple depending on the final design.
Okay, uh, one last thing, actually, uh, I heard, I think, last time, you were offering to, to refinish, uh, Simmons Lane when all is said and done. Is that still the case?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the commission? No. Okay, um, Mr. Hegney, I'm, I'm sorry I didn't see, um, I didn't have time to review it, as you know, the, um, the legislature was also in session today. Um, but, um, we are very appreciative of an effort to improve, um, the site plan and to reduce the disturbance, the total disturbance. Um, I guess it still doesn't get you below five acres, but uh, we are very appreciative of the effort that your client has made, um, to do work that is consistent with what we believe keeps Greenwich a draw, um, for people to move here. Mr. McRae?
Uh, Mr. Hegney, I think I asked this the last time, I'm not too sure if I remember, um, the stone wall, um, along the frontage of Simmons Lane, is that to remain other than those areas that are being breached?
Uh, I'm not recalling that, David.
He did ask and he didn't get an answer, you didn't know last time.
I, I'd like to be consistent in my comments.
Yeah.
Dave, do you recall, or maybe I can call, um, Justin to?
Or we could just ask that it stay.
Well, see, there's, that's what I'm kind of getting at, is that actually you're kind of breaching it in a couple of different plate, new places.
Mm-hmm.
And patching in the old places. What, you know, uh, to what extent actually is what's left over gonna be viable and how?
Why don't we just ask, why don't we just ask if staff would do, take a look? Why don't we just leave it to staff? How about that?
That's fine too, Madam Chair. I, I do have Justin Quinn here with us.
Oh, well, if Mr. Quinn can answer it, hold on a second, if he's got his hand up.
He does have his hand up.
Okay. Alrighty. Mr. Quinn is on, wait, there he goes. And Mr. Quinn, um, hi. Um, so if you would unmute, uh, Mr. McRae was asking about the wall.
Good evening, um, everyone. My name is Justin Quinn. I'm a landscape architect, uh, representing the client. Um, the wall, uh, is to be removed and rebuilt.
In, completely along the frontage of Simmons Lane? Okay, got it.
Alrighty, um, okay, now for sure, any other questions? No. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application at eighteen Simmons Lane? Anybody from the public kindly raise your virtual hand, eighteen Simmons Lane? Uh, no. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Hegney, no, actually, Mr. Quinn, you're the man. Um, so we, we had that a hundred and thirty trees were being removed, but now you're adding three hundred and forty-two.
Correct, yes. There's a hundred and thirty-two, it's actually a hundred and thirty-two trees that are being removed.
Hundred and thirty-two, oh, and three forty-two new, and, um,
Of, of which, of which the, uh, a hundred and thirty-two, one hundred and twenty of them are non-native species.
Oh, cool, okay. Says she who has lots. Okay, so a hundred and twenty were non-native and, um, I can't remember, did you get any comments on the caliper of, of what you were planting?
Correct, yeah, so we actually diversified that after meeting with conservation.
I remembered, good.
Yeah, we diversified the caliper range of trees to make a more diverse, uh, age group of trees. Um, would feel like that would be a more successful planting to restore the canopy quicker.
Okay, um, okay, um, I'm getting a little, okay, there I go. So I got the last set of comments from them. And this plan provides a broader mix of caliper sizes in coordination with the conservation staff. That's what I couldn't remember. Okay, and you just said it. Okay, so that works. Um, that was the note that I, I had pending, um, and you explained.
What, what was the range of that caliber?
It ranges from three-inch caliper to seven-inch caliber.
Seven-inch caliber, yeah, correct.
Um, DPW had asked that you confirm that you're still gonna do, I guess this is Mr. Ginter, you're still doing hundred-year, right?
That, that is correct. Nothing on the drainage design has changed as a result of the recent modifications.
Double checking because, um, what they have says, um, future iterations of this design, and since, um,
Right, that's standard language they have been putting into comment.
Yeah, it's really.
When the, when the applicants are doing one hundred-year storm, they want to make sure that any future additions.
It doesn't go away.
Also done to the hundred-year.
We had someone who did have regrets, um, and the curb cuts. Um, the middle, you're keeping the three and you're just relocating the, the middle one.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, and the private road association has to approve those curb cuts.
Actually, I, well, I checked the title. Uh, there is no private association.
Wait, they, they don't have one?
No. And so what has happened, I did talk to one of the neighbors and he said, uh, you know, we, we, when we have expenses like plowing, uh, we go neighbor to neighbor and say, you know, this is your share and see who chips in, and if they don't chip in, you know, okay, um, the rest of us cover it. Uh, the prior property owner had not been chipping in, so they were, when they reached out to my client, he talked to them. He said, uh, yes, I will definitely chip in, and when I'm done with my construction, I'll repave the road.
But this is Conyure, but this is, no, this, oh, no, it's not. That's why I got confused. I went back to Hurlingham, no. So they don't have an association, so all the people that came and objected the last time were not members of an association. Uh, the last time, I mean.
No, they had joined together, uh, and, uh, very different plan, very.
Right, well, I remember that. I remember all three of them.
And many concerns that they had in terms of how it was going to be used, uh, once it was built. And, um, a, a, a different approach from this client, reaching out to his neighbors, talking to them, and, uh, assuring them that, uh, he would in fact contribute on the slope, snow plowing when we do have it.
The first iteration of this plan long ago was one of the best-attended public hearings I've ever seen.
Yeah, it was, I think, uh, John Tessie did that one. I, I came and did a sub.
I don't remember who did it. I just remember there were people in the hall.
Yeah, I do, but we're not going there.
Okay. There's a lot of articles in the press. Okay, no further questions from the commission, no comments from the public. I don't think you need to do a wrap. Does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No.
All right, this application is hereby closed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Nice work, Mr. Quinn.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're keeping Mr. Hegney. Uh, oh, we're keeping him for the rest of the night. All right, our next application, uh, hold on a second. We need Jeski, right? Jeski wanted to come back for, no, he doesn't.
Okay.
Okay, so on the next application, Tracy, Albin, Jenkins for McRae, Lo, Jones for Jeski, and Wells. Yes. Alrighty, okay. Um, Berkeley Insurance Company for a final coastal site plan and special permit for demolition of five existing structures and the construction of a three-story office building totaling thirty-eight thousand three hundred square feet across five lots to be merged for parcels located at forty-four to fifty-nine Davenport Avenue and five thirty-seven to five forty-five Steamboat Road in the GB and coastal overlay zones. Uh, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you.
This, um, I'll ask you once you get started. Um, okay, go ahead.
Uh, for the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the, uh, Berkeley Insurance Group. Um, we initially filed this, uh, plan, uh, for an L-shaped building, uh, back in September of twenty-four. Uh, after several hearings, the commission voted to proceed to a final plan with certain conditions. And those conditions were a file of special permit, which we had not included as part of the initial application. Uh, provide, uh, case law, uh, which we did provide, uh, study, uh, provide a study on the, uh, on the office use. Uh, we've gone and gotten the variance, uh, regarding that issue, identify height and non-conformities. Uh, we eliminated the non-conformity of height, which had been included in the prior plan. And also demonstrate where the height is retained. We're not retaining the height, we're staying within the forty feet. Uh, retaining non-conforming setbacks, we have eliminated that and are needing the setbacks. And, uh, uh, provide a parking study, which, uh, which we did do as part of submitting, uh, this plan. Um, and we revised that and resubmitted it in June to you. Uh, we have a more compact building that meets, as I said, all the setbacks, height and stories. Uh, we had hearings in September and October. At the September meeting, there was consensus that we file with the Board of Appeals for variances, and those variances were for lot coverage, building area, FAR, office use, uh, over ten thousand square feet, uh, and parking. Uh, we appeared before the Board of Appeals on September twenty-fourth and October eighth, and the board unanimously found as follows, the overall elimination and reduction of a significant number of non-conformities provides this board with the basis with which to support, with the support of previous Connecticut case law for granting these variances rather than the classic unusual hardship standard. The board also particularly finds that the abandonment of one of the lot and buildings historic, noxious, non-conforming industrial manufacturing use and the conversion to office use is less offensive and more favorable, a more favorable change of use. The project is consistent with the town's land use patterns in the area and the town's plan of conservation of development and development for thriving commercial centers. The board conditions the approval on the following variances on the implementation of the plans as presented at this meeting, and those are the same plans we submitted to you. And they unanimously granted variances of lot coverage, building coverage, war area, office use of greater than ten thousand square feet, and, uh, parking, a parking requirement. And at the end, they said, the board further finds that this relief can be granted without detriment to the public welfare or impairment to the integrity of the regulations. Uh, at the last briefing, uh, there was a discussion on which of the, uh, special permit standards in section six dash seventeen applied, and I do want to go through those with you. Uh, these is in, uh, section D, one, uh, not, uh, prevent or inhibit the orderly growth of commercial development in the area. Uh, this is all very well-developed, and in fact, we're reducing, uh, the development that exists on site. Uh, two is non, not adversely affect storm, drainage, sewage disposal, or other municipal facilities. Uh, we are actually providing stormwater treatment, which did not exist on the site previously. And, uh, our studies showed that we will be reducing sewer flows, and that was found acceptable, uh, by the sewer division. Uh, not materially adverse, adversely affect adjacent structures, neighborhoods, or developed areas. Um, one of the big things that this plan does that the other one did not, and what exists on site now, currently have setbacks of, uh, one foot on the easterly side of the property and zero on the south side. Uh, we're increasing the, uh, one to the east to fifty-two feet, uh, for the main portion of the office building. Uh, and thirty feet on the south side. Uh, the third floor of the building also sits back, so uh, from the east side, the third floor is ninety-three feet away from the property line. And the southerly building, uh, the, uh, uh, third floor from the south, uh, property line is forty-eight feet away. Uh, not materially obstruct significant views. Uh, we're actually reducing the stories and height uh, and creating more compact building than what exists on the site now. The, uh, number five is preserve and enhance important open space and other features. Uh, we are providing green space where there's pretty much none now. It's ninety-three percent coverage. Uh, we are providing significant landscaping. Uh, we're planting sixty-seven trees, and there are currently eight, uh, and providing a hundred and eighty-three shrubs. Uh, and next is not materially adversely affect pedestrian circulation. Uh, we're removing all five curb cuts on Davenport uh, and, uh, one on Steamboat, as well as widening the sidewalk, uh, along Steamboat Road. Uh, not materially affect safety in the streets or, nor increase traffic congestion. Our, uh, traffic study indicated that there would not be an increase, uh, in traffic. And this also relates to the reduction of curb cuts, uh, on the property. Uh, number eight, be in scale compatible, compatible to and in contextual, consistent with surrounding uses. Uh, we are going to have, uh, building of less square footage, uh, eighty-five thousand cubic feet less than what exists on site now. Uh, we have a seventy-five thousand square foot hotel across the street. Uh, we have a ninety-six thousand square foot office building, which is the Berkeley headquarters, on the other side of Davenport. Uh, just down the block, uh, we have a two hundred and eighty thousand square foot, uh, office building, which is general reinsurance. Uh, on the other side of, uh, Museum Drive, we have a, a new seventy thousand square foot museum. Uh, number nine is preserve land, structures, or features that have historical, uh, special, uh, special historical or cultural, uh, use. Uh, we believe that the architecture on the site has been significantly improved uh, from what, uh, is there, uh, right now. Uh, and ten will not materially adversely affect residential uses, nor be detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, we're eliminating industri, the industrial use, uh, that was along Davenport. Uh, we're eliminating all the curb cuts on Davenport, and we're increasing the setbacks as well as, uh, providing landscaping, which really doesn't exist on the site at all now. Also, part of the discussion were changes in the business zones, uh, which occurred in nineteen seventy-six.
And I would like.
And I want to go over those because I, I think the commission was trying to accomplish when it did.
Before, yeah, before you start going over this, um, I just want to read it to the commission. Did everybody see the minutes from nineteen seventy-six? So it was when we, we created the limitation in the zone on office space. And it starts out saying, this is how much has come in of office space has come into the zone. And. it that we, the the provision of town services has not kept pace with the with the rapid growth. And this was back then in seventy-six of office space. And it's interesting, they say, as the result of this growth, twenty-four thousand people per day come to Greenwich to work. The number of incoming commuters exceeds the number of families living in town. So as a result, the road network is overburdened to the point where major delays now occur. This is fifty years ago. There are more people coming into work here. The road networks are burdened, and our infrastructure is not prepared for this. Then they talk about their, you know, with the increase in traffic, the town has experienced more air pollution. The problems that we're all familiar with, stormwater drainage. I think this plan, this, we've been addressing that with, ever since the new stormwater manual came into effect. Sewerage treatment plant, all these things were issues fifty years ago, and you read this. A water supply was the other one, and have you guys read through that? It is astounding. Over the weekend, I went through the census for Greenwich, and I don't know if you had a chance, Patrick. Is I was, I put to, I I found data. And the pattern hasn't changed. We have more people coming to work in Greenwich than, and our housing hasn't grown that much. And so I looked at all these numbers, and we have more people coming into work here than leave during the day by far and away. And they're not, it really hasn't changed. What that means is despite having made this change to our comprehensive plan, and our comprehensive plan was amended to reduce office development in the zone and to reduce every single one of those large office buildings that you see in this zone today was built prior to nineteen seventy-six. And so the purpose of this change in the regulation was to revise our comprehensive plan so that we veered more towards housing. And as I read this, because it says, you know, we've got all these people coming in, and they don't live here. And we have to, we can't accommodate this with our infrastructure. So where someone makes a statement that an office building in this zone is consistent with our comprehensive plan baffles me. Because I'm fine with ZBA doing their job and granting the variances. But I'm not following how not having these minutes, they could make the statement that this proposal is consistent with our comprehensive plan. Because as I read this, our comprehensive plan is to reduce large office buildings in the neighborhood and to try to strike a different balance. And that's what we've been trying to do for fifty years. The amendment benefit, and here again, go to special permit. The proposed amendment benefit the general welfare and quality of life for the greatest number of people. Limiting business growth may temporarily blah, 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 but they're clear. We are economically vibrant today. They also wanted to preserve these waterfront, these near-the-water neighborhoods, which had been developed with office buildings. And they go on to talk about the statement of purpose for the zones. So if you go back and look, hold on, I gotta find, I scrolled away from that. But if you go and you look at the statement of purpose for the GB, it says basically what we're talking about, this, this, what they were, what they were trying to say at the time. As I remember, you have to go and you read the purpose for all, for all business zones to guide and control the type, amount, location, and quality of business development in the town. So it's in harmony with Greenwich's residential, predominantly residential character. To concentrate business activities in the existing commercial areas. Everything that has been built in this neighborhood since the regulation passed is housing. I'm going on, Mr. Hegney, and I'm going to give you a chance to answer, no worries.
Thank you.
But to control the type and amount and location of business development, tying it to population growth. Now, today, the housing bill passed. We're going to have to set parts of, we're going to have to figure out where we're going to accommodate housing growth. And our goal will be to reduce commuting and have people work and live in the same place. Again, our comprehensive plan. So I'm struggling because if I read the seventy-six minutes and I read what they put into the purpose for the business zones, I'm still not seeing how this proposal is consistent with our comprehensive plan, how it is consistent with the P O C D's aim to retain our residential character, our as-built, or the primarily residential aspect because we've still been focused on not expanding commercials. So, yeah, you say it's thriving business, but we don't want to be. From everything I look in our history, nobody who wrote a P O C D for Greenwich wanted to be downtown White Plains. I mean, I don't know how else to say it. We didn't want to look like that, and we stopped those buildings. So I'm struggling. I'm fine with the fact that the building now has no non-conformities because of the ZBA. But what I'm struggling with is I don't see it as, I still don't see it as consistent with our comprehensive plan, and I don't see it as consistent with the P O C D. And that's always been, and I've said to you, Mr. Hegney, if it looked different, but it looks like an office building. It looks like downtown, that other town right next to us, or White Plains, because they're not going to pick up as much. I don't think they mind. So there it is. That's my struggle. So I leave you to convince me, Mr. Hegney.
So, Madam Chair, I think one of the things that the Board of Appeals recognized is that this is not a vacant lot. There's over forty thousand.
They had not seen the minutes. We know nobody gave them the minutes. We know they didn't have the minutes of how this regulation came to be. They didn't know the history. And here I'm sitting with the history, and I know what the comprehensive plan is, and I know what the P O C D is because we wrote it. Go ahead, Mr. Hegney. I'll stop. Convince me.
So the, they, what they did see was what's there now, and that's the history of this particular site. It has two large office buildings, four stories, over forty feet in height. It has a non-conforming industrial use on it, and we're removing that. It has properties, buildings that are right on the property line. We're changing that. We're improving the look along Steamboat Road, and we're providing a buffer to that residential neighborhood that currently does not exist. And so to compare what the, what was discussed in nineteen seventy-six to this now, it doesn't recognize, this is not a vacant site. This is a well-developed site that went from the twenties to the seventies. And so the things that the board was.
I believe that in nineteen seventy-six, it was redevelopment in the zone. Sorry, I don't think we were looking at empty lots. I was already born, we weren't looking at empty lots. Okay, go ahead.
So what the commission at the time was concerned about was impact on infrastructure, traffic, pollution, drainage, sewage, and adequacy of water. So what does our plan do to relate, to address those particular issues that were the basis for those changes in nineteen seventy-six? We have no increase in traffic. We're eliminating curb cuts. We're adding on-street, on-street and on-site parking, which is deficient right now and would be more conforming with what we're providing. All of the buildings on site.
Have a lot more usage density, and you will have a lot more traffic.
We have a traffic report that contradicts that, and it does not show that there's any increase in traffic. If I can continue.
Of course not, because we're looking, Mr. Hegney. Okay, but I have to be able to intercede with the points, which is the traffics. You and I both know the traffic study compares full occupancy. You know, this is going to be a brand-new full office building. This is what, this is what these minutes go to. Go ahead. I'll stop.
Currently, all the buildings on site burn fossil fuels, and they burn fuel oil. We will be an all-electric building. We'll be providing EV chargers. We are meeting a lead gold standard in the development of this new building, which is far in excess of what is there right now. We're reducing and treating stormwater runoff, and right now, there is no treatment for stormwater. And it's only one property away from the harbor. And providing stormwater treatment is an important part of what, of what the commission seeks to do in terms of the environment. And we're reducing water consumption and thereby reducing sewer flows. So we're addressing those issues, the sewage, the water, the drainage, the pollution, traffic, and the infrastructure, because we are less burdening the infrastructure than exists right now. The other thing is, this building is two blocks from the train station. And so there will be a use of mass transit because of the location of the train station. And the the neighborhood that we have here, as I said, there's a four-story, seventy-five thousand square foot hotel across the street. The Berkeley's building, which was built prior to nineteen seventy-six at four seventy-five, is there, and it's almost a hundred thousand square feet. We have the General Reinsurance Building that was built before seventy-six. That's two-hundred-and-eighty thousand square feet and two-hundred thousand square feet of parking garage underneath it. So this is not just a pure residential neighborhood. This has been developed in this way for many years with the hotel and the office buildings to get rid of other uses that were on the, on Steamboat Road. So this is very much in keeping with what the commission in nineteen seventy-six was concerned about. And they had, in the sixties, wanted to encourage office use, and that was mainly so that the burden of us residential owners would be shifted to more of the commercial. That's why we had the American Can Building of six-hundred thousand square feet, or the four stories of the, of the Greenwich Plaza, or Cheeseborough Ponds, or U S Tobacco.
I'm familiar with all those buildings, and so is the rest of the commission.
Unfortunately, all of them are gone. And we now have one of the few corporate entities that has remained in town, family-owned. And it is, is looking to have a, an office building next to its existing office building to utilize, to remain in town. It, it, it should be thanked for doing that, not, not chastised for doing it. This, I see this as a significant improvement and something that the town and the commission should support. We've been to the Architecture Review Committee. They have looked at the building. They had comments. We revised it to meet those comments. So I, I, I don't see this as in any way contradictory to what the commission was looking to do and adopt with the GB and all the rest of the commercial zones in nineteen seventy-six.
All I can say is I don't agree with you when I read that. Madam Jenkins.
Yes, and I think, again, Mr. Hegney, it, it may be that with certain, with, under certain circumstances, if you're comparing the scale of buildings in a, in a, in an area, it may be telling that this is another big building in an area that's full of big buildings. But to reemphasize what Madam Chair says, in nineteen seventy-six, the reason for, one of the main reasons for the change in the regulations at that point, and I'm quoting the minutes here, two, two million five hundred thousand square feet of executive offices were constructed over the last eight years. This is nineteen seventy-six, they're looking back. And another million square feet are planned for the immediate future. They then say exactly what I think we're struggling with now. The proposed zones, namely emphasizing residential rather than even more large office buildings, are in keeping with the plan of development, which says a primary objective should be to maintain the town's predominantly residential characteristic. Everything around that area that is, was not built between nineteen sixty-seven and nineteen seventy-six is residential. And in fact, two of the properties that had been commercial, namely Moneros and the Moneros Parking Lot, have subsequently been developed as residential properties. So it's fine to say, gee whiz, it's smaller than the other buildings. But by my calculation, if I can find my calculation here, four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand two-hundred-and-sixty-one square feet of commercial office buildings were built on Steamboat Road between nineteen sixty-seven and nineteen seventy-six. And interestingly enough, by the way, in nineteen seventy-eight, Berkeley built an office building that happened to, to be ten thousand square feet, because at that point, that was probably the limit and not the eighty-four thousand one hundred eighty-two thousand square feet. So what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, you're saying, gee, the whole neighborhood looks like this. It's not inconsistent with the neighborhood. It's not inconsistent with the neighborhood in nineteen sixty-seven. It is very inconsistent with the position that the town took that this is a residential, chiefly a residential community. We're short of housing. We're short of housing everywhere. We have vacant office buildings. The state law now says, I would change your vacant office buildings into residential buildings because we need residential buildings. And to the extent that this is consistent with the Berkeley structure at, what is it, four seventy-five, or any of the even larger buildings down the street, is not consistent with the position that the town now takes, that we are, we are overwhelming, we are potentially overwhelming the residential character by building large office buildings. And the large office building, as beautiful as it may be compared to what's there now, and what's there now is quite a jumble. And, and is, it, it cannot cry out to be retained. It's ugly, and now you're going to have pretty. But the point is that it is surrounded by residential. It is surrounded by residential. All of the major building was prior to the change in the regulations. And we're short of, we're short of residential properties. So saying, oh, it's consistent with the neighborhood, maybe the scale argument works before the ZBA with all due respect. But we have to look at the intent of the development of the town going forward. And with the new state law saying more residential, affordable residential, the last thing we need, frankly, is another large office building taking up space. So with all due respect, the argument that was made in seventy-six is more true than ever because residential is a, is at such a premium now that every time we have any, if it were a vacant lot, everybody would want to have a water view residence rather than an office building with a vacant parking lot next to it. So again, it's consistent with the neighborhood, the, the portion of the neighborhood that was developed before nineteen seventy-six. I think I'm, I'm saying the same thing that the chair.
Well, the portion, the portion, you know, if you look at six one oh two, which is the purpose of the business zones, to prevent business land uses from encroaching upon or otherwise disturbing areas planned for residential use. You know, our alternate use for this could be if somebody did a residential. I, I thought it was great that somebody offered to do an affordable housing development at this site. I was excited about that. I think it was meant to scare the audience, but it was a great idea because that's what we are being asked to do. So first of all, it's not encroach on what would be future residential, what could be. And it's very. And it's very clear when you read through the purposes of the G B, of the business zones, that they're looking, they're not looking to expand office. They say to serve retail and service business needs. They never discuss expanding office. Mr. Wells, I will let you speak.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I won't be anywhere near as eloquent and probably a lot shorter, but I just have a completely different view. I mean, I've been on this committee for five years and all we've been improving is single-family homes and multifamily homes. So to have, I'm sort of interested, we finally do have an office building. Hopefully, some of the people that work there, I know, do live in town. It's certainly an improvement over what is there right now. And I personally would not be thrilled if there was a large eight dash thirty G apartment building going on this site up to five or six stories. And, oh, yeah, I agree. We don't want to look like White Plains. We also don't want to look like Bronxville, which is completely filled with large office buildings. So I think we need diversity, certainly in this area, is within walking distance to the train station. I'm sure the younger folks will be taking trains out. So I think the applicant, if I could finish, I know it's sort of fun to interrupt, but I don't like being interrupted. The younger, the younger, the younger people will be coming out by train. And I, I think we're just, you know, reaching for straws and on, on pretty thin ice, turning it down based on minutes that were fifty years old. And I'll be quiet.
I'm not basing it on the minutes. I'm basing it on the written purposes of our business zone regulations in section six one oh two. And they never seek to encourage office building development. Never in the purposes of our business z- zone regulations, what we say they are supposed to do, do we encourage office space? Do we say, wow, what we need is to have more offices in town? It is, it is excluded purposely by the grandfathers and grandmothers of P and Z. That's what they did. They wrote this section. When they did that, some of it, some of it, it looks like it's from the eighties, most of it. But they wrote this section and very purposely did not encourage office development. So when we say, well, you know, we haven't done an office for a while, why not? I say to you, well, the reason we haven't is because that's not what's part of the purposes of our regulations. And so we are deviating from our comprehensive plan as it is expressed in our zoning regulations. That would be my argument to you.
Well, I guess my response would be, we should have prohibited them. We haven't prohibited. And we also say we want a thriving business community. So I don't see anywhere in there that we prohibit it. Yeah, we want to encourage residential. Okay, I just.
We do prohibit over ten thousand square feet.
That's great, but that's.
Overruled by the ZBA, but we prohibit large office. And so what I'm saying is, we pro- we, our goal in here, in the six one oh two, is this issue of not facilitating office space. And we have fought, for example, on the avenue, we are very uncomfortable with office space on the avenue and we resist applications for office space for the same reason, because it interferes with retail continuity. And with the residential uses, we hope to have on the avenue as well on the third floor. So this is always, it's a trade-off. But we did not want to become an office hub, an urban office hub. And that's how these regulations, this purposes of the business zone regulations are written. And so I'm being guided by what the black and white is, not by what I wish or I like, but what the black and white says. So that's.
Well, that, that's fine, but I think if that was our view, this to me seems very late in the game to bring this up and we should have brought it up on the first application.
I did. I said, I've been saying it, Mr. Hegney is very clear. I've said it from the beginning. You may not have heard me say it, but from the beginning, I have been talking about being uncomfortable about the scope of this application and the look of it. That it, to me, it is, it looks like New Rochelle, White Plains, downtown office, Stanford. It is consistent with those environments. And I have said that, Mr. Hegney is frowning as if he doesn't recognize it, but I know I've pushed back on the design and I know I've made the comment about the scope of it and the scale of it and how I felt that was, I was finding that as inconsistent. I haven't just brought it up. We got hung up on the non-conformities and talked a lot about it, but I've been bringing it up all along because that's what I went to.
I don't have any additional points, so I'm going to be quiet, but my mind has not changed.
Okay.
So Madam Chair, to cover some, at least some of.
Can I, can I divert for a second? You did not get the waiver from DPW. What does that mean for the application?
The waiver, the waiver we didn't get, we got two waivers. One was to have two.
Where's Patrick?
On Steamboat.
Patrick!
He's there, he's here.
Hmm, not seeing him.
There were three waivers we asked for.
Hold on a second, because I discussed this with Patrick, so I would like him to come back. Make his phone ring or something. Okay, he must have excused himself thinking we were going to keep going. Okay, go ahead and we'll catch him up when he gets back, because he must have stepped away. Go ahead, Mr. Hegney, my apologies.
Well, if, why don't we get back to that? And we, I would, I would like to respond to a number of the comments that you made regarding the regulations. Purposes are not what guides the, the commission in terms of looking at the specifics of a application. What you have are your zoning standards in six dash two oh five and the standards for a special permit in six dash seventeen. And that's why I went through those earlier to make sure that this plan was addressing those. And it's not controlled by the purpose language. It's controlled by the standards themselves and the zoning regulations for setbacks and height. And so we went to the Board of Appeals at the commission's suggestion and we got variances for all of those that we had not made conforming. And what the Board of Appeals recognized was that you are not dealing with a blank slate here. You have a hodgepodge of buildings and what is being proposed is something that is far superior to what's there. And under Connecticut law, reducing non-conformities is a basis for granting variances. And that, that's what they found persuasive. I don't think whether they heard the comments or the minutes from the nineteen seventy-six decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission, that would have changed because they were applying the law that we have in the state, that if you reduce non-conformities and we reduce them significantly and eliminate them significantly, that, that is a basis for the granting of a variance to allow for alternate construction to occur. Now, my position with you has all been, as, all along, has been under eight dash two. You had the authority to do this without the Board of Appeals. You didn't agree with me. So, and, and the memo that you received from council didn't agree with that. So we went to the Board of Appeals and we presented this plan to them. And they found unanimously that it was appropriate here and that it did, was in conformance with the town's plan of conservation development. And it is also in conformance with the special permit standards of these regulations. That's what's your guide, not general language and a purpose portion of a regulation, but the specific standards. And I don't see where we don't meet all of those. And frankly, I think we also address the comments that were made in nineteen seventy-six about addressing specific concerns that the commission at the time had in terms of impact on infrastructure and traffic and development. So.
Yeah, I'm still not seeing it. Mr. LaRoe, we had called out to you, poor guy. We, I asked Mr. Hegney about the, about DPW not granting the waiver and what that all meant. And so I wanted both of you to be here for that discussion if Mr. Hegney was about to discuss it. Go ahead, Mr. Hegney.
So we asked for three waivers. One was to have the existing curb cut on the north side of Steamboat Road for the property closer to Davenport Avenue than what is permitted. And that waiver was granted. Second waiver was to have two curb cuts on Steamboat Road, mainly because the fire marshal had requested that we have two accesses into the underground garage. And that was granted. The one that was not granted was the sightlines to be able to retain the three parking spaces that are on Steamboat Road. And we had a meeting with Deputy Chief Bonnie from the Police Department and Michael Kislak from the Town Engineering Department. And the, we, we had a difference of opinion. The Deputy Chief would prefer to keep parking on the public streets. And the traffic engineer was concerned about sightlines. So Mr. DeAndrea, who participated in that discussion, went to the property. He measured the sightlines from a certain point, not the one that necessarily engineering would want it measured from, but from when, where you pull out of the garage, you can see south on Steamboat Road. And he said, there's two hundred and fifty feet of sight distance. And I think that that's more than adequate. One of the things was also, the, our sightline study showed that people were exceeding eight, thirty-five miles an hour on, on Steamboat Road, which did concern the Deputy Chief. But that's what we were asking for. I don't want to be caught between two down departments. One says you have to keep parking and expand it, and one says get rid of it. We're not changing the location of that, of that curb cut from what it exists right now. Mr. DeAndrea showed that you did have the ability to see coming out of that parking garage. And I, I, I don't know how to get to the traffic department that would, taking their approach on all projects would eliminate significant amounts of existing street parking. I, I don't think it makes any sense. I think we showed that it can be done safely. But I don't want to be caught between one department that says have parking and another department that says don't have parking. We did have a discussion, Mr. DeAndrea did with Deputy Chief Bonnie. We provided that to, to staff. I don't, I don't know if, Pat, you were able to reach Deputy Chief? But he, he doesn't want to be standing in the way of a building like this getting developed.
Oh, the, the marketing plug, Mr. LaRoe.
Um, yeah, I, I did not have a chance to speak directly with Mr. Bonnie. I, I did want to give the commission my, at least, conversation with, with him or anybody at Parking Service on this. I was not able to have that conversation today, since yes, Tuesday was a holiday. I, I understand the predicament of the commission is sort of being pressed into. I think traffic and safety is obviously an important thing, as is the availability of parking. But I think realistically, I could see both sides of the argument here, but in the current situation, this is five lots. So presumably, there could be five curb cuts here. A project like this is reducing it down to three. There's been projects in other places where several lots have been merged in the downtown and we've reduced it down to two or three. And we've, we've found ways to not capture maybe every space that was lost, but we've, you know, significantly reduced the number of spaces lost by reallocating and restriping along the street and finding opportunities to put more parking on. I think we still have an opportunity to do that here and, and staff can work with both part departments to make sure that the applicant is doing that. But again, I think the parking quantity is really going to be up to Parking Services and DPW to agree to what measures need to be met and that finding that middle ground. And we just need to have that meeting, so.
Okay, so basically, you think you can get there? You can find a middle ground? If you had time to have the meeting. Okay, that helps.
It's a small sample size, it's two, but I think I maybe.
Okay.
The, the, the one also point I wanted to make, Madam Chair, is we're eliminating all those curb cuts on Davenport and seven parking spaces along there. It's a neighborhood that is challenged for parking. Deputy Chief also commented that they would like to have that as residential parking and, and signed as such. And we would support that as well.
So, but it, it's, we need these people to come to agreement. I mean, the commission can feel like, oh, yeah, that's, you're right, Mr. Hegney, but we need these people to come to agreement. Mr. Lo?
No, I, I was going to mention earlier that, that in, in this earlier discussion of the intent of the town's management of, of commercial and residential balance and trends. Mr. Hegney, you, you concluded with a comment that this development, and I think this is a direct quote, is far superior to what is there. Now, is that simply your subjective opinion? Where in the, if so, where in the regulations is there a provision for such a subjective opinion?
Well, I don't think it's that subjective, Mr. Lo, because when I went through the special permit standards earlier, I pointed out all of the improvements that are being made in terms of traffic, in terms of curb cuts, in terms of pedestrian-friendly, in terms of pollution, in terms of water quality, in terms of less use of water, less infrastructure impact on the sewer, that all those are the standards that you use when you're looking at any development with a special permit. And I believe that we have not only addressed that, we have exceeded those and have eliminated many of the non-conformities that existed there. That, that's what makes me think that this is a vast improvement from what's there now and is worthy of your support. I don't see anything that we don't meet in special permit standards or under the approval that we receive from the Board of Appeals that we don't meet.
Well, you don't, considering there may be a desire for greater, the preservation of the residential neighborhoods, you're not meeting, you're not satisfying that, you, are you?
That, that this is jo- zoned general business. And the one thing that we don't meet in terms of general business is we are in excess of ten thousand square feet. There's already twenty-nine thousand square feet of office on the property now. And what we said to the Board of Appeals is, we want to consolidate it. We want to provide better setbacks. And we want to improve the overall residential area. But we want to keep the square footage that we have and eliminate the noxious use of the, of the industrial. So I, I think we're through this project, enhancing the residential neighborhood, providing green space and screening that just doesn't exist at all now, because the buildings are right on the property line. So I, I think we are meeting that requirement.
Yeah, it's nothing like a big black glass office building to improve a residential neighborhood. I, I just, I'm struggling. I'm sorry. I've been struggling with the look of the building from the beginning and you know that. I feel like it is just vastly urban downtown office structure. I'm sorry, Mr. Lo, did you still had your hand up? Did you want to add anything?
I, typically, the powers that be remove these hands up. So I, I'm remiss if I didn't put it down, but I, I could go on, but I, we're probably belaboring.
I think we've said what we're struggling with and the good news is we've got time to, we've got time to figure it out, because Patrick has to resolve this issue with the sightlines and he needs time for them to have a meeting and hopefully he can, he can get them to come to an agreement and bring, and give us. And he needs time for them to have a meeting, and hopefully he can he can get them to come to an agreement and bring and give us something that works. Mr. LaRoe, you have your hand up.
Oh, yeah, I think Mr. Higgin spoke about the Deputy Chief being in favor of residential permit parking. My experience is, I think the residents on Davenport have tried before and have been denied that request. So I'm not, I don't want anyone to sort of walk away thinking that that is something that's, you know, easy to get done because.
Unless their policy has changed, Patrick, I agree with you. They they, I was at a Board of Selectmen meeting maybe two, three months ago where another one was denied. They struggle with it because it has to be enforced. You have to drive through the neighborhood enforcing it. And that's the issue. People have to have the permits. You have to make sure they're there with the permits. And they don't have the staffing to do that.
And it goes to, sorry to cut you off. It goes to other issues.
I don't mind. The only one who does it.
It is, this is a street that is divided down the middle by in commercial and residential zone. And I think properly so. Parking Services had looked at that saying, in commercial districts, there needs to be availability of on-street parking, even when it is across the street from residential parking. It would you just can't kill commerce by making all the parking available on a certain street.
So I'm not sure that that'll fly, but I think if you can get them to get to get agreement. Okay.
That the point I'd like to make in that regard, because we had a great deal of the commercial activity with curb cuts on Davenport. And so to improve the conditions for the residential area on the east side of Davenport, we have eliminated all of those curb cuts. There was a drive-through on the building at 545 where you can go from Steamboat Road up to Davenport. That's all being eliminated. And we're putting in adequate, I would say, very extensive screening between the residential use and the commercial use. So this is a significant improvement to the neighborhood.
In your view, Mr. Higgin, but I appreciate you making the case. Next question, staff was going to reach out to the Fire Marshal. Were you able to get on the second egress, the second means of access to the below-grade parking? Has that been resolved?
We did get a memo back from the Fire Marshal, and I'm, it's.
I can't remember. I just.
Leaving me right now if he.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I'm tired.
I will just give, let me one second. I'll I'll look it up.
He had seen that there were two means of egress in the past. I should have checked. Do you know that you went to two or not, Mr. Higgin? Do you remember?
We have, we have two means of access to the garage now that was asked by the previous Fire Marshal.
Yes, before Mr. Dawson. Yeah, this was removed in the last set of plans was what the Fire Marshal comments. And this is in Patrick's most recent staff report that it had come out of the plan. So I'm just making sure it's back in.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I can, I can clarify, Madam Chair, that it's definitely back in now.
Okay.
And the current Fire Marshal had a couple of other comments regarding needing the NFPA issues. He wanted will serve letters, which we already have provided. He wanted a letter on a fire pump. We provided space for a for the fire pump in the building, which is listed. And he wanted to know about signal strength and adequacy of first responders. If we're not going to have signal strength there, I don't know where we're going to have signal strength. Well, you can see the the cell cell units on the top of Greenwich Plaza from the property. And he asked about providing information from the MEPs and and structure, fire safety, and all that would be provided as he requested at the building permit stage. We did respond to that.
Patrick, did you have any other outstanding issues that we haven't touched on? I know we spent a lot of time on.
No, sewer has, they have moved.
Acknowledgement letters in. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, they they had moved some of the issues to after, you know, when permits are being requested. But they've been addressed satisfactory for this phase.
Okay. Landscaping's good. Conservation's happy.
Yep.
Okay. DPW.
I believe Mr. Higgin, the bird strike material is going in in the design.
Yeah, this is bird-friendly glass that we specified. And that was part of ARC, which approved the building, I should add.
But they are not, they are not enforcing zoning regulations, Mr. Higgin. And they are often not working contextually. Mr. Wells?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just one follow-up on, we talked about the last time, the diesel. And the applicant has provided a pretty thorough letter regarding why, you know, a tier four backup generator would not really improve the situation much over tier two, as long as the tier two used ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel. So it's my question to Mr. Higgin is, will you commit to use ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is it okay if I turn to public comment? Does the Commission have any unanswered questions at the moment? I think Mr. Tessie shows up every time to tell you that the Delamar likes this building. Mr. Tessie, anybody who wants to speak on the Berkeley Insurance Building, kindly raise your virtual hand, and we will call on you. In the meantime, Mr. Tessie, if you would unmute.
The Delamar really likes this building. What the Delamar also really likes is the fact that the Board of Appeals has granted a variance that permits this building from a coverage standpoint, from FAR standpoint, and from a building area standpoint. And I think that's important. The Commission cannot ignore the decision of the Board of Appeals.
We're not ignoring the decision of the Board of Appeals, Mr. Tessie. We are not, have not mentioned the word nonconformity a single time this evening. Not a single time, Mr. Tessie. So we don't need to be reminded of our duties and responsibilities. We have not mentioned nonconformities, which is where the Board of Appeals acted.
The Board of Appeals acted. Thank you for that comment. No, when I said the Commission cannot ignore the decision of the Board of Appeals, I want to give you context. The Board of Appeals decided to grant variances, which changed the game. Okay, because every zoning regulation has a history, everyone. You know, granted, you basically go down, you go back to 1948 and all the changes since then. So whether it's, whether it happens to be a height issue or a setback issue or an FAR issue, coverage issue, those are what the regulations state. Okay, and they all have a history, some short, some long, some longer rationales, some shorter rationales. But when the Board of Appeals acts, and they're the only body that can do that, that has that kind of power. And as you know, you need a four out of five situation, and you have to prove some pretty high standards to get approved. But once they do, and I think you can check the case law and check with your attorneys. But once they do, that's the ballgame that you're dealing with. You're dealing.
Mr. Tessie, for the second time, we have not questioned anything that the Board of Appeals did. What the impact of their decision was, we are fully respecting. It is within their jurisdiction, and we are aware of that. The discussion has never touched on any of the variances on the FAR, on the coverage. It has not touched on any of that. So you would be incorrect in choosing to lecture the Commission on our job and how we are to perform it at this time, Mr. Tessie, because we are fully cognizant. Oh, Mr. Tessie, did you by any chance listen to the recording of the ZBA meeting? Because I did. I know everything that went on in that ZBA meeting, and I listened to it twice. So I'm very aware of what they decided and what happens when a ZBA acts. Because you know, Mr. Tessie, that Commissions are required to have training now all the time. And we go to the Connecticut Bar Association seminars, and we learn what a Board of Appeals does. And we learn about nonconformities. So it is not appropriate for you to be lecturing us on what the Board of Appeals has accomplished and how we are to view that. Now, I was trying to be courteous, but you are overstepping, sir.
John, you muted.
That's probably just as well right now because.
I guess so. I was making a very simple point.
I understood it. The Board of Appeals is a game changer because they granted all the, they granted it all. And the nonconformities no longer exist. Gotcha, Mr. Tessie. I am well aware of that.
It's not about the nonconformities no longer exist. It's about the new building and the fact that the standards now for that building in terms of floor area, height, size.
Have you heard us mention those topics? No, we have not. Mr. Tessie, I'm sorry, but your comments are not appropriate right now. We have not raised it. We have not raised the topic of FAR. We have not raised any of the areas that ZBA touched. It is not appropriate for you to come and correct us when there is nothing to correct.
I wasn't correcting anyone.
Well, you don't lead to lecture us either.
I listened, I listened to the full Board of Appeals hearing, and I've also listened to you all. And I was making a simple comment that you you went back to the purposes of the changes when they happen to create the GB and the GBO zone and get away with the PG. I'm aware of all of that. Been around too long. My only point was, what I've already stated, it's not a debate. But I do believe that it is appropriate that the Commission, as I stated, considers this application on the basis of the Board of Appeals variance allowing this building to be there. Subject to your approvals under special permit, subject to your approvals under special permit standards, as Mr. Higgin has stated. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Tessie.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so we have no other public comment. Did you want to make another, any other comments, Mr. Higgin?
Yeah, yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. I submit to you that this is the type of redevelopment that the Commission needs to encourage. It reduces energy consumption. It provides stormwater treatment, which doesn't exist. It reduces water consumption. It reduces sewer flows. It substantially increases green area and landscaping. It reduces overall volume, footprint and square footage on the site. It provides more street and onsite parking. It provides bike storage and EV chargers. Provides office space within walking distance of a train station, and it eliminates an industrial use. And the Board of Appeals has already decided that 38,000 square feet on this site is appropriate to be used for office use. And I went through the special permit standards with you. And I believe the plan as we have submitted it meets all of those special permit standards. And that to follow your own regulations, you need to approve this plan. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission? Does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed. Thank you very much, Mr. Higgin. And with that, we'll move on to your next application. Mr. MacRae? And Madam Jenkins is refused.
Mr. MacRae comes back and I disappear.
Yeah, this is a little revolving door tonight. So on this application, we now have, and Mr. Yeski is back. Mr. Yeski, you're back? All right, we're in business.
Yeah, we're.
We have Albin, MacRae, Lo, Yeski, and Wells seated on this application. Eagle View Holding LLC for a final site plan and special permit to demolish an existing 217-bed skilled nursing facility and construct a four-story, 170-unit assisted housing development. More 30% of the proposed units equal to 51 units would be designated affordable per state statutes with parking for 294 vehicles on a 15.893-acre parcel located at 1165 King Street in the RA4 Zone. Mr. Yeski, you already have your hand up. You're not.
Well, we should let Mr. Higgin, you know, I'm just getting in line.
You're just getting in line. Okay, so we're going to let him talk.
I can I go to the end of the line.
Okay, so I think I think Mr. Higgin is going to address the open issues, hopefully. All righty. Okay. On you go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Tom Higgin, on behalf of the applicant. Since 1985, Greenwich Woods has had an agreement with Westchester County to discharge up to 50,000 gallons per day average to the Westchester sewer system. There was an extension granted in 2000 and a second extension granted in 2022 to December 31, 2064. By the time it expires, the agreement will have been in effect since for 79 years. On the annual basis, Greenwich Woods pays to Westchester County between $100 and $200,000 depending on the sewage discharge each year. We have been working with the county for almost two years. Commission members at the briefing expressed the frustration about how this has gone. I share that frustration. I have attempted to arrive and and deal with the issues that Westchester County has brought up. We retained the Westchester Council, the firm of Cuddy and Federer. They're very experienced in land use issues in the county. They have handled most of the construction that is going on that you can see in Portchester. They know how to deal with the county. We've had numerous correspondence and as has our council in Westchester. We've had an in-person conference. It's fair to say that since the current agreement expires in 2064, that there is not a real sense of urgency on the part of the county. They extended it in 2022 to 2064. And they don't see a lot of urgency to do it that obviously is one that that we have expressed to them. We received the letter from Joan McDonald, who is the operation, Director of Operations of the county. That doesn't sound like it's necessarily an important position. She's a very important person in how Westchester County operates. And we appreciate the assistance that she has provided to us thus far. And what she has said is that they are studying their current facilities to determine what improvements are needed. They don't have a read on that through at this point, but it's something that they're working on. I don't think you have to look between the lines very far to realize that once Westchester County determines what improvements are needed, they will tell us what they think the cost of those improvements are and what our participation in that will be. It was the same read I got from them in a personal meeting. We're going to have expenses in the county, and we're expecting everyone who is participating and using the sewer system to share in the cost of the improvements to our sewer plants. And so it's not a question of will they? I think as soon as we determine what they are looking for in terms of a contribution to the county sewer system, then we'll be able to work out an extension to the to the agreement. to the agreement. At the briefing, Madam Chair, you said, give us a path to move forward. And that's why when I'm at three o'clock in the morning, with things that are not in the form book. And what we presented was that if we are unable to come up with a agreement with Westchester, that based on the comments from CDM Smith, that accepted the alternative sewer or wastewater treatment plant, that they said you should start the process at least five years prior to the expiration. So in this declaration that I submitted to you, we suggested starting at 10 years. And I put in conditions that have to be met. And if those conditions are not met, it gives the town the option, but not the obligation to go ahead and require it be done at the expense of the owner of the property. And we think that this is the path forward that the commission was looking for in the event that between now and 2055, we're unable to work out an agreement with Westchester County. And I have to say, with the significant amount of money that Greenwich Woods has paid to the county over the years, I have a hard time believing that the county is not going to say at some point when they do have the opportunity to talk to their environmental facilities or sewer department and determine what improvements they need to their sewer plants, that they will come back to us and say, this is what we need to go forward and this is what we expect your contribution to be. If it comes out as a big number, then we'll implement the alternative plan. But I don't think we have had a concern about not being able to provide sewage disposal for this property. And with the comments from CDM Smith, the report that SE Minor put together on the alternatives, I think is is the way forward that the commission was looking for. Now, in going back through my files, I found a memo dated August 2nd, 1984. And it says, final plans for the above facility, that's the Greenwich Woods Healthcare Facility. Proposed structure will be connected to the municipal sanitary sewer for Westchester. Water supply will be provided by Connecticut American or what's currently Aquarian. Says in April of this year, consulting environmental engineers of Hartford submitted a preliminary onsite sewage disposal alternative. This study was made in the event that if in the future the sanitary sewer connection is cut off, the facility would not have to close but could install such a system. This proposal was reviewed by Randy May, Principal Sanitary Engineer, Water Compliance Unit, State Department of Environmental Protection. It is his opinion that although this is a costly and difficult project, both the installation and maintenance, it is a feasible alternative that could be considered in the future. So that when Greenwich Woods was originally approved in 1984, the quote in the decision letter is, in the event that the Westchester sanitary sewer no longer serves this site, the state DEP approved onsite sewage disposal alternative will be installed. And that's what we're saying with the declaration that I provided to you. That if we cannot work out this with with Westchester County, that there is an alternative and we will implement that alternative at the time when it's more than, well before the expiration in 2064 of the existing sewer agreement. I think that was the the main issue. There was another issue that was brought up by the fire marshal.
We're going to do the fire. And I think that you guys want to do the first issue and then go to the fire, the pressure and the cistern. I I know that, I know Nick was asking.
Why don't we let Mr. Hegney finish?
Let Mr. Hegney finish. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you. The, for one, the existing nursing home is fully sprinkled. It has a fire pump. Has not had pressure issues. To resolve the pressure issue in the water line, you use a fire pump. Just like we have proposed in the Berkeley building, just like the Convent of Sacred Heart immediately to our north has a fire pump for their roughly 200,000 square feet of of school space. We have provided a letter from SE Minor indicating what the flow test was and suggesting that a fire pump would be appropriate. And also that if a cistern was needed for additional water supply, that that could be provided. I did ask Dave Ginter, when I was talking to him about the first project I presented to you this evening. And he said, Sacred Heart just has a fire pump. They do not have a storage tank or a cistern. So we believe that we can address that with with what is currently used onsite, which is a fire pump. And I think those were the only two outstanding issues that we had. We have a sign off from from engineering. We have a wetland permit. And I I think it's just the issue that we have been talking about for the last two years, which is how do you resolve having wastewater facilities available for the duration of the 40 years from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the affordable housing units or assisted housing units in this case. And I, and that's why I presented to you a declaration that we would record on the land records prior to the issuance of a building permit so that, or zoning permit sign off, so that there would be a, an alternative in place that would be on the record. Not everybody reads the zoning regu, the zoning permits themselves, but everybody who's looking at a piece of property looks at the land records. And and it would be there and have the terms of how it would be solved spelled out already. So we we believe that we're addressing the the primary concern that we've been discussing over the last two years.
Mr. Yesky?
Was I first or was it Nick? I thought Nick was.
It was you first, actually, because remember I teased you when you were the first one.
Mr. Hegney, I think we're all frustrated. We've been going around and around. And I I agree. I think you can solve the water problem, though I don't think it's going to be as simple as you said. Other people have been grandfathered. We're dealing with it at Central Middle. The fire department's changed their policies. They may be asking for a lot more than you're implying. And you'll, you'll, you'll do that. You have no choice. You can't. Fire safety comes first. So there'll be some discussions there, but but that's more a clearer path. But let me ask you a second question. I'm trying to simplify this and I'm sorry. Have you ever built a house in Greenwich?
Actually, a number of them, yes.
Did you start building that house without a town permit from Town Hall?
No, I'm, I want to set the example, Mr. Yesky and the community.
He'd lose his license.
That would be a really bad thing for me to do.
So do you think us going the way you're suggesting isn't the exact same thing? And the fact is, you've been asking us to go on good faith. I'll come back to that. Then you present, oh, if they disapprove it, we'll put a septic system in. Totally untested, gigantic system. I did some research and you'd have to have some pretty detailed drawings to get the state to even look at it, as I understand it. So there's no assurance at all that that would work and you're out 40 years, maybe 30, whatever. So that's kind of pie in the sky, too. This is the way I view it. I mean, you can disagree. I think we're all frustrated, but I think it really comes down to, I don't, I don't know who's going to vote for what in the approval, but there has to be a huge caveat condition that says you can't proceed without getting that approval from the Westchester County. I I heard you talk about some stuff. You, you really think that if Westchester gets jammed on their development and they have to build new sewers and newer sewer plants, which are billions of dollars, they're going to care about your $100,000? We're fringe. We're another state. There's no political capital for them to say no for Greenwich. So I I appreciate your optimistic view that they're going to include you because you've been a good customer in the past, but you're in a different state. And New York is in a different state at this point in time. So I don't know. That's, that's my feeling. I don't think this is this complicated. The complication is we're out of time, right? We don't have any extension, right?
Nope.
We're done, right? Tonight?
Yep. And they can't convert to preliminary because it's already been a preliminary. We're there. We're at the end of the line.
So you're asking us to go ahead and let you build this without a permit, our kind of permit, planning and zoning approval in the sense of we have to get that from Westchester County. Something, by the way, we've been asking for at least two and a half years have been misled. That's water under the bridge, but I I just think that that's too big of a gamble for public health and safety at this point. The fire thing, I think, will work out. You'll work it out, though we had a shock at Central Middle. But we're working it out at this point in time. We're encountering on other buildings, too, by the way. The sad thing is that if you, if you haven't built, you're now subject to the new rules. So we have projects we approved and are being built, listen to this, Chair, and the fire department is now telling them they have to change. So it's like, there's no retort back to the fire department. You do what they tell you to do at this point. So that's how I feel. You want us to let you go build a house in Greenwich without a permit? And and that's just, I don't think that's acceptable.
Mr. Yesky, I I have an example of why, of how the commission has approved something that needed to get DEP approval to upgrade a sewer plant as part of a site plan approval. We will need to get that approval, and this is the Grant American Center. We will need to get that approval before I can get a building permit for it. But that doesn't mean.
You're going to do that. Huge difference. You're going to do that and you're going to have detailed drawings. You're going to go to the state. They're going to bless it and then you get it. If we had that for your septic, it'd be a slightly different story. It's still.
No, there's also another issue, Dennis. This is affordable housing. It's a totally different thing because we have a job on health and safety. And so, I I mean, this is a totally different thing. It's even why I suggested more than once to the applicant, to Mr. Hegney's client, that they consider doing the as-of-right conversion of nursing.
Okay.
Residential, which could be all market. They would be, they wouldn't have, see, the problem here is the 40-year deed restriction on the affordability. And during that term, the sewer agreement would expire. In addition, Westchester has still not said they can serve the 170-unit increase. So if they did a lower number, they might be able to. And then they could do a phase two. And that's why, to me, that was an answer way back when. I don't.
And we we had a similar answer. I don't want to mention projects.
No, that's fine. Anything that's approved and not in court is fine.
And there's one now that we, they were going to do market. They went to affordable. And we'll see what happens. I'm surprised. Most of our recent applications have been for sale, affordable, not rental. We have had some affordable and that that's good. But I said what I said. I, I think the offer of putting in a septic system 40 years from now, it's a nice, but it's totally unproven. We can't count on it. Count on Westchester and particularly Westchester, particularly New York State. And by the way, I think we're probably going to get subjected to a lot more of applications like this, not affordable, but market. Because there, you know, there's a belief that we're going to get another wave of flight, a flight out of New York City to Greenwich. So that's on top of that. But that's not really overly relevant, other than it goes back to your discussion on Berkeley. We're getting another wave and we'll see what that does to the town. But coming back, again, I I think building this thing without a permit from the town is is wrong and I don't see it close. And we've given time. That's the most frustrating. We've been talking about this for several years. And it isn't the recent election. There was a, someone said, well, it's the recent election. It's like, no, that just happened. What about two years ago? What, that kind of thing? Who, we've said this before. Every affordable should get sewer letter first before they come to us. Because if they can't have sewer, that's a health issue. And we've tried to impose that and sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. In this case, it didn't. They've had three years to go negotiate if they were going to go in this direction with the county. They haven't. They haven't done it. So I understand personnel changes and all that, but that's not our problem. Our problem is Greenwich, not the the public administration and the county of Westchester. So I I don't want to say anymore. I've, I usually don't go that on and and just think that this, this is a very bad precedent to set for the town.
Mr. Yesky, if there are a couple of things. One, we did provide the sewer flow numbers, including the assisted living facility adjacent, which would still be using either the existing sewer plant or the the alternative wastewater facility. We had a design that SE Minor put together. That design was reviewed by CDM Smith, which is the consulting firm and engineers that the town uses for the entire sewer system in the, in the town. And they have found that it is a reasonable approach to take. And all they said was, don't start a year before. They said start at least five years before. And that's why I put that declaration together so that we would start that process 10 years before the expiration of the agreement with Westchester, which goes for another 39 years and at least another 36 or 37 years from when this building would be constructed. And that we do have an alternative that is viable. And and so I I don't think it's building, starting to build a building without a permit because we do have a plan that would work and that can be implemented.
You're muted, Mr. Yesky.
You don't have regulatory approval. You don't have a permit. On your flows, we had a big problem with your flows. I hate to dredge this up, Mr. Hegney. I really do. But I'm going to do it because I went after it. You wanted to extend that 50,000 gallon a day. We asked for the flows. Initially, it was no problem in Westchester. It turned out to be a big problem. So then you came back a second time with the engineers and we asked the guy about the flows and he came up with 49,000. We all laughed. You then shrunk the project. I give you credit for that. So your flows are down now, which is good. I'm not arguing flows. I'm not arguing flows. I'm not arguing when you start, I get the 10-year. I'm arguing that you don't have regulatory approval from Westchester County. And since we can't bank on that, I don't think you have our kind of a permit. And therefore, I would not start construction or I would not necessarily approve this, this application.
Well, let's see if we, if there's anything Mr. Hegney can say. We're not in decision mode yet. We're open to input. We may be struggling, but we're open to input into trying to find a path forward. Mr. MacRae?
I think Mr. Yesky said most of it. He said all of it pretty much. But I think actually each, there's, there's three specific things I'm looking for right here. The flow test, to me, we've got some numbers in front of us. The flow tests were conducted at 5:00 AM on a Friday morning. And it seems that actually these, these numbers are very low. Then I get something, oh, we'll put a, we'll put a pump in, boost your pump in for the sprinkler system and possibly cisterns. To me, understanding, yes, the COVID's got a pump in it, but that's a different, that's an educational use. This is residential. That means that there's sprinkler heads in every closet. So this demand is much more significant than anything else. My concern would be, what does the pump room, pump facilities and any kind of cisterns reflect in terms of the site plan? Do I have big tanks buried in the ground someplace? Filled with water, ready to go 24/7 because the sprinkler system needs to work at any time, 24/7? Is the pump actually now a space inside, buried in the basement? What does that look like? Does it change everything we've seen to date? We had a. We had a letter from Keenan Bean. They were actually, are the village attorneys here at Rybrook. And they were talking specifically about infrastructure in the ground for the sewage sewage dish yard, the laterals, those kind of things. Where they were recommending that actually a camera be put there like we usually do for stuff here, just simple laterals in Greenwich. Find out what's going on with the capacity, and that the pipe in King Street and Lincoln Avenue are a good working order. To me, it doesn't matter what happens with Westchester County if I can't get everything out the door and down the street. This letter, by the way, is dated back in June. Going back, yeah, we've been talking about this for two years. Then we have November seventh. We've been waiting for this letter from Westchester County. And to me, actually, this is the full stop. It's currently conducting a study to determine capacity of existing facilities. Once the capacity analysis is complete, Westchester will be able to discuss. That's actually a today thing. Like Mr. Yesky said, it's a today thing. It's a permit thing today. I'm being asked now, actually, on good faith to say, this might be okay. And then in thirty, forty years, we're going to look at this thing again. If I'm around and sitting in this chair in thirty, forty years, it'll be an absolute bloody miracle. And I'm not too sure if I can extend good faith, understanding that right now my responsibility is for an affordable housing project. People are going to be living in this. And somewhere along the line, this is going to be so open ended and promises made. Yeah, it's on the land records, but there are promises today. Who's going to remember that in forty, fifty years if this is still owned by somebody? I think that's actually, we have a really, take a really good step back on this because we are at the end of our rope. And say, what is the reality of being, what's being proposed here still? After going around for, what did you say, two and a half years? Now, in nineteen eighty four, there was a discussion of what was going on. Here we are, forty one years later, talking about a situation again, the same kind of situation. In forty one years from now, are we going to be talking about the same kind of thing or whoever's there at the time? I think we have to take a really good, hard look at this, understand our responsibility for a project of this type. And move from that, you know, move from that point. Good faith is one one thing, but the reality of a project is another. Thanks.
Mr. Lowe?
Yeah, just at the risk of being redundant. It to me, it feels as though the applicant is essentially saying, trust us. If things go south, we'll take care of it. Unfortunately, we we as a commission have to protect the interests of residents now and in the future. And I I'm I'm troubled by potentially gambling on an uncertain, you know, on an uncertain future outcome. And we're all saying the same thing in different ways, I guess. But since that was on my mind, I thought I would just add to the to the conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Wells, do you have anything to add to that? Hey, you don't need glasses anymore. You should be able to unmute just like that.
I just did. No, I don't have anything to add to the previous commissioners remarks.
So you're looking for a path forward?
There is a path forward here.
Good, go ahead.
Well, it 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 comes down to one issue, and I don't know how you word this, you're good at that. But this can, it's above a condition. It's mandatory, it's critical, it's pivotal. They have to have that agreement with Westchester before they proceed. Now, can we write that strong enough and definitive enough? That would be the path forward, just except that you cannot move forward without negotiating the deal with Westchester. I I don't, maybe it's oversimplifying it, but that is the issue, has been the issue.
Mr. Yesky, I I agree with you, but we've asked that question before. We've asked that, we, over and over and over and over again. Here we are, last day of the season, we're still asking that question.
But but my suggestion is, if we want to put, well, we have to make some kind of a decision. If the decision says in it, this huge caveat, it's a bigger than a condition, that you you cannot move forward without that that permit, as I call it. We'll we'll get the fire department to work. We've done the other traffic. That was an issue. We do the landscaping. They're going to adhere to the affordable housing plan. They do all that. But this is like a, you know, a critical path. It's like you reach the triangle, and you can't go forward without that permission, period. And, you know, that, I don't know whether that would be acceptable to all of the commission as as a vote or not. I'm just suggesting that it's not overly complicated in the sense of what we have to say here. I just want to make sure the language and legally, I'm always getting in trouble with our chair legally. And now Mary, God, I got two of them. I'll never win. I'll never win. But I just, what would be wrong, Mr. Hegney was saying? You know, this is our caveat. We we can't do anything more for you. You you just don't have your permit. I I would think you'd be happier about that. So I don't know. I I do think there's a way forward.
Okay, Mr. McRae?
Mr. Hegney, is it has, as the the project team, the development team talks or discussed the make or break point, if Westchester comes back with some kind of a monetary request? What's too expensive? Because it seems to me, yes, you've been paying a lot of money to Westchester County, and they don't want to pass that up. But I think it's actually more of a, Westchester's got to be looking out for themselves because they're under their own development concerns at the moment and pressure on their own systems. But it, what's that, is there a breaking point for the development team? Has that ever been talked about?
The the comparison is going to be with what Westchester asks for as a contribution to their upgrades of their sewer plants and the cost of implementing an alternative plan, which has a treatment plant and a discharge with a forced main to the Bayram River. That that's the comparison. How much is one going to cost versus the other? That that this is going to be a building with one hundred and seventy apartments. It's going to generate three quarters of a million dollars rent, even at today's standards. Forget what it's going to be in the future. There is a sufficient basis with this development to handle this one way or the other. And if Westchester is going to come back and say, this is too much, that, you know, we want a lot of money, then we'll go to the alternative and install our own system. And that's why I put together that declaration so that there is a alternative that has been reviewed by the town's sewer consultant that would be implemented as part of not being able to work it out with with Westchester. So it's not, gee, take it on faith or trust us. No. This is, we either work it out with Westchester, and if we haven't done that, then we will install a private system similar to what Convent of the Sacred Heart has and Brunswick has to be able to provide onsite sewer treatment.
So that kind of gets back to, actually, I think a lot of what we've been saying. Westchester hasn't figured it out. They could come back and say, we figured it out. It's not going to work. Or it's, you know, a a number that's huge. Or, yes, we can fix it, but it's, we're not going to do anything for about five years. So you get into your Plan B. Your Plan B says, I'm going to actually design, get approved and construct an onsite water treatment plant. That process is going to take five, six years. So we're kind of back in that kind of like, where are we? Right now, I have nothing. You could have something tomorrow. Well, I don't know. We're still working on that, you know, that kind of situation. Or it's way far out. You don't have a design for an onsite septic system, and we don't know what Westchester's doing. So we're getting back in this circle again that we've been talking about for two years. I think actually, Mr. Mr. Yesky sent it out, stated it very simplistically. Need a permit right away.
The big difference on Plan B is there is no Plan B.
See, that's it. The Plan, the Plan B is conceptual.
It's all conceptual.
Yeah, but to me, concept doesn't work. If it, you know, great, I could, I could do a concept for an airplane, but if it crashes, you know, there we are.
And they had to go through massive engineering drawings. They put their own wastewater treatment plant in, and it had to get approved by the state. That was a plan, Plan A. This plan, their Plan B is a hope, and we all know a hope is not a plan. It's, it mean, you need a lot more substance, and they should have been working on that in a more earnest way too. But that's neither here nor there. It's gets back to, they're asking for a decision today, and there is no Plan B in my mind. It's this.
Yeah, sure.
If I could just point out what the commission did.
Oh, actually, I interrupted Mr. Yesky. I interrupted Mr. Yesky if you would let him finish. Mr. Hegney, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dennis. I'm sorry. And then we'll let Mr. Hegney. I'm sorry, both of you.
Are you kidding me? I didn't get interrupted for ten minutes. I I I'm not going to press my luck. I'm all done. Okay, go ahead. I'm not, you kidding me? This is a win.
So what the commission recognized when they approved the Grant American Center development for one hundred and ninety eight townhouses was that we could not go to the state DEP to get the improvements to the wastewater facility at One American Lane. Because first you need site plan approval to do that, and they're not going to talk to you because they're busy. And they want to know that you have site plan approval before they will even look at it. So then I'm a sort of a chicken and egg. I can't get approval because I don't have an approved plant, and I can't go get an approved plant because I don't have site plan approval. And that's the situation we were in at Greenwich American. And what the commission said is, we recognize that you are not able to get approval from DEP for the upgrade of the West wastewater facility at One American Lane until you have site plan approval and are ready to to go. They're in the process of doing that now, because you have granted them approval. Here, it's the same situation. We have a plan that has been designed by a professional engineer. It mirrors what is being done at Convent of Sacred Heart and at Brunswick, an onsite facility to deal with wastewater with a discharge to the Bayram River. And so it's not an unproven plan. It exists, the two properties north of us. And we're able to provide that as the alternative if Westchester comes back and says, we want a lot more money, or if they say they don't want to extend it at all. So we are in a position, it's not that there is no plan. There is a plan that is actually proven and in effect just to the north of us. And we want to use that based on our design and your consultant looking at it and saying it's viable. So I I I don't.
I I struggle, I struggle, Mr. Hegney, because you give example of a of a school that nobody lives in and of a development that is a hundred percent market rate, which, okay, is being sold now. But I struggle with that because the issue here is the forty year deed restriction and the affordable units and our obligation to verify health and safety for the low income people. Because remember, we're at sixty and eighty percent of state median income. And those are the people that we have to assure have health and safety. So it's very different when you're dealing with a fancy private school. They don't sleep there. Well, maybe the sisters, do they even have sisters there still? I don't know. But I'm just saying, I don't think those examples apply. Greenwich Country Day doesn't apply well. So, but I want to find a way. I liked what Mr. Yesky said about you don't get building permits until you have something from Westchester?
You are giving Westchester County a great deal of leverage that they currently don't have.
Well, but that's not my job to worry about who has leverage. My job is to protect health and safety of residents. I have to find a way of ensuring that. I mean, right? You don't have to, you know, look, you don't have to share what we, our conditions with Westchester. I'm just saying, if we tell you, no building permit till you've talked to them, our job is to ensure that the residents are protected. Could you live with that? You you can, I don't know how you do this, because we have to close this. Obviously, we're not at a point where we could decide it tonight. Because I think we need some answers from the fire department on the impact of the cisterns that they want. Because if if we could, if your cisterns, if they say to us, I guess those are, what, Patrick Tracy, thirty thousand gallons? Thirty thousand gallon tanks? I don't know how many they would need. They go on site. What's the impact of those? Can they work? Can you, once you've got water storage on site, you should be all right.
And those go underground and.
So then you've got the pressure. So so for whatever, yeah, so but all we need to have, and we've got time, because fire department can advise us once the application is closed. So we can address the fire issue. If we wait to decide, we can get the fire thing handled, hopefully, with the fire department. They can tell us what, how your site plan would be affected, and we could hopefully deal with that. Now you have how we cope with the sewer, whether your offer, and I really appreciated your three o'clock in the morning. You could have helped me read the housing bill too, instead of writing those. But you know, that's a, that's a path if we find ways to condition so that you can't move forward till you have some sort of protection. Because as I remember, and just enforcing this, you still have people in Greenwich Woods. So they have to go away, go to other facilities. Then you start construction. So you've got a period of time before you start construction. You've got time to work the Westchester issue, and you just wait to building permit. I don't know if that works. I can't tell if Nick is rolling his eyes or looking at a screen. His glasses are doing funny things. I think he's just looking at a screen. Sorry. Anyway, just throwing it out there. Well, you probably need to answer us tonight on what path could work.
I I suppose we could advise staff and staff.
Hard, because we don't.
We wouldn't be submitting anything new.
No, I know, but the problem is that once we've closed and we write the motion, staff is out of the picture. Once we've closed, staff is generally out of the picture completely. Those motions come from us, from whoever writes them.
But you can still receive information, as you said.
We could, but it's kind of a cheaty thing, yes, but the fire marshal is internal, whereas sewer is not. The fire marshal and DPW are internal and we're allowed legally to take input from internal and just not you. So.
And your staff.
Yeah, but if you've talked to our staff, it's, you know, I'm a, I'm a goody two shoes, sorry. Mr. Wells?
Yeah, just building on your and Dennis's point. I would suggest the only way forward is, yeah, no building permit until the extension of the Westchester contract or deep and Greenwich Health Department approval of their wastewater treatment plant. And that's what we need. And, okay, it's obviously going to delay them, but as you point out, I'm sure they do have tenants. So they've they've bought it. They do have revenues coming in. And maybe this thing gets cranked up five years from now, but but not now. But at least we could approve it, I would think, based on those two conditions, at least in my mind.
And then we wait for the fire department to see what happens. And Dennis, go ahead. I'm just thinking to myself, and I was thinking aloud.
I thought that, that no one's mentioned, and I've thought a lot about it. I'm an advocate of affordable housing. We proved a big one on Benedict. We proved other ones that didn't get built. We've got a couple in the line. We are making progress. But this site has never struck me as the best site for affordable. It's nowhere near a train station. I know there's a bus line. But it it, this is not my my biggest thought, but this is not an ideal affordable housing area. I mean, it's out in, out by itself, almost in country. So, you know, you you can't walk anywhere. You you need a ride or a bike to get to this new supermarket in Glenville, which, has that gone in yet? We approved it. I don't know. Did they build that thing yet?
We're working on it, Mr. Yesky.
Still under work. Okay.
No one's biking there.
Nowhere for them to buy groceries. You know, I don't know. It just, it's never been a great site, and it happened to be a site that became available and they're doing what they're doing. uh, that they're doing what they're doing. But, um, it, it's not, if we have to make judgment calls, right? On 830G between the need for affordable housing and what we're talking about, the permit, I, my scale goes the other way. Uh, I love affordable housing. We're going to keep encouraging it. Uh, hopefully we, we get more applications. But I would hope that they would be more, I mean, the new housing bill, when they talk about affordable, they're talking, you know, TOD and downtown and they're, they're not talking out where there's no sewers.
I know.
So I don't, I don't want to lose that point because.
I know. But the word, I mean, I hate to say this, but that ship kind of sailed. Um, we pushed back a whole bunch of times when Mr. Granoff was only the architect. But then when he became a partner, we pushed back on the location. And our job is to, you know, to try to move affordable housing forward. And, um, we kept saying, not the location that the state is looking for us to do, but hey, this is what they want to do. And we're trying to move forward housing diversity. Okay, so we can live, your idea of the building permit is a good one.
Strong enough. If that's strong enough. Is there anything stronger?
Um, uh, we had, um, uh, you know, a bond is a possibility, but I don't think we know the value. I don't think we know how to do that. I think we just do, yeah. Wells is shaking his head. So if we did the building permit, um, then the applicant just waits until they've got something that they can move forward with. The most important thing is it really that, that the capacity is there. Because even 36 years, they don't have 30, you know, after it's built, they don't, they, they have to build a treatment plan on site. I'm a little more comfortable with that, that on Westchester not even saying, yes, we can serve the 170. I mean, we don't have any of that. So I'd like to have those, start on those two pieces. Okay, I think we got an answer, Mr. Hagney. Um, let me turn, I haven't asked the public, right? Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Francia Alvarez. Oh my, so sorry. It's 10 o'clock. She's probably been here for six hours. All right, Madam Alvarez, the board member of the Greenwich Tree Conservancy?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
All right. Um, I'm sorry, I'm getting to this kind of late in the game, but some of the things that I'm going to bring up, uh, I think applied to, to exactly what you're talking about now. Um, I'm going to talk about trees, of course, because I'm with the tree conservancy. There are extensive studies on health effects due to noise pollution and air quality issues. In reviewing the site plans for the Greenwich Woods Eagle Hill, Eagleview Holding, it appears that approximately 90 trees will be removed, which is a concern to the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. So first, let us look at the benefits of trees and vegetation near airports and homes. Trees can mitigate many harmful effects, both physical and psychological. Uh, tree leaves, uh, provide part, particle filtration on their surfaces and trees lower ambient temperatures and reduce ozone formation. Green space buffers the stress of noise pollution. And other benefits are tree roots reduce stormwater runoff and soil erosion on our helpful near paved airport environments. Unfortunately, health benefits decrease with extensive tree removals. The Westchester County Planning Department submitted a letter to P and Z, and here are some excerpts from it. Uh, the, the recommendation is for disapproval of the residential development. And this could be playing out in, in, in why they're dragging their feet. That's my own, uh, perspective on it. As proactive environmental stewards, the county actively monitors and addresses noise complaints. The proposed residential development lies near the runways of the airport. Potential residents could hear sideline aircraft noise year round from three runways. Combined impacts may make any time span outdoors uncomfortable or prohibitive. The subject site is not suitable for residential development. So let's move on to the negative effects of, of, of the exposure to aircraft noise. Sleep disturbances during late at night or early morning. Higher rates of hypertension, heart disease and stroke. Cognitive impacts in, on children. Studies found that chronic aircraft noise exposes, uh, exposure is linked to slower reading comprehension and memory development. And on air pollution, ultrafine particles from jet engines can penetrate deep into the lungs and even enter the bloodstream, linked to inflammation, asthma and cardiovascular disease. Nitrogen oxides and volatile organic compounds contribute to respiratory irritation, chronic bronchitis and worsening of asthma. Children are more susceptible to respiratory issues. On noise, persistent noise and air pollution contribute to chronic stress, anxiety and irritability. And reduce the quality of life due to lack of quiet time or sleeping disruption. Finally, the U.S. banned lead gasoline nearly 40 years ago for automobiles, but still small aircraft refuel with leaded gasoline.
I didn't know that.
Most of this ends up drifting over communities within 0.62 miles of the country's general aviation airports. Studies have shown children are at higher risk because they are more likely to play in the dirt or put their hands in their mouth, affecting the brain, nervous system and possibly lowering IQs. In summary, removing the 90 trees at Greenwich Woods, 0.35 miles from Westchester County Airport, so it's in that 0.62 miles zone, um, uh, increases the already negative health effects of noise and air pollution that nearby residents are already experiencing. So I'm asking you to please save the trees, but I'm also asking you to look at this whole thing a little bit differently. Uh, given how they seem very, uh, you know, really, they really believe that you shouldn't be building there.
What, what letter is that?
I got it from all of your letters. So I went through 297 pages yesterday.
That one.
You're a star. That's amazing.
I mean, they're just telling you right there, don't build here. Uh, and I don't know why, you know? There you go.
What organization is that?
It was the Westchester County Planning Department.
Yeah, the, the planning department has a policy, they, they trying to restrict, um, residential development around the airport.
Right.
Wow.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Does anybody else wish, then thank you for hanging out with us all this time. It's been a long and intense night. Um, does anybody else wish to speak on this application? Dennis, did you have something you wanted to add? No? Okay.
I'm down.
Anybody else? Oh, that was the timer for, for Francie. Have you guys just heard it? Um, her three-minute timer. Um, okay. Uh, we don't have any choice. So does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to make a closing statement? I thought you had made your statements, but please feel free.
But, but thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just to respond to the, the last comment. Um, we're planting over 400 new trees as part of this. Uh, and that's not, and although we are close to the airport, uh, that letter from, uh, Westchester Planning said, please install, uh, windows which are, uh, soundproof and provide acoustic treatment in the walls. Uh, our plan does do that uh, to address the concerns. They didn't say, if you're going to approve it, make sure that you put soundproofing in. Uh, having met with the Westchester Planning, uh, they, a, as Pat indicated, they have a, a, a policy. Mainly because they, they don't like to get the noise complaints that they receive about Westchester Airport. Um, but we did, uh, incorporate what they, uh, had suggested into the design of, of the building. Um, but I, all of the issues that were brought up by the prior speaker are, uh, although they may be of concern, but they are not, uh, issues that the courts will recognize as rising to the level of a health safety issue, which, which overrules the need for affordable housing in the town. Uh, and I would submit to you, uh, that the discussion that we've had regarding the, uh, sewer disposal uh, also does not, because we provided you with a, a plan that would allow for the replacement of the connection to the Westchester sewer, just as, uh, it, it wasn't just a, a, a concern in 1984. It was, we have a solution. Didn't say you had to implement the solution. It said you have to go through and have that solution. And we have one here. We have one that was designed by a professional engineer that was reviewed by your, uh, sewer consulting firm that the town uses for the entire sewer system. And they said it's feasible. They just suggested you have to start the press, the process earlier. Uh, I, I would submit to you that this is an ideal location, uh, for this, uh, building. Uh, it gives much more room than any of the other, uh, affordable housing projects you've seen. It's almost on 16 acres, uh, and it provides for, uh, a great deal of amenities, indoor theater, uh, pool, indoor pool, indoor playground, outdoor playground, uh, community garden, pickleball courts. None of that you're getting on any of the other, uh, affordable housing projects, uh, that you, uh, that you've been approving. Uh, and it's frankly, a, a rather less dense development, more along the lines of an R6 development uh, than it is on any of the others that you've been seeing. It provides 51 units of assisted housing. And also, it's just as importantly, frankly, 119 market rate apartments, because we need those too, as we discussed in the last application, that the town needs to have more housing of varying kinds. And this does that, uh, it was supported unanimously by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. Uh, we've received wetland approval. Uh, frankly, I see this as a very positive project to the town. And, uh, we have provided you with the alternatives of how we can deal with the sewer. And this is something that I think is worthy of your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagney. Uh, I, I'm sorry, because I know you were closing, but just for the record, I do have to, um, I do have to, uh, lay the record that, um, courts do consistently uphold health and safety uh, as regards fire and sewer. That's been consistently upheld since nine, since 1989, when 830G was passed. Those are major topics. Uh, the burden of proof is, of course, on the commission. But, um, they have upheld it. And the question is, can we find a path to protect the health and safety of these residents who are at below market? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hagney. Um, as we said, we will now close this application. And we will not be deciding it tonight because we're hoping to get some answers from the fire department. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Where's our court reporter?
Oh, hello, I'm, I'm still here.
It's time to say goodnight, Gracie.
Oh, that's good news. Good news. See you next time.
So ends the public hearing. Bye-bye, Mr. Court Reporter.
Good night. Bye, everyone.
Alrighty, um, oh, I don't know if Mr. Hagney's still listening, but, um, on Berkeley, well, let me, on Berkeley, I'm not ready to make a decision. Um, I know, oh, Mary's shaking her head, too. I know some of you are, but I, I don't feel ready. Uh, um, I, I know I've been chewing on this for a long time, but I, I need a little more time. Um, and, uh, so I'd like to postpone that decision. If y'all don't mind. And Mary was agreeing. She's also seated.
Yes, please.
Um, I think for those of us who were struggling with it, um, it gives us more time to try to wrap our brains around it. Uh, I hereby move approval of the minutes of October 15, 2025. Um, I forget, I think, um, Junz, you were absent.
I said second. I'm sorry, I was muted.
Mr. Lowe has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this is where my wheels start to come off when it's finally over. Um, okay, we have, um, two. We have, uh, no, we have.
Uh, Levin, Hurlingham.
We have Hurlingham and we have 18 Simmons.
Okay, uh, I'd like to defer Simmons, if we would. Just, I want to double check a few things.
Well, and also that all the stuff that came in today, I was trusting everybody that they had seen it. I know Tracy reviewed Simmons carefully this afternoon. And, um, didn't have any comments while we were discussing it, but if y'all need time, not a problem. So let's just go to Hurlingham.
Okay, and Simmons later, it's just going to be very weird for me to write anyway, so.
Well, um, I can do it, too. Um, I'll trade you, I'll trade you an Eagle. I'll trade you an Eagleview for a Simmons.
No, I think Simmons is going to be a sense of closure, I think.
All right, okay. So, um, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and do Hurlingham. Um, let's plan on doing decisions at the beginning of our next meeting. And then, of course, we're going to put the, we're also going to put the folks from the food thing at the beginning of the public hearing.
Right, okay. Uh, Levin, Hurlingham Drive, uh, PLPZ 2025 381, final site plan. Uh, special permit, applicant seeking to construct a new poolhouse, stormwater management system, septic system, and associated site improvements that result in structures in total, uh, in excess of 150,000 cubic feet in volume on a 13.3 acre parcel in the RA4 zone. Uh, whereas the proposed structure is located on the footprint of an existing poolhouse and the site contains significant mature landscape. A new landscape plan is not required. Uh, commission finds conservation issue comments, uh, 731 25 indicating recommendations to the application. Health Department issued a septic approval letter dated 10/16/25 for 100% replacement system. Uh, DPW drainage, uh, applicant has submitted a drainage exemption dated 6/6/25. Well, and issued a permanent needs questionnaire, 9/15/25 indicating no, uh, action required. And EMAC issued a memo dated, uh, 10/11/25 indicating an unfavorable review. Therefore, motion to approve the site plan noting the following.
Did you say unfavorable?
Yes, didn't they?
Um, no, it's just a poolhouse.
Yeah, I mean, they, yeah, they suggested solar. I think they were okay with the, you know, they had a couple split splitter units in there.
Okay, we'll figure it out. I mean, it's strong to save for something that's small that, yeah.
Okay, uh, that's, me just, there we go.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the plan noting, you edited the following. Uh, priority zoning permit, the applicant shall provide a comprehensive, um, soil erosion control plan that should be installed prior to the issuance of any zoning building permit. Also, an erosion control should be in cooperation with the Connecticut DEP March 30, 2024 guidelines for S and E controls. Uh, the applicant shall provide some native plantings in the disturbed area directly behind the new poolhouse. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or environmental issues.
Did we say the planting list that the applicant has agreed? I zoned out. I.
No, I said just, so they provide some native plantings in the distribute disturbed area behind the new poolhouse.
Uh, yeah.
They claim the exemption.
They claim an exemption, but then they, the applicant said that they had agreed to put additional plantings in per conservation's recommendation. And this shall be reviewed by P and Z staff. Okay. Because, um, there was a plant, there were some plants that conservation suggested after their site walk on Monday. And then we could just integrate those. But have our staff sign off. Okay, um, anything else that anybody can think of?
Yeah, weren't we supposed to put something in about if this, if in the future, the septic system required removal, it would come back? Or is that?
Uh, so the septic system, it's 100, 100% replacement system. It would actually probably be in the same place. Um, but it's been, it's been approved, actually, just in case the existing one fails, they have to actually build a new one.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, um, Mr. Wells has seconded. And on this application, Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Alvin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. And you get tomorrow off, and then you're back at work on Friday.
Oh, not yet. Sorry.
Not yet.
Budget. Budget and.
Oh, yeah, budget. I hereby make a motion to approve the ARC schedule, proposed schedule for 2026.
I second.
I second.
Uh, I think Yaski seconded it first.
I did, I did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's gone. Go ahead. Budget.
Uh, budget, uh, for those of you that were at the briefing Monday, we talked a little bit about it, that the budget generally is staying in line with what we've been um. Spending over the last several years. Uh, the areas of change that I wanted to bring to your attention is. Um, well, I'll go with the smaller one first. Um. Overtime for uh, the zoning enforcement department is set right now at five hundred. Where, and planning and zoning at fifteen hundred. Uh, overtime contractually can only be paid out to G M E A union uh, employees of which P and Z has two. And zoning enforcement has four. Uh, and so it's, it's. Seems to be likely that we would spend more of that money there. Um. Since uh, Jim has taken over and, and even when I was uh, stepping in for a few months there. Um. I realized that, we, we realized that the, the Z B A meetings are being run by one single staff member. Um, and as you guys know with these meetings, it's hard to do that. Um, and so Jim asked and I have kept the practice going of having a second staff person at those meetings to help. Um, I think it's been hugely helpful to run better meetings and note taking and uh, effective communication after the meetings. Um, so I would ask that we take uh, about a thousand dollars from our um, from zoning enforcement's. Uh, consultant budget and putting that into the overtime so that we can um, pay that out and use that for that purpose. As well as Jim has been proactively scheduling uh, night visits for night inspections, I should say, for uh. Mostly the lighting regulations, but there are some other times where there may be some activities that he needs to see after, after four o'clock. And um, he's been using that judiciously now, and it would be easier for him to. Proactively attack some of these zoning violations or prospective ones if he has the, the uh, ability to pay staff for the extra hours. Um, rather than just get comp time, which just means that they'll take time off later in the month. Which is not really helpful because we need people there in the day anyways, so. Uh, that's the first item. Second item is our P O C D update. Uh, we are at the point where we need to start thinking about the next um, version. Um. As I explained the other day, likely in the beginning of the calendar year of twenty seven, we'll be looking to select a consultant. Uh, my uh, quick study and conversations with consultants is that the cost is probably upwards of uh, over two hundred thousand dollars. Um. The higher the number, the more likely we're gonna get multiple respondents for the R F P. Uh, I think those of you who were in the last R F P process, remember. Uh, we were told that our budget was a little small for the size of our community and, and that go around, and that was a hundred and seventy five thousand dollar budget then. Um, so I think in to do, to provide the commission with the best possible service. Uh, to get uh, the greatest number of consultants to come in and, and want to do this work, I think we need to come out with a higher budget. I was recommending two twenty five. I think others yesterday were suggesting to start at two fifty. Um, and then if we don't use it, we don't, you know, we obviously don't need it, but um, that, that would be. I'm okay with either number. Um, and then my only um. Discussion for the next budget would be, I would probably put the first third of that into that budget and the remainder into the following fiscal year budget. Um, so that, because we can always carry money over to the next fiscal year, but we can't bring it back. In um, the other way, so um, that would be my only other strategy and uh, that's um. That's my shorthand on it. I don't know if there's any questions on the budget numbers or anything.
I'd go with uh, two fifty on the consultant.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree with Aron.
All right, I hereby move approval. Um, uh, for the proposed budget uh, from uh, the planning director. Uh, with the amended amount for the P O C D consultant.
All right.
Mr. Yaski has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and so we'll amend that, and I, I, I'm assuming that the uh, overtime issue is not a problem either. All right.
No.
No, and, and, and if, if, when you present to the B E T, this is a huge issue for residents. You've heard just the enormous frustration about little violations that people get so peeved about. That it is important to be able to stay on top of it. I mean, it just upsets people.
Quality of life.
It is quality of life, yeah.
It absolutely is, and, and again.
Little things, yeah.
The, the, the little things that linger forever are as frustrating as the major things that we um, that happen as well, so.
It's that constant reminder of a very small thing, you know? There's a hole in the street and your, and your tires go into it every time, or whatever that little thing is, and you just get grumpier and grumpier. Like you can't let it go anymore. Um, okay, folks, um, again, thank you for ever, all the hard work tonight. This was. This was quite the night. Had some easy moments, but boy, it had some tough ones.
Big, big slate today, that's for sure.
Yeah, well, it's hard, you know, um. It's hard because we have so much passion about this community and protecting it, that sometimes it's just hard because. You want to do your best. Okay, um, and that means we're gonna have a big decision load in two weeks and uh, we apologize, but. I, I, I don't think it's fair to ask us to vote on something that had materials come in, in the afternoon. When it's a significant development as, as this one. Okay. Um. Off we go. See you guys Friday at ten, everybody who can make it. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Bye.